The nineteenth, and I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll. Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Ellison.
Present.
Flores Cale. Bradshaw.
Here.
Parsley.
Here.
Tobias.
Here.
All right, six members present. We have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments period. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments period. It's now closed. Next up, executive session.
Hold on, give me a minute. Pursuant to chapter five-five-one Texas government code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. City council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exceptions contained in chapter five-five-one of the Texas government code, including any or all of the following topics: Pending or contemplated litigation to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to section five-five point zero-seven-one La Verde and Heroes Park Memorial Park; personal matters, I'm sorry, convening to executive sessions pursuant to section five-five-one oh-seven oh-eight-seven Texas government code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more businesses' prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city, Project Razmataz and Project Laser Lemon.
Mayor Proton, there is item three on there as well.
Okay, and item number three, personal matters pursuant to section five-five-point-zero-seven-four, city managers consulting opportunity approvals from one nineteen twenty-twenty-one.
Sorry, I missed that one. All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting back to order. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be action taken now. I'd like to bring up Diana Torres.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Diana Torres.
Of Economic Development.
For the record, sorry, that just popped on. Tonight, we have an a restaurant incentive to bring forward for your consideration. We have another interested party in pursuing the City of Kyle Restaurant Program Incentive, and they will be the owner and developer of this project. The Kyle Economic Development Board met and considered the request from Walk-On's Cajun Bistro on April thirteenth. The project, known as Project Razmataz, received unanimous support from the board. The KED Board is making a formal recommendation to the city council for consideration and approval of the restaurant incentive for Walk-On's Cajun Bistro. The restaurateur is under contract for the property and will close no later than June first. This is going to be located at the southwest corner, I think I have it drawing here, the southwest corner of Kohler's Crossing and sixteen-twenty-six. The building size will be eighty-three hundred square feet. Their capital investment will be three million dollars. They will hire one hundred employees, and the three-year sales tax rebate equals a hundred and sixty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
All right, thank you, Diana. I'd like to make a motion to approve the restaurant incentive as outlined.
Second.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by council member Flores Cale. There's a discussion on the motion. Councilor Flores Cale.
Thank you. I just want to make sure you said food and restaurant?
I did. It will also have an outdoor patio for seating, as well as green space for kids.
Okay, well, I know this is something that the residents want, by way of food. Do you think it's different? But Cajun is even better. And so you did say that their food is like fresh, and it's not.
It is. It's a scratch kitchen. They have nothing frozen. They bring everything in fresh, and they make it from scratch every morning.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Motion to adjourn. All right, we are adjourned. I'm going to let the tape roll over, and we'll start our regular meeting. All right, good evening, everyone. The time is seven-oh-seven PM. It is Tuesday, April the nineteenth, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting to order. Would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city secretary, please call the roll.
Mitchell.
Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Ellison.
Present.
Flores Cale.
Here.
Bradshaw.
Here.
Parsley.
Here.
Tobias.
Here.
All right, all members are present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for city council special meeting, April fifth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Moved by council member Tobias, seconded by Mayor Proton Rizzo. There's a discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up is citizen comments. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I have quite a few folks, more than normal, who who are registered to speak, so when the timer for three minutes goes off, please do conclude your your remarks. So first up is Diana Woods.
Mr. Chapa is a lovely guy. Honorable mayor and council, my name is Diana Woods. I live at one-twenty-five Torrey Drive, Buta, Texas. On March first, I came to a public hearing scheduled by the Planning and Zoning Commission after being sent a certified letter. It notified me of a zoning change of the same property which is being considered for annexation tonight in Porter Country. That hearing, as you may be aware, was an error of law and procedure. On April seventh, an agent acting on behalf of Buta Mansions owned by Buta Mansions owned by four-thousand Dacey Lane Investment, who shares a Meats and Bounds Corner property with both my property and Porter Country, climbed over and damaged my back fence. They injected a permanent iron ground stake property marker within twenty twenty feet inside my property, removed the pink surveyor marker tape from the previous Meats and Bounds Corner market, which had marker had been surveyed multiple times over the last thirty years and altered the property corner by almost twenty feet between our three properties. There was no permission requested or given of me, given by me. I've spoken with Hayes County Development Staff. I've spoken with Hayes County Roads Department, the Central Appraisal District, and Precinct Two Commissioner's Office, and each entry, each entity indicates they did not authorize or direct this action. The results, however, do appear to represent an alteration of the Meats and Bounds description of the file deed from which you're working with tonight in consideration of your action, your annexation action. The Meats and Bound also alteration would take a portion of my property for the road that both Porter Country, Buta Mansions, and the City of Kyle has drawn through the flood 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 plains, excuse me, and the southeastern portion of my property. This alteration was performed while unlawfully trespassing on private property. For the record here tonight, just for the record, I have not petitioned for voluntary annexation of any portion of my property by the City of Kyle. I've not been properly notified as is required by law of the taking of property if this is the intention. This would be procedurally unlawful and unjust to me as a unjust to me as a landowner. The agent who performed this was acting on behalf of Buta Mansions, who in turn seems to be acting perhaps as an agent of the City of Kyle. There is no political, other political entity who has assumed responsibility for this alteration. The survey filed in that is being consideration in your annexation action, items thirty and thirty-one, has been altered, and it would be improper for this body to approve the annexation of Porter Country at first reading, or to consider future annexation by the developer of Buta Mansions without properly addressing the alteration of Meats and Bounds with my property at one-twenty-five Torrey Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Alexandra Villalobos.
Good evening, mayor, council, citizens of Kyle. Today, I'm here to say a few words of a cornerstone citizen in our community. As we live our lives, we should all recognize those that have gone before us, who have put in the work to create opportunities for all people, especially in our community. Armando Chapa, a longtime educator, principal, and counselor in Hayes County, who resided here in the City of Kyle, champion advocacy in education for all children, and those that were blessed to experience his leadership, Mr. Chapa, was a beacon of light for many generations, and many first-generation students as he led, transitioned, and helped transform our community to create opportunities for all people. Many of those that are serving today, and many that have served in the past, have been influenced by his leadership, his education, his advocacy, his access to government, his access to education. We would be remiss if we didn't recognize that. There are too many people to count who have benefited from Mr. Chapa's influence. His work created opportunities through education, advocacy, and guidance. Globally, many who have had the opportunity to be influenced by Mr. Chapa. Their hard work honors and continues to support a legacy of education, advocacy, and opportunity. His family members are still part of that process, and still influence this community on a daily basis. His promotion of access to government and education still today has supported their ability and to understand their God-given right to access government and education. They're still very active about that today. Many in this audience, online and throughout the world, have been influenced by his his guidance and education advocacy. Mr. Chapa is the epitome of leaving a community better than when he founded, and not too far back in history, the landscape of the educational process and access in our community was transformed. He was a part of that transformation. His leadership never gave up on our community, and with determination found opportunities for success. Government, economic development, education, access. Thank you for your life well-lived. We honor you through our work, and celebrating a well-lived life with family and friends from all over. Thank you to the family specifically, who are here today, and celebrating his life, and continue to enrich Mr. Chapa's legacy through all of our work. Thank you for sharing him with all of us. We can't thank you enough. And for years and decades in the future, we're still thanking. We should never forget that influence. Thank you very much for that opportunity. I appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, next up, Jason Cale.
Mayor, council, my name is Jason Cale. Scott Sellers has a private business. Former council member Rick Coach is involved. Mayor Mitchell has endorsed their business and is part of their advertising campaign. Rick Coach spent twelve thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars of taxpayer money on his city credit card and reimbursements, and he was only a one-term council member. The mayor spent eight thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars, and council member Bradshaw spent two thousand six hundred and seventy-seven. The three of them account for eighty-four percent of the spending done by all seven council members over the last two years. That is not taking into account all the spending the city manager had on his credit card, simply labeled council. How much of that spending was done for the same three? The city manager's spending and reimbursements has gone up from nine thousand three hundred and eighty-five in twenty-twenty to sixty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-five in twenty-twenty-one. The same names keep popping up again and again. Rick Coach initially failed to properly disclose that he was endorsing his brother-in-law, Alex Guerrero, for P&amp;Z board. Mayor Mitchell sold his commercial property last year to David Mon, who is the original developer of Plum Creek, and he was also the developer of Uptown, which is now known as the Brick and Mortar District. There will be an opportunity to lie and cover for each other. It has happened before. When the city manager was asked if he was aware of an incident involving Howard Coontz, he lied and said no, then proceeded to explain he was aware of the meeting where the mayor and Rick Coach made Mr. Coontz feel his job was threatened. He met with the city attorney, and they brought in council member Ellison to try and work it out with Mr. Coontz. That's a lot of effort for something he was not told about. At the same meeting, council member Rick Coach and Mayor Mitchell claimed the meeting with Mr. Coontz was about the P&amp;Z board members that quit. Only problem with that story is the meeting in question happened in January of twenty-one, and the P&amp;Z board members resigned in March and April of twenty-one. So either they have a time machine, or those statements were a lie. The city manager was protecting Mayor Mitchell and Rick Coach, and placed them above his duty to the city. Mayor Mitchell, when someone said the word integrity, you literally laughed in your face, and I agree with you. In this case, we cannot count on integrity for people to simply do the right thing. We all know how closely Mayor Mitchell, city manager Scott Sellers, Rick Coach, and council member Bradshaw work together and have the same ideas and ideals. Now we will see if they all band together and fabricate more stories, will make it seem possible that they didn't break any rules. They can claim that Scott had his business approved in twenty-one. They can claim that Rick Coach was not involved until after he lost his election, and that he had no intention of doing so when he voted to approve this business that they are partnered in. They can claim they took the mayor's words without his approval or knowledge and printed them on their sales material. Maybe no one bothered to ask him if it was okay to use his name on their marketing. He can claim he has nothing to do with their business. It does appear that all three are in business together, negotiating on behalf of other cities with the same companies that they are busy negotiating with on behalf of the City of Kyle. This can get confusing, or worse, intentionally misused. Either this is a long list of coincidental and questionable, but not quite illegal activities, or you have a city manager that personally financially benefits at the expense of the city, with a history of protecting certain individuals that are busy doing the same. Council members, you have a legal duty to act in the best interest of the city, not your own, and it does not matter if you are not the bad actor. If you are aware that it is happening and you do nothing, you are liable.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, Kay Rush.
Good evening. My name is Kay Rush. I'm a resident of Amberwood, and I'm here to talk about Monarch Utilities. This is our water provider. We have always had Monarch Utilities. We have a long history, and there's a long history of me speaking out. Tonight, what I'm concerned about is the current upcoming contract. We have cost differences in the City of Kyle. If you use ten thousand gallons, you will be charged sixty-one dollars and forty-six cents. I will be charged seventy-five dollars and fifty-two cents for the same amount of water. This amounts to a fourteen dollar and six cents a month, a hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents a year. I want to know why we have to pay so much. I'm disappointed that nothing has changed with the water rates that Monarch is asking. You're going to guarantee them a three percent raise every single year, due to the economy and due to things that are happening right now. They base their raise on the CPI of urban consumers of South Region, and this calculation goes for their rate increase. This table includes food, travel, clothing, and all of the consumer costs. Why is a water provider using this table to base their rates on? Why is a water company not using the cost of distribution, the cost of water, the cost of doing business in water? Where does Monarch get their water? Who supplies it? And what is the cost to them? Does the City of Kyle base water rates on the cost of meals at restaurants, the cost of shoes and clothing? These items are considered for my water rate. The core inflation rates do not include food and energy. Why does my water rate include these items? I would like to thank you for including item eleven, twelve, and thirteen in the contract. We've been asking for this for fifteen years, in order to stabilize our wastewater rate, which is one of the highest in the city, since we pay a flat rate, and we pay over fifty dollars a month. And I only use three thousand gallons of water. So I'm I'm disappointed that this contract was pulled, and you changed virtually nothing. Monarch is totally guaranteed, and they will end up, at the end of this five years, with an average of five point eight percent net increase, and I get nothing.
All right, thank you. Next up, Gabe Parsley.
Good evening, Mayor Mitchell, members of the city council. I want to start off by thanking you all for your willingness to devote so much of your time and your energy to making our city such a great place to live and work and to raise a family. So I thank you very much for that. With that in mind, the topic that I'm about to bring up is solely for the purposes of accentuating what I believe to be the need for increased financial transparency and, well, scrutiny over some of the expenditures on the part of the city council and senior members of the city staff. Recently published financial disclosures show the following expenditures and reimbursements per city council member over roughly the past five years. Mayor Mitchell, nine thousand six hundred and seventy-six. Council member Flores Cale, one thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine. Council member Ellison, one thousand nine hundred and thirty-three. Council member Tobias, a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Council member Rizzo, two thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Council member Parsley, one hundred and twelve dollars. Council member Bradshaw, three thousand three hundred and one dollars. Former council member Sheel, two hundred and forty-five dollars. Former council member Tenorio, three hundred and eighty-one dollars. Former council member Coach, fifteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars, including over one hundred and thirty meal charges, more than two dozen fuel charges, and three charges from golf courses over the past six months alone. So with that in mind, the questions that I would like to raise are, number one, considering there are only seven city council members, including the mayor, how is it justifiable that one city council member's expenditures account for over forty percent of all the total expenditures on the part of the city council? Question number two, and more importantly, which of any of the current or former city council members were aware of these expenditures, and what was done to remediate them? Third, which city council or which employees from the city from the of which Kyle employees failed to report or even question this? I know that receipts had to be turned in, so obviously people were aware of these expenditures. So in closing, city council members are elected to represent their constituents, which are the taxpaying citizens of their municipality. They are not elected to use taxpayers' funds to spend lavishly on themselves. If these financial disclosures demonstrate anything, it is that the stringent oversight of all publicly elected officials must be enacted immediately, and all expenditures must be made plainly accessible to the taxpayers who are ultimately footing the bill for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up, Joe Finity.
Hi. It's been a while since I've been here, and I guess nothing has gotten any calmer. I'm here to talk about our water issue over in Kyle, Texas Water Utilities, Monarch, whatever you want to call it. I know it's hard to negotiate contracts and extensions. I mean, I get this. I've done it. I know it's difficult. What I'm asking you guys to do is think about those of us who are maybe over in there, and I only use maybe a thousand gallons a month, because my attitude is, if you can't eat it, don't water it. But that's just me. I want you guys to to kind of back off, think about what the actual amount of money is that it is okay for a city to pay for another part of the city's water. I guess you probably all know that the city had a chance to buy the utility back in odd six and didn't, and so here we sit. We have to negotiate contracts with them. I'd like you to back off. Just pull it back. Think a little bit more about those of us who live over there and use the water. Perhaps the amount that they're asking is not quite as fair as it should be to those of us over there, and that's all I'm just saying. Just just back off. Think about it.
Thank you. All right, next up, Jeremy Garrett.
Good evening. My name's Jeremy Garrett, and I live at five-oh-eight West Center Street, where I also serve as the writer in residence at the Katherine Anne Porter Literary Center. I was very excited to tune into city council last week and witness the formation of the Kyle Arts Commission. Art really has the potential to bring people together regardless of their politics, and the formation of this commission was an overdue and very welcome step to encourage the arts in our growing city. I am here tonight to remind our council and the local community that the arts, especially the literary arts, have been a longtime fixture in our city. In two thousand and seven, the mayor and our city council honored the Katherine Anne Porter Literary Center with a proclamation that recognized our city's long history with the arts as the childhood home of Katherine Anne Porter. The proclamation ends with this very beautiful call to our citizens. It says, "To celebrate and promote the arts and culture in our nation, and to specifically encourage the greater participation by those said citizens in taking action for the arts and the humanities." For more than two decades, the Katherine Anne Porter Literary Center has done exactly that, making it our mission to encourage the arts in our local community. In our twenty-two years, the center has hosted countless writers of poetry and fiction, from winners of the National Book Award to the Pulitzer Prize, from our Texas poet laureates to the poet laureates of the United States of America. Our readings are free and open to the public, as it is our belief that art should be and is accessible to everyone. Last night, the Katherine Anne Porter Literary Center received national news coverage when PBS NewsHour reported from the City of Kyle, highlighting the importance of the arts and the healing power of art in these uncertain times. Regardless of war, regardless of pandemics, art persists. For our twenty-two years, the Katherine Anne Porter Literary Center has been singing the praises of the life-affirming power of the arts, and I'm eager to see how the city, with its newly-formed Arts Commission, will join its voice to the choir. Mark your calendars. This Friday, April twenty-second, at seven-thirty PM, I invite you and the citizens of Kyle to join us at the Katherine Anne Porter House for an evening of poetry with author Joy Harjo, the poet laureate of the United States of America. Joy is an internationally renowned performer and writer of the Muskogee Creek Nation, the author of nine books of poetry and two memoirs, and she has produced seven award-winning music albums. This is an evening you don't want to miss. We hope to see you there.
All right, thank you. Next up, Lila Knight.
Good evening. My name is Lila Knight, and I'm a resident of Kyle, and I'm here tonight representing the Hayes County Historical Commission. We wanted to make you aware of one of our projects that will be taking place here in Kyle very soon. Between nineteen ninety-two and nineteen ninety-six, the Hayes County Historical Commission surveyed all of the historic buildings in Hayes County, except for San Marcos. We did the City of Kyle in nineteen ninety-four, and it documented all the historic buildings to nineteen forty-five. But nineteen ninety-four was a long time ago. There are probably people in this room who weren't born then. And one of the first criteria, and there are many, for determining what is a historic building is fifty years of age. So we're going to be taking, we're going to be resur surveying the city, using only volunteers rather than hiring a consultant. And I wanted you to be aware of that. Most of this will take place in the original town of Kyle, because most of our subdivisions are much later than even the nineteen nineties. I also want to make you aware that this survey is for documentation only. It will not result in any historic designations. There'll be no regulatory results from it. But it might be useful to property owners who do want to seek a state or national designation that will give them tax incentives, both on the federal and the state level. And it's also going to give us a nice record of what we've lost since nineteen ninety-four, and the buildings that have since nineteen ninety-four become historic. And so I just wanted to make you aware that that's what we're going to be doing. It's all volunteers. We'll be working in teams of two. We could use more volunteers. And I have talked to the chief of police to make him aware that there might be people out wandering the city. We stay on the right of way. We're not going to be knocking on doors. We're not going to be knocking on doors. And of course, we wouldn't, we don't do interiors. So anyway, I just wanted to give you a heads up that that's going to be one of our projects, and with any luck, we'll have it finished by the end of the year. And we will be giving, of course, a copy of the report to the city, as well as placing it in the library. And it will also be on file with the Texas Historical Commission, as is this one. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, Mario Perez.
Good evening, mayor, council. My name is Mario Perez, for the record, Kyle resident. I wanted to comment on agenda item number 39. It's actually pertaining to the Savannah Ranch development. Just real quickly, I'm going to highlight some of the criterias that are required to create this terrace in this area. So to be designated as a reinvestment zone, an area must substantially arrest or impair the sound growth of the municipality due to the presence of the following. A, a substantial number of substandard or deteriorated structures. B, tax or special assessment delinquency exceeding the fair value of the land. C, defective or inadequate sidewalks or streets. D, faulty lot layout in relation to size, adequacy, accessibility, or usefulness. E, unsanitary or unsafe conditions. F, deterioration of site or other improvements. And G, conditions that endanger life or property by fire or other cause. Or any combination of the following factors. B, in a federally assisted new community, in a home-ruled city, or adjacent to a federally assisted new community. B, located in a home-ruled city. D, primarily due to obsolete platting, deteriorated structures impairing or arresting growth. And finally, encompassed signs, billboards, or other, or outdoor advertising structures the governing body of the city designates for relocation. The Savannah Ranch area is not an appropriate place for such tax increment zone because it's clearly not a blight area. This property is the most prime development land in the entire city of Kyle that can accommodate luxury real estate. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Those are all the comments, forms that I have in front of me that wish to speak during this portion. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. Citizen comments is now closed. If there's no objection, I'm actually going to move the resolution regarding Armando Chapa up one so that we do the appointment after that. All right, seeing none, I'm going to, we're going to bring up the resolution honoring the life and legacy of longtime educator and principal, Mr. Armando Chapa, customer Tobias.
Thank you, mayor. I spent the last couple of nights just thinking about what I'm going to say this evening. But how can you describe a person in a short amount of time who has, who you've known most of all your life, who's made such a huge impact on so many people's lives through the years, including my own? Well, Mr. Armando Chapa is that person. Mr. Chapa started his careers with Hayes ISD as a nineteen, in 1974, as a counselor. He went on to become the principal of Hayes Middle and Wallace Middle School. When I was younger, Mr. Chapa was my junior high principal at Hayes Middle School, along with Mayor Pro Tim Robert Rizzo. He was a very kind person, who had a big smile, a big grin, was professional in his manner, but he meant business. I can remember, it was always a yes or no sir kind of conversations with him a lot. And there was no debate or arguing when it came to, hey, Mr. Tobias, is that the tardy bell that just rung? And why are you not in class? And why are you still standing there? True story, by the way. Though Mr. Chapa served as principal at different school campuses, student counseling was his calling. Mr. Armando Chapa was once quoted as saying, "Kids, look at you differently when you're a counselor rather than a principal." I enjoyed it all, but counseling is probably my first love. Mr. Chapa loved his students, and the students loved him back. Teachers and administrators, including like Ms. Walls, the principal at Chapa, admired and respected him just as much. From seeing him sitting in the stands with everybody, including my mom and dad, cheering on and supporting our Jaxi Hayes Rebels sport teams, and to attending school band or choir concerts, Mr. Chapa was always there with a smile on his face. He loved every minute of it. Growing up, another example I witnessed of Mr. Chapa's greatness was his devotion to St. Anthony's Mary Catholic Church, Ree Church. His passion for community service to his church, his brothers and sisters in Christ, was a true testament of his faith for him and his family. So just looking out, it's no surprise there's not an empty seat in chambers tonight. Honoring him, this packed house, City Hall, speaks volume. Volume on how much Mr. Armando Chapa has made a positive difference in all of our lives. He will be missed dearly. To the Chapa family, this means a lot. I can tell you how much appreciated all the messages, stories, and visits that were told, they received this last week. Your support for them during this time, city of Kyle, has been very overwhelming. So ladies and gentlemen, tonight, it is my honor that I would like to pay tribute to a great man, a leader, a mentor, reading this city resolution in honor and legacy of Mr. Armando Chapa. So it's Resolution 1295. A resolution of the city of council, of the city of Kyle, Texas, honoring the life and legacy of Armando Chapa, a longtime educator and community member of Kyle, Texas, whose career was dedicated to educate, inspire students, administrators in the city of Kyle to make a better place for all. Whereas, Armando Chapa, a longtime educator, principal, and student counselor, who championed advocacy in education for all students, and we are all blessed to have experienced his influence at the Hayes Consolidated School District here in Hayes County, Texas. Whereas, Armando Chapa, whose passion, creativeness, and courage had led and provided opportunities for generations of students and administrators in the city of Kyle through his guidance, his wisdom as principal at Hayes Middle and Wallace Middle Schools. Whereas, in September 2006, Armando Chapa was honored to be given the namesake of a new middle school, Armando Chapa Middle School, within the Hayes Consolidated Independent School District in Kyle, Texas, which is the home of the Chapa Cougars. And whereas, for many years, Armando Chapa, along with his family, was a devoted parishioner who was spiritually dedicated to his Catholic faith and service to his community at St. Anthony Mary Claire Catholic Church in Kyle, Texas. And whereas, Armando Chapa, a devoted husband to Angelina, loving father to his daughters, Veronica, Cynthia, Rebecca, Jessica, and Cassandra, by providing them love, grace, compassion, but most of all demonstrated the importance of family and education. Now therefore, it is resolved by the city council of the city of Kyle that the city council recognizes Armando Chapa's professional achievements and his contributions to the city of Kyle, and especially to the citizens of Kyle, former students and administrators, and expresses this, its appreciation and gratitude for those contributions as his legacy. This resolution will become effective immediately upon the passage of the city council. So with that, mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution of honoring the life and legacy of longtime educator, principal, Mr. Armando Chapa.
Second. All right, and the motion's made by customer Tobias, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Rizzo. Is there discussion on that motion? Mayor Pro Tim.
Mr. Chapa, family, just want to say thank you. Thank you for sharing a wonderful man with this community. I always joke around with Councilmember Tobias that we're a product of this city. We're born and raised here. Well, raised here? Yeah, definitely. And we are a product of this city, and what shaped us was great leaders like Mr. Chapa. You know, seventh and eighth grade year can be really tough, especially when you're growing up. I didn't actually take the right path early on and got in a little bit of trouble, you know, there in school. Mr. Chapa saw potential in me, took a lot of time mentoring me, working with me, and to this day, I give him a lot of credit for where I am today as a person, in my life, as a family man, serving with him on the Knights of Columbus. I was really an honor to be working alongside the man that I got to grow up admiring, because when you're a young Hispanic kid, there's not a lot of leaders up there that you can look to. Seeing Mr. Chapa there at the leadership role gave us hope and potential, and I can't say enough. But thank y'all for sharing him with this community, with all the young people in this community, all of us kids that grew up here. We definitely owe a lot to the Chapa family and Mr. Chapa. So thank y'all, and God bless you all.
Any other comments? Customer Flores Cale.
I'm just going to make it short because I don't think I'll be able to make it. But I just want to say thank you to you and your whole family and Mr. Armando, and just a reminder that I love you guys a lot. So if you need anything, let me know.
Anyone else? Customer Tobias, I think you had a comment form you want to?
Yes. At this time, Ms. Chapa, if you'd like to, or Rebecca.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name's Rebecca Chapa. On behalf of my mom and the Chapa family, we want to thank you and the Hayes ISD and Kyle community for all the phone calls, messages, and tributes charged for our dad. We are overwhelmed by the impact he has made to this community the past 40-plus years, and honored that you chose to recognize him and his accomplishments. Thank you.
Go ahead.
If we can, we can go ahead and pass, if we can go ahead and make the motion, make the motion, if we can pass that. And then afterwards, if we could have a moment of silence afterwards.
Okay, that'll be just fine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. We're going to have a moment of silence for Mr. Chapa at this time.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no objections, I know maybe there's some recollecting we want to do at this time, so we'll take a seven-minute break and we'll get right back to it. So we'll gavel back in at five minutes till, so at 7:55. So thank you. Six, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. Next up is agenda item number two, appointments. Approve the appointment of William Paez Tabash to the, or for the Kyle, or the Kyle, or the city of Kyle Emergency Management Coordinator. I think this might have been written a little bit strange, but approve William Paez Tabash as the Emergency Management Coordinator and Data Custodian for the State of Texas Emergency Assistance Registry. I've got, I've got William on this. So yeah, sorry, I didn't, I butchered that reading, so. Oh, okay, I see it now. I just didn't read it right. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I apologize for the title. I just wanted the appointment to exceed my tenure as the Emergency Management Coordinator because eventually you're going to have another one, and they should take that appointment as the data custodian. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So the action you're asking, normally, emergency, emergency management coordinator would be the emergency, emergency management coordinator for us. So it's a perfect alignment of state duties versus what you're here for.
Yes, what I'm asking for is access to the State of Texas Emergency Assistance Registry so that I have a list and locations for people with disabilities, access functional needs who register as not speaking English or otherwise unable to receive emergency broadcasts or notifications as normal. So once I'm able to know where they are, we can plan to accommodate them.
Okay, thank you. All right, motion to approve. Moved by the mayor, seconded by customer Ellison. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, agenda item number four, presentation from Frontier Communications about deploying fiber optics. David Russell.
Mayor Mitchell, members of the council, city manager Sellers, and other members of city staff, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I am David Russell from Frontier Communications, and I'm here tonight to tell you about an investment that Frontier wants to make here in Kyle in building a high-speed fiber optic network that will provide advanced services. And it will enable how we plan, I will talk about how we will enable the network, how we plan to communicate with the public about what we're doing, about our safety precautions, our methods of construction, and our restoration efforts. But first, let me introduce my colleagues who are here with me tonight. I've got Ryan O'Neil here, who is the Director of Construction and Engineering for the State of Texas for Frontier. Next to him is Andy Crenshaw, who is Senior Manager of Construction for South Texas. And then we have Brian Langford here, who is with Future Infrastructure, who is our contractor for this project in Kyle. A few weeks ago, I was talking with Julie Snyder at the Chamber of Commerce, and she was giving me some idea of the level of expansion and development activity that's taking place here in the city. You've got a lot going on, and I know that it's exciting, and I realize that it also can be very challenging for you with the changes that have to be made and for city staff. And admittedly, we are going to add some to that challenge. But I hope when I finish tonight, you'll agree that our investment will help enhance Kyle's reputation as a great place to live, work, and play. If I can drive, there we go. We plan to do this by extending fiber optic cables to customers' homes and businesses directly from our local switching center. Then we'll use high-intensity lasers to direct communications over the different wavelengths of light into your home and business. It will not replace our existing copper network. People can remain on copper if they choose to do so. But this new network will provide broadband speeds from 50 megabytes per second up to two gigabytes per second, with the potential to provide even faster services in the future. Now you may think to yourself, hearing that, why in the world would I ever need two gigabytes of broadband speed? Well, I've been fortunate enough to have this fiber optic service in my home for about 18 years. When it first started, I received 25 megabytes download speed, and that was awesome 18 years ago. But over time, more and more things have made demands on that network, and increased demand is inevitable as more and more of our devices are enabled to use it. But our fiber optic network will be capable, capable of handling increased speeds in the future to deal with new services. This is a simplified depiction of how our fiber will reach customers. It's 100% fiber from our central office to the home, along the public riceway to our fiber hubs throughout the city, and then the fiber terminals in your neighborhoods and on to the home or business where it connects to a router so you can provide voice and data communications. It's almost identical to the copper-based network we have in place today. It's just lots faster. There are two other important points that I want to make about this, though. With some companies, a customer has to share the bandwidth they get with other customers, but not with our network. If you sign up for 500 megabytes, that's exactly what you get. You don't share the bandwidth with anyone. Also, with most companies, you get one speed for downloads and a much slower speed for uploads. But our network is symmetrical. That means we offer the same speeds for both actions. That's incredibly valuable to any home or business that has to upload large amounts of data, and especially video. of data and especially video content. This can help you in your economic development efforts because there are people and companies who will look for this type of network in deciding where they locate. With the changes we've all seen in our society over the past two years, thanks to the pandemic, the need for this type of network makes more sense today than it ever has. How many of us work remotely, at least part of the time? I know I do. Remote learning in some form is here to stay, and streaming services like Netflix, Hulu, Disney, and others are the way an increasing number of people are choosing to get their video services and programming. And those are just a few examples. That's why Frontier has made the decision to invest in our network here and in other parts of Texas to be able to meet that demand. Obviously, to build this network, we're going to have to place new cable around town. We'll be placing buried cable throughout this year and into next year that will cover almost the entire community. Now, before we build, we will distribute door hangers to the homes and businesses in the area where we will be working. This is what they're going to look like. Here you can see the front and back of the door hangers. They have information about what we're doing with a number to call and an email address if people have questions or issues, and there's an indication of how long we will be working in their neighborhood. Now, we can't guarantee you or city staff won't get any calls, but we'll try to keep that to a minimum. In addition to the door hangers, we'll post signs at the main entry points to the areas where we're working. Here's what the signs will look like. They're nice and colorful to attract attention and big enough for people to read easily as they drive by. Naturally, we'll take those down when we're finished in an area and move them to the next area where we're working. Another thing we do is take pictures, or more commonly, take video of each street before we begin buried construction so we know what it looked like before our work, and we can have our construction contractor, Future Infrastructure, restore it appropriately after the work is finished. Here's what it will look like when we do the directional boring for our buried facilities. We don't dig open trenches, and we backfill any holes created by the boring once the work is completed. The safety of our customers, our employees, and our vendors is of utmost importance to us, and we'll take the steps necessary to make residents aware of what's happening and ensure that the work is performed safely and to city standards. There could be traffic control on several streets during the build due to the equipment that will be used, but safety will be our top priority. Now, in the picture there, if you can see it, note the orange fence netting that's around the hole up there. My laser pointer's not showing it up very well, but that's where we will place a buried cabinet called a handhole, and I'll show you one of those next. Here's what that will look like. As I said, we call this a handhole, and it can serve between four to eight customers, so not everyone will have one in their property. I actually have one very similar to this in the right of way at the front of my property. Residents may notice it at first, but once the grass grows in good, not for long. I do have to weed eat around mine occasionally, but that's about it. To connect the fiber to the home or business, we use a smaller fiber cable. We call it a drop. And in this picture, the drop is a black cable that's coming up the wall there to the gray box, which we call an optical network terminal, or ONT. The ONT is connected to a router that would be inside the home or business, which can then connect all sorts of devices either through a wired Ethernet connection or more commonly these days, a wireless Wi-Fi connection. Now, this is the setup that I have in my own home. Because of my role within the company, when we first introduced this type of network in the United States, I was one of the very first people who got to experience it, and that, like I said, was 18 years ago. I can testify, it is fabulous, and I'm very excited that you and your residents are going to be able to benefit from this service in the coming months. I appreciate your time and attention, and we look forward to working with city staff on moving ahead with this project as quickly as possible. Our construction team has already had meetings with Harper Wilder and members of his staff to get things moving, and I think on Friday they had a video call with City Manager Sellers and some of their Public Works folks, and he helped make us aware of the sensitivity the city has about trying to find opportunities to reduce the amount of aerial cable that the city has, and we're open to working with the city to try to do that wherever it makes sense. With that, my colleagues and I will be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have either tonight or you have my contact information here on the slide. Please feel free to reach out to me at any point in this process. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Tobias.
Okay, thank you. So this is like another internet provider coming through the area. As you know, this past couple of months, we've had Grande coming in as well. So two things. Will you be digging in the same area as their lines? Will they be crossing paths? Or if you're gonna be starting in certain neighborhoods? That would be probably a question that'll come up is, they pretty much finished in my neighborhood, but are you gonna be on the same diagram as far as the streets to dig through? Because I could already hear our residents saying, all right, now we got another company coming in tearing up our lawn. So that would be that question there, too. And also, when it comes to advertising or bringing awareness that you're gonna be in the city, will you be working with our social media group, with the communications group to get out like which neighborhoods you're gonna start with and so forth? Is that something we're working on?
Regarding to the first question, we don't know Grande's build plan, and we really don't want them to know ours. But your Public Works Department knows their build plan and our build plan, and that's who we're coordinating with, is Harper and his team. We will be building in some of the same networks because we're gonna be offering competitive services to some of the same customers, but the timing of that I don't know about. The second thing is, in terms of publicizing it, we'd be more than happy to work with your Services Department, the Communications Department, to try to do what needs to happen to publicize this better to your residents. Just tell me who to contact, and we'll work with them.
Okay. And your end product, when it comes to the routers, will you be needing, will the resident only need one router in the house or two?
Normally, it's one. If it's a big house, sometimes you need repeaters or a second router depending on the size of the home.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Yeah, just a real quick one question. So when you're boring, what is the contact number for residents in case there are some thing destroyed in their yard or their lawn or on the sidewalks? Is there a contact number for that?
Yes, and it's on the door hangers that I had on the screen there, and that'll be distributed to all the homes and businesses. There's a number and an email address as well, not just a number.
Okay, and how prompt are y'all in answering those requests?
I'll have to defer to Brian, if you want to respond to that.
Should be answered within 24 hours.
Okay. And who's gonna be the general oversight on that, on that part of it? Is there someone here in the area that is gonna oversee, making sure the contractors do that and are held accountable?
That person will report to Andy. You wanna identify if that's some, okay, Ryan is also the overlord here for all of Texas.
Come to the mic if you don't mind. And so, yes, so we will have an individual local, Joshua May, leading our construction build, working with Brian Langford and his team, and Brian will have a supervisor also that will be local to the build.
It'd be great if you could send those contact informations to council. I appreciate it.
We will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilperson Ellison.
So as was mentioned by my colleague, we did have another provider come in. Mine's gonna be just a general question here. We're excited, before I ask this question, we're excited that you're coming here, creating the competition, fiber, love it all. And thank you for sharing with us the background. I think your presentation actually helped answer a lot of questions, at least for me. My general question is, what took you so long? So, and the reason why I ask that is because for, I've been in this city for over a dozen years now, and for the longest I've been in here and probably longer than I've been here, there's been a rumor going around that the city has exclusivity with one provider of internet, and that's why no other providers have come to our city and all these other different things. So I'm trying to put that to bed here and just say that, what is it that changed that made you all want to come to our great city of Kyle at this time?
Well, I alluded it, I alluded to it in my remarks, and that, you know, we're a competitive company, and so market dynamics drive a lot of our business decisions. And the reality is, is that there are physical limitations to what copper cable can do, just simple physics. And over time, as I said, the 25 megabytes that I got 18 years ago, that's kind of the floor now of what people need to communicate. And frankly, the pandemic has driven a lot of that because so many people are working remotely and doing everything remotely. The lack of that type of broadband speed has really sparked a lot of public demand for this type of network. Well, the marketplace responds to demand, and that's what we're doing in that we've provided this type of network in large cities where you have, you know, larger markets, a lot more people. But the price points have changed in that the cost of fiber has come down because it's getting a lot more common for people to do fiber, and the technology has improved. You know, technology is disruptive, and wireless is a disruptive technology, and 5G is supposed to do a lot of the stuff that we're talking about. But how many of you have 5G today? Okay, that's about how many people have 5G, all right? So 5G's good, I'm not talking bad about it. I used to be with Verizon, so I know, I know about wireless. But not every, 5G's gonna take a while. And the reality is, is that the simple physics of 5G and wireless technology does not compare to lasers and fiber optics. Because while we're gonna be offering two gigabyte service, that's not the upward end of it. We've been testing upward to 25 gigabytes, and we don't think that's the limit either. So it's a superior technology that we think will be competitive for a long time to come. That's why we're willing to make the investment now. We've already done a lot of the primary markets. Now we're looking at the secondary markets around the larger cities. And also, there's some push from the government to try to extend the higher level of broadband coverage. That's also an incentive because we think that's gonna provide more of a customer base.
I think that was an excellent answer. We get that timestamp on that one to send that out when residents ask about why we're keeping internet away from the city. We're not. And so I think that was a great, great answer. Obviously, there are a number of different factors that go into that, and it's largely a business decision. Economics and demand. All right, that's essentially what I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Councilperson Flor scale.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this to Kyle. It's exciting because we had no options, and now we're having like two or three, so thank you. I guess my question, which I think a lot of residents are gonna ask and wonder about is how much is the cost?
Well, this is not a sales presentation, so I'm not gonna talk money. But we will have, once we build the network, and that's, you know, our big push now, and that's what these guys, they live and breathe being able to build this network in Kyle and other cities. So that's what keeps them up at night. We can't sell it if we don't have the network in place. So that's where we would ask for the city to work with us as quickly as possible so that we could inconvenience your city and your residents as little as possible and get this service turned up. Once we light up the network, we will have sales and marketing teams come in to begin selling the network, and it will be priced competitive. But I'm not gonna name any prices just now.
Okay, and then one more question. What does the completion date look like?
It's April. We had hoped to get started in February or so, so we're a little bit behind the schedule that we had hoped to be able to meet. The sooner we can get started, the sooner we can get finished. My guys have told me that we're gonna be probably bumping into early 2023. You know, that can be flexible if things move faster, but that's kind of what we're looking at right now. We don't have a month, they haven't told me a specific month or time because I ask them these questions before I get up here. But that's what they've told me is sometime in early 2023 would be when we'd be finished.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, City Manager's report, Mr. Sellers.
Okay, Mayor Council Scott Sellers, City Manager for the record. Wait for that to move forward. First, we have Samantha Arberster.
Hi, council, everyone. We wanted to give an update on the Hayes County Tire Drive. There have been a couple of changes since the last time we reported on this, so we want to make sure everyone is aware of that. It was a two-day event. It is now a one-day event, so it will be on April 23rd, and it's first come, first served, so get there early. I think there's gonna be quite the demand, so just want to make sure everyone is aware of the Tire Drive coming up, being hosted by Hayes County.
Thank you. And we have Paul Phelan as well as Mariana Espinoza to talk about Earth Day festivities.
Okay, good evening. Mayor Council, for the record, I'm Paul Phelan, Director of Library Services. And just a reminder that we have Earth Day coming up, April 23rd, this Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00. We will have crafts and bounce house for the kids. We will have snacks. Very nice schedule inside between 12:00 and 4:00, the Hill Country Alliance, composting with Conrad, Austin Water Wildland Conservation, Hayes County Master Naturalist, Great Springs Project, Plum Creek Watershed Partnership. And those will just run one right after another, 12:00 to 4:00 inside. So I think it's gonna be a great time and also give you a chance just to give a shout out to Parks. They put in new landscaping out front, it looks really good, so we're excited to show that off. You know, we just had it done recently, so that's a great thing. Thank you.
Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Director. And on Earth Day this Friday, the Parks Department will have a plant giveaway at Mary Kyle Hartson Park, and that will be between the hours of 5:00 to 7:00. We have about 100 flower and household plants to give away. And then next Wednesday, we have a seasonal job hiring event. It will be held at Greg Clark Park. We are in great, great need of summer lifeguards and summer camp counselors for both teen camp and youth camp. It'll be a chance for those that are 16 and older interested in summer employment to come out, meet the staff, learn about the job. And we will also have opportunities to interview and offer on-the-spot jobs as well. And then next Friday, we have our first movie of the, in the park of the season at Greg Clark Park at 7:30, which will be The Lion King.
Thank you. Next, we have Amber Lewis.
Good evening, mayor and council. So you all know we're in the middle of developing our downtown master plan, and so right now we are beginning the stage of public engagement, and so we wanted to let you know about opportunities to participate in that. We're going to have a survey. You can go online to the city's website, or you can attend the city's events and do the fair in person. So we hope everybody participates.
And finally, we have Chief Barnett.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. I just wanted to bring to light an event that we're hosting at the Police Department. We are going to partner with Texas Water Utilities and the Federal Drug Enforcement Agency to host a drug disposal day. It's Prescription Drug Takeback Day. This is gonna be held on April 30th from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. in the lobby of the Police Department. The purpose of this is that drugs disposed of improperly, especially by flushing, can contaminate our groundwater and seep through wastewater treatment plants into our rivers and lakes, causing hormones and antibiotics and other drugs to pollute our community waterways. This is a safe way for people to dispose of their medications, their expired medications, the medications for their pets and such. We will have a place they can properly dispose of that in the lobby of the Police Department again April 30th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. This concludes my report.
All right. All right, next up, agenda item number six, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation. Mr. Barba.
Good evening, mayor and council. Leon Barba, City Engineer. First project I'll bring up is Heroes Memorial Park. Based on our current project pay estimate, we're at about 78% complete. They're still working on the memorial honor wall. The bridge structure is substantially complete. They still need a little bit more patching things to do on that, but it's substantially complete now. They're continuing to install landscaping, and we're expecting the completion date to be in July. La Veta de Park is at 47% complete. They're erecting the pavilion and bathroom, structural members excavating for the volleyball sand pit and excavating for the dog park, and we're expecting that completion date in late 2022. Public Safety Center, as I mentioned earlier, one of the previous presentations, there's four different phases to this particular project. Phase one, Level One, they're working on the interior metal framing. Phase one, they're also working on the overhead mechanical electrical plumbing equipment. Phase two, they're also working on plumbing. Phase two and three, they're working on the slabs, they're placing on the metal decks. And on phase four, they're doing the structural steel erection, so they're moving fairly well on that project. Estimated completion is February of 2023. South Side Wastewater Improvements, based on the pay estimates, we're at 96% complete. We're still working on that wastewater line there on the northbound Frendage Road by the Edwards Drive project. Wastewater Treatment and Expansion Plant, we're at 93% complete with the plant itself. The dewatered facility, we're still at about 13% complete. They continue to work on Saturdays to try to stay on schedule. We're still continuing to work on training the operators, and we had to slip again a little bit on the schedule. a little bit on the schedule, so we're looking at early May of 2022 to, uh, uh, open up the plant and we're, due to supply chain issues that we had there. Uh, de-watering facility, we expect to be completed with that one and online in August of 2022. Here's the overall picture of the site. And we had quite a few people doing the training on these clarifiers that we have out there and, uh, they're training also for the pump controls that we have out there. Just to let you know the status on a couple of other projects that we're working on or items that we're working on. We did have a ropan high house, uh, last week. Unfortunately, we didn't have a lot of visitors. We just had two visitors there. Our staff probably outnumbered the folks that we had coming by, but, uh, we were there for questions in case anybody had any. Uh, the permanent amendment that we submitted to TCQ to take us up to nine and possibly 12 MGD, uh, we, they requested additional information and we're responding to their questions. Uh, the application to the Texas Water Development Board, uh, we're still waiting on notice to, to, uh, give us an invitation to apply. Glad to say the Bunting Creek Interceptor Phase Two, we're through with the 36-inch line has been connected. Um, we still have some 12-inch reclaimed line that we need to install. And, uh, the 42-inch line, by the way, is ready to go. We have a couple of subdivisions that are, I need to tie into that, so at least that lower section is ready to go. Old Post Road, the south portion is open, uh, all the way up to Zarya. And, uh, the church does have access, the, uh, we've made access for the, uh, concrete company also. And, uh, we're mobilizing on the north end and we're setting out erosion controls. Elliott Branch Interceptor, we're at about 61% complete. Uh, we're working on Grove Street right now, installing manholes. And, uh, we're still wrapping up the, uh, line that's on Old Highway 81. There's quite a few consent agenda items. Let me start with number 13. Uh, that's a surveying, uh, for some construction staking that we need for the north end of the Old Post Road project. Uh, number 14, I'm requesting, uh, council to go ahead and postpone that particular item. There's a question concerning the contractor's, uh, paperwork that we need to question. On item 15, uh, this is a task ordered LGA to widen the I-35 southbound Frontage Road. Number 16, that's another task order to CPNY to provide, uh, our preliminary engineering report we need for 150. We're anticipating submitting to Campo, so we need for them to start as soon as possible. Uh, same thing for number 17, that's to LGA for the Coles Crossing Overpass. We're also wanting to submit that project to Campo, so we need some, uh, estimates so we can submit, uh, what we have. Uh, number 18, this authorizes a city manager to negotiate agreements with the six engineering firms that were selected to provide preliminary engineering reports for the rest of the road bond projects that we want to take, uh, possibly to the voters. Jerry, did you have something you want to present?
Mayor Councilmember Jerry Hendricks, Assistant City Manager for the record, just wanted to update you briefly on, uh, some of the beautification projects we have in the works. For the corridor beautification projects, they're still finalizing their permits and their traffic control plans, as well as, um, getting all their materials in order and on order. Uh, I do know that the roundabout should be in construction sometime next week, and we'll be meeting shortly to review that traffic control plan and make sure that the public's notified, should there be any disruptions in their, in their travel patterns in that area. And, uh, for the irrigation project, we did have, uh, onsite meeting with them on, uh, April 7th. They're still working on finishing the irrigation, uh, irrigation plans to 100% and then they'll begin construction on that project too. And I'm available for any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Jerry or for Leon? All right, thank you very much. Uh, next up is the, oh, Councilperson Ellison.
You asked very specifically for those two, so I didn't have any for them. But I do, uh, councilman, uh, we, uh, have a update that, uh, the deputy and I want to provide you all on, um, the Public Safety Center, and I think that's the appropriate time to do it now since these are the projects. So we did have one that came up before last meeting, and then we had one come up before this meeting, so we just want to keep you all in the loop on them. Uh, the first one, there was, um, no change, uh, to the, uh, amount. Uh, so there was a external fencing, that there were some issues in getting the, uh, the brick that we originally wanted in on time. So there were some options to, uh, choose two other colors of brick, but it would have been, uh, an additional cost. Uh, there was an option of one color brick that was lighter than the original idea that we had for the, uh, it's, this is just the perimeter fence, so not even the building. Um, and so we decided to not add any additional cost for the perimeter fence because we knew we probably have, uh, other things on the building and we wanted to save any additional cost for the building, so we went on and went with the lighter colored perimeter fence. Uh, in regards to that one, uh, did you have anything you want to add to that?
Just wanted to say that the reason we, we wouldn't, hadn't made that call was because of time, making sure that we didn't extend the project, uh, time, uh, finish date. So it was something that, uh, we got on a call with chief and, uh, just went forward with it. Uh, just wanted to give, provide an update to the council so that they, we, they know why we went forward with this and, um, it was, it was timing, really what it was, and making sure we had the savings because material's hard to get right now.
Right, and so this, this particular, I'm going to bring up a second item, but this particular item, there was no change in the cost. Now, we could have went with the other two, uh, and they would have come in on time, so it wouldn't have changed the, the, uh, time, but it would have been an additional cost. So, uh, we just, we neglected to mention that last time and wanted to make sure we kept you all aware. And I just want to take a moment to say AGCM has been really great about providing us a great summary. They get us on the line, where are you guys at? Uh, with chief and, and Scott and whomever else is a part of it, uh, and then council, uh, Mayor Protim Rizzo and I, um, sometimes these decisions are, are very timely and to make a decision, because every day that goes by extends, could extend the project, could extend costs even more than the actual day. So we thank AGCM for, for keeping a surprise of those. The second thing that we had to look at this week, this past week, was, uh, switch gears, uh, that help, uh, cool the building essentially, uh, for various different projects that will be coming up, flooring and, and different things like that. So, um, we did have to make a, a tough decision on that. Um, if I'm going to just break it down really simply, uh, we had a roughly $24,000, uh, quick ship on the switch gears. Otherwise, it would have been a 32-week projected, uh, receiving on those instead of the 16-week lead time. So, um, uh, like I said, once again, we went on and made the decision to go with the, uh, the additional cost of the 24,000, but because we wanted to keep with the timeframe, um, with the 16-week, weekly time. So, uh, certainly happy to answer any questions on that, and certainly AGCM can, can help fill in any details as well. But we just, once again, trying to do our best to keep you all in the loop, and I hope you all understand why it's kind of like this, because some decisions just, we can't wait every two weeks to bring them back to council every time, so I hope you all understand that. Certainly, if there's a different direction you all would like to give to, uh, Mayor Protim Rizzo and I, we'd be certainly happy to hear it.
Customer floor scale.
Thank you. My first question is going to be, um, do you guys work on that because you're on the task force? Is that, I guess I'm confused as to why.
Yeah, so essentially, uh, by and large, that, I mean, at the end of the day, once again, uh, you know, it's a challenge, I think, for the overall project to wait for every two weeks to bring it back to the full body. Uh, Mayor Protim Rizzo and I are the only two councilmembers left that were still on that task force, that were a part of this process from the beginning. So we're trying to keep it as close to what it was, but once again, for the sake of time, just trying to, um...
Okay. Um, and then the $24,000 quick ship was just to get it mailed faster? Is that correct?
Uh, yeah. David, if you want to take that one, it'd probably be better.
David Harding, AGCM, project manager. Yes, that, the answer's yes. So what we had, and they're absolutely right, and I, I want to say I really applaud this, that you guys are doing this because some, things are moving fast. We are in a market where pricing is going up, lead times are just going crazy with certain materials, and we get calls we have to make in like days. Um, and it's, it can be really challenging because we don't, we don't always know, like, you know, $24,000 sounds like a lot of money. The problem is if you push out a construction contract 32 weeks and you, you incur extended general conditions of like $2,000 a day, that's going to far exceed a $24,000 ship, you know, quick ship cost. So we make those kinds of decisions. Um, uh, councilmember Rizzo and Ellison have been excellent in helping me to sort of navigate and expedite these channels. My goal is never to circumvent council, ever. We just, we want to do what's in the best interest of the city of Kyle and help you guys make the best decisions in the most, uh, in the, in the best possible timeframe, uh, given the fact that we are under the gun on a lot of these. I hope that answers the question to some degree.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Uh, all right, anyone else? Uh, customer Tobias.
Um, thank you both for doing that, Mayor Protim and Councilman Ellison. These projects, we do want to keep going and, uh, I, I appreciate you guys, uh, informing us about that, but staying on the ball and it, making these quick decisions because we need to keep this going. And it is true about the, the product of when you stalemate a construction project or whatever it is, like we're going through right now at my current work, uh, it adds money. And then next thing you know, those vendors go to another job. And then next thing you know, we're three weeks, four weeks behind, so thank you both for staying on top of that. Appreciate it.
One of the things also is that, uh, as you're waiting, uh, products are harder and harder to get, uh, hold of, so any, uh, time you, uh, postpone something, uh, being ordered, you might not get it. The 32 weeks was not a guarantee, so there's, there's definitely a lot going on with the market right now, so definitely got to be proactive and, and, and work with a lot of speed, so it's kind of crazy market right now. Thank you, Dave.
All right, next up is the consent agenda. Uh, I need to pull items 14, 21, and 22. Uh, are there other items wishing to be pulled? Customer floor scale.
All right, I'd like to pull items nine, 11, 12, and 19.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve agenda items seven, eight, 10, 13, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 20.
Second.
All right, it's a motion by the mayor, second by customer Flores Kale. Is there a discussion on that motion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Uh, motion carries seven to zero. Uh, uh, items 14, 20, and 21, I'm sorry, 14, 21, and 22 are all requesting for, uh, postponement. Um, agenda item number nine, authorize a change in the company name from Brightview Landscape, uh, Services Inc., DBA WLE, to Brightview Landscape Development Inc. on March 21, 2022. Uh, change order was authorized by city council, uh, to Brightview, uh, to add four additional scopes of work in an amount not to exceed $430,669.78, uh, for providing landscape tree planting irrigation services in the city's beautification corridors. This is Mr. Hendricks' item, Councilmember Flores Kale.
Thank you. Um, may I ask who said this was, uh, a quote, I think in here is a housekeeping item?
I did.
Okay. Um, so, and I'm kind of confused because, uh, once I looked it up online, it's, it's definitely not a name change, um, regarding Brightview Landscape Services, comma, Inc., DBA WLE. That is one entity. Another entity is Brightview Landscape Development, comma, Inc. So we're not just switching out names, we're switching out companies.
With, with them, Brightview and their, WLE's, uh, being acquired by Brightview, they have a lot of internal stuff going on, a lot of transition. We, when we originally wrote, submitted for the agenda item, the paperwork they gave us indicated one name, when we submitted those POs, they've asked us to change them to a different part of their organization. And that's all we're bringing forward now is to clean up that, make sure that the POs represent the right part of their organization. It's not something that initiated with us, it's that they asked us to change that on their behalf.
Okay, um, well, my only fear is if we switch from one company to another, that it might bring some issues in the future. Um, how do, like, what, what did you guys see or obtain from the companies to confirm that, that there's a merger or there's a sale and we, you have the authority to transfer this contract from one company to another?
We asked for a W9 for all the POs and, and companies that we write checks to and enter into contracts with.
Okay, so the, that, I, I get, so a W9 is like a social security number, and that will be for either one of the companies. But my question is, maybe I'm, I should ask Paige, when we switch contracts, um, or entities that have that contract, is there anything that the city should have on file, any merger documents, any kind of, um, information that shows that we are not breaking contract with one to go to another?
Usually when a company is acquired by another, then we would, uh, if there's an assignment clause in the agreement, then we would approve this through an assignment. Um, and they would provide information just to confirm that transfer of the company. And so that would support the city's approval of the assignment. I see that the agreement was approved, like, a month ago, a month and a half ago, so that's probably why they're asking for a name change. But it would, it'd be, it'd be helpful to have that similar information to understand the company acquisition, um, aspect of what has happened here. That's, that would...
Like a transfer of contract would be really, like, it would be reassuring for me.
That'd be typical of an assignment. Yeah, it's, it's a change order. See, there was an existing contract with WLE, and so, yeah, and then you had a change order. So if they, we did an assignment that would cover everything, approved an assignment that would also cover the existing contract.
All right, I'll give the provence to make sure all that's in order.
Okay.
Can I say that this is just to protect the city? This is to make sure that we don't switch this contract out and then later on, one of the companies sue us. So that, that's all this is for. But with that said, um, are we going to postpone this one as well?
It's, it's within, that's within council's discretion. I don't, I don't have the background information to advise whether it would be sufficient as proposed, so...
Well, I would like to make a motion to postpone until we see, uh, a transfer contract.
Or appropriate documentation, yeah.
Yeah, or appropriate documentation showing the transfer, um, authority of transfer of contract.
All right, motion by customer Flores Kale, second by customer Parsley, that we postpone agenda item number nine until we are, until we receive a transfer contract that shows that, uh, transfer's taking place. Is there a discussion on the motion? Mayor Protim Rizzo.
Yeah, Jerry, uh, are they currently working for us on this contract?
No, they're about ready to begin construction on, on the roundabout. And since, and it looked like it was just a housekeeping measure, I told them to not slow down on their prep work so that we didn't lose time. So if it would be appropriate for me to have them stop, then I could have them stop.
So this is going to delay the project, uh, two more weeks?
Okay, maybe what I would do is maybe, um, don't vote on this item at this time and let me see if I can look at it while we're in this meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, okay, so we can just, uh...
Just withdraw your motion?
I, I'll withdraw my motion until Paige advises.
We'll, uh, we'll skip through agenda item number nine and we'll, we'll come back, uh, later to take it up. Uh, next up, agenda item number 11, authorize award and execution of a purchase order to artistic holiday designs in an amount not to exceed $65,475.74 for holiday displays for Mary-Kyle Hartson City Square Park. Uh, this item is Mariana Espinoza, customer Flores Kale, you have the floor.
Thank you, and if it's possible, may I please discuss 11 and 12 so we can kind of knock them out?
Uh, sure. Uh, if there are no objections, I'm going to bring item 12 up as well, seeing none. Item number 12, authorize award and execution of a purchase order to downtown decorations. Frederick Spurg, Texas, in an amount not to exceed $19,148.22 for holiday displays for Mary-Kyle Hartson City Square Park through the buy board program.
Okay, so my first question is, these are going to go at the Mary-Kyle Hartson Park?
Yes, the new decoration all goes at the Mary-Kyle Hartson.
Um, so my, my concern is, it felt really tight there last year, um, and really like, I, I think it was good for what it was, like, it was perfect, like, not too much. So, and I saw on the layout that you guys had places for it. Um, so my two concerns are, we did 120, 175,000 last year, so, and we got, I mean, I think people were pretty, um, initially they were upset, residents were upset, and then they kind of appreciated it, which kind of teeters me on the fence of, do we spend another almost $85,000 on lights? Um, so how do I justify that to my residents?
All right, hang on, just, Councilperson Flores Kale has the floor, so whenever you're, it'll go to Councilperson Ellison.
So first of all, I would, in regards to the layout, some, not all of the decoration will go by...
So first off, in regards to the layout, some, not all of the decoration will go back where they were. Some of them, we are currently in plans to use some of our old decoration at Greg Clark Park so that there'll be a drive-through of holiday decoration at Greg Clark Park. And since some of the older pieces will be utilized over there. So we are currently, we're working the plan to place all the new displays. And then based off council direction last year, and I think maybe some visioning retreat conversations and city staff directives, we were asked, you know, to always try and bring in new decorations every single year, hence why the annual funding was approved.
Okay, well, I'm going to be honest, it makes me feel a lot better knowing that some of these that we used last year are going to be at Greg Clark Park. I think that's a little bit of exciting, is that correct that you're going to?
That's correct.
Okay, those are my, that was my concern is, and this money is going to come from the water tower light that we had to do a budget amendment on, so that is kind of a concern to me. That's it.
Cusper Ellison.
Thank you. So one thing I would say to the residents is this money is coming from the Park Development Fund. Because that was one of the changes we made, and I'm looking for Perviz. He left. Right on cue. So when we did do the budget amendment last summer for this funding, it was originally proposed to come from the general fund, but it was, the idea was changed to make the funds come from Park Development Funds, which taxpayers do not pay those funds into that fund, correct? That is provided through developers that pay into that fund along with impact fees, adjacent lane mile fees, and things like that. Perviz, right on time. We're talking about where the money is coming from for the reprogramming of the funds from the historic Water Tower Festive Lighting. That funding, the line item is from the Park Development Fund, correct?
That's correct. Mayor and council, for the record, I'm Perviz Mahid, City's Director of Finance. In the current approved budget, when we had, council adopted the budget, $175,000 was earmarked for the Historic Water Tower Festive Lighting Project. And that was dedicated from the Park Development Fund.
Certainly. We won't mention whose great idea that was. But, so that is one thing that is a big difference there for me is that none of the funds that went towards any of the lights last year and what is being proposed here are coming, none of it is coming from ad valorem property tax rates, correct?
That's correct.
All right, I will say though, I was, I did vote against this funding for the Historic Water Tower Festive Lighting because I didn't think we had a good idea of what that was going to cost at the time. I was in favor of the lights that went into the square because we did have a good estimate and invoice on that. So hopefully the council never does this again. I wasn't a big fan of it. I'm not a big fan of budget amendments, particularly ones without thorough investigating of what things will cost. But since it was done, I am happy that the funds are still coming from the Park Development Fund in order to repurpose this. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protim. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve items 11 and 12.
Second.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Cusper Floris Kale. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. If there are no objections, we're going to postpone agenda item number 14. We will bring it back. And next up, agenda item number 19, authorize mayor is designated to execute contract with Grant Works for the purpose of preparing and submitting grant applications on behalf of the City of Kyle. This is Mr. Earp's item, Cusper Floris Kale.
Thank you. Number 19. Here he comes. Hi. Hi, okay.
Hello.
So I didn't know if you were going to state your name for the record.
Oh, well, sure, I was waiting for the question. Mayor and council, for the record, James Earp, Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Earp. I just, would you just give a brief description of what this is? The grants work, I know as somebody that we decided to hire for grant work?
Sure, so a quick presentation on the item. This goes back to the RFP that the City Council awarded at the last council meeting. This is the contract that will allow them to move forward with their actual work. What they're writing a grant for is a hazard mitigation grant. Of the items that we had originally looked at, we feel like the generators are going to score the best considering that they don't have income requirements that some of the other, you know, projects that we would have looked at and liked to have done do. The grant window did get extended to June 30th, so we're happy to have a little bit more time under our belts because they were originally due April 30th. But Grant Works is standing by and has been doing a lot of work behind the scenes since the award on the RFP, but they have been very adamant that they are not taking a single stroke on their contract or on the application until they have their contract, so. So that's what's before you tonight is just to authorize them to get the application pulled together and submitted for us.
Fair enough, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item 19.
Second, motion by Cusper Floris Kale, seconded by the mayor. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up, we're going to bring up agenda item 23, consider a sponsorship or donation to the 2022 Operations Hats Off for Veterans event benefiting the Kyle BFW Post 12058 and their Veteran Services Programs. Councilperson Ellison.
All right. So the agenda item is pretty descriptive there. So some of you all might have seen this flyer, council, and for the residents. So this is the annual fundraiser that the BFW, Kyle BFW Post 12058, does every year. The proceeds will benefit that post and their veteran service program. And if any of you all are familiar with our BFW Post 12058, and I think Jimmy Contetto says it the best, is they're not, their post is not about having a good time and a bar and all these other different types of things. They use all their funding to help veterans. And that is, that is something they wear on their sleeve and they're very proud of it, as they should be. So there is an event on Sunday, April 24th, that I had the city manager forward you all the Eventbrite invite that showed the different sponsorship levels. And I wanted to come to the council and see if there was any interest in sponsoring on any type of level or any type of amount for this event.
All right, thank you, Councilmember, any, Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank Councilmember Ellison for bringing this up. This is something that I wanted to like do personally. So I would fully support, you know, giving some sponsorship to the BFW for the Hats Off Veterans Event. I do see that they have tables for $300. I believe that's the amount that I saw. I don't know exactly how much do we want to support, but something that we can discuss in here. But I'm glad, I appreciate that you brought this back.
All right, any other thoughts, comments? Cusper Floris Kale.
Thank you. I'm interested in going, so I don't know if we just want to take kind of like a head count of people. Can you tell us when it was again, I'm sorry?
So this Sunday.
Okay, this Sunday, so maybe we can get a good idea of who wants to go and that can start from there as far as the sponsorship level?
Doors open at 2, live music at 4.
But the tables are $300, do we know how many people can sit at a table? Eight. Eight, that's all of us. So maybe we do a table? Or two?
I'm certainly not, I was asked this already. I didn't come with a recommendation because I know, well, special interest funding and all these other different things have been a contentious item on this council. So I wanted to at least ask the question first before I came with a recommendation of a dollar amount. So I wanted to check the council's temperature on that. And then if we were, I wanted the body to make the recommendation.
Well, are you opposed to the $300 table? Does that seem kind of in line with what you were hoping for? Well, I think we're actually looking for a little help.
Gotcha, I just, as you mentioned, I've dealt with a lot on this council in my time and not sure really where sometimes we are. So I was going to be happy whatever we could do, and I'm sure the BFW would be happy with whatever we could do. Because it's more than just the money. I think it is a notion of support for what they do at the veteran services in our community. So, you're not going to hold me to a number, man, I'm sorry.
Mayor Protim.
Yeah, just real quick, I'm definitely in favor of this. I think this is a great event to attend and to see the city really sponsor and help out our veterans. I guess my question is for Scott. Scott, I know the council's been very dead set against giving to charity, but since this being a table, I don't see it as a charitable gift, correct?
Councils typically purchase tables for events, including chamber events and other nonprofits.
Okay, because I know we're going to get that question, so I wanted to bring that out. So I'm making sure that they know that this is something that we're getting returned as well, so. Yeah, definitely, I'm looking at the sponsorships, I'm good with a $300 table.
Want to do an emotion?
I'd like to make a motion that, I guess, staff would be, would be staff?
Yeah, direct staff to.
Direct staff to sponsor a table at the Veterans, Operation Hats Off for Veterans at the, what is that, the Old Town, Texas Old Town, correct?
All right, the motion's made, is there a second? Moved by Mayor Protim, seconded by Councilperson Ellison that we sponsor a table for the event. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up, agenda item 24, discussion of possible action regarding mayor and council expenses to be published and updated every month in the City of Kyle webpage. Councilperson Parsley.
Thank you, Mayor. So I do have to give a little history of why I'm requesting this item, and you may answer questions that you may have after. As a new council member, I thought I was doing my due diligence by reviewing all council city manager's expenses when we were to renew his contract. And I noticed on the documents that were provided to me that there was, there was a big jump from $9,000 to $61,000 from one year to the other. And of course, not all the expenses belonged to him. A lot of the items were listed at council member, council member. Some of them had names, some of them didn't. So that's how I know not everything was spent by him. That prompt, Councilmember Floris Kale to request council expenses and reimbursements from the credit cards that we get, I mean, not all of them have them, but from the credit cards that we use. So I'm pretty sure that you all received that backup material a few days ago. And I'm pretty sure you also noticed that there is big discrepancies in what we spend. So I would assume until now, none of you were aware of how much each other spends. I know some of you said that didn't know. So up until December 16, when I got appointed, you know, I was a normal resident of Kyle, paying taxes. And I know my taxes are paying for some of these expenses. So to me seeing that, you know, some council members seem to spend responsibly and not others, it was a big red flag. I have estimated values in here, they're not correct. I'm pretty sure that there has to be, you know, values has to be added, but the expenses that city manager did on his credit card. But seeing somebody that spends five times the amount that the rest of the council is pretty concerning to me because none of, none of the items that I have in here have any story on like other than meals, 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 almost 30 days out of the month. That's pretty concerning to me because my taxes and residents' taxes are paying for these meals. And they're not little. So I know we have policies in place that talk about spending. Where are my policies? They're on the City of Kyle site. And so the other thing that was concerning to me is that when we have a credit card policy, I believe at the beginning I thought it was $1,500. I just realized mine is $5,000. And there was an increase on that amount on October 2021 as Mr. Perez provided for us a few days, yesterday or today before. Now, may I ask a question, Mr. Perez? When this increase happened, was there because a council member went over that limit and the credit card declined?
That is correct.
Okay. Has that happened to any other council member?
At that time, it was end of the month for the statement, and that particular council member had reached almost close to their maximum credit availability, and their transaction was declined.
Okay, and so the following two months, the limit was reached again, and it was over the $1,500, and that's why the $5,000 limit was given to all council. I'm assuming, correct?
I don't know the following two months, but the September 2021, I know for sure that particular council member's credit was close to maximum.
Let me pull up my backup material. So my point being is, I believe it's excessive. I mean, there is seven people in this council, and then none of them had spent that much. So as a resident, prior to this, I would want to know where my taxpayer, my tax money is going and how our elected officials are spending this money. So I would like for, I don't know if it's a direction to start, but I would like to see under every council member on the City of Kyle page, monthly reports of how much every council member is spending.
I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to put council expenses on the council website monthly as outlined by Councilmember Parsley.
Second.
Moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Floris Kale. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilperson Bretschel.
Yeah, so I just have a few questions. I think it's a great idea to put the expenses up there, absolutely. It's definitely going to be preventative in the future, avoiding the same situation that we're in right now. However, I do want to know, are we going to just do the credit cards that we are granted? Or would you like to include travel expenses as well? Because these numbers that you provided us with are cherry picked, not including travel expenses.
Oh, absolutely. So maybe, and I don't know how that, this can look, as you mentioned, normally out of your car, travel expenses, hotels, so the residents are not seeing that. So would it be easier if travel expenses get charged to each council member's cards? And to the council members that don't have a card, then it will be, I guess, under the city's card, but it will be specified, this is for so and so.
So I'll answer that, I believe that's directed to me. It may on the backend, when travel is booked, it's very difficult to split out individual tickets and hotels, et cetera, on different cards, right? Everything typically is purchased on one itinerary, one card. I'm going to look to Jennifer, not to put you on the spot, but Jennifer does the coding for those expenses and has worked with finance on how that coding is done. So I don't know if on the backend, it can be parsed out at that point.
I would defer to Perviz that I'm not sure how the finance.
Updato.
Sovereign goes, sorry.
I don't know if council is seeking my advice or just specifically answer to that question.
Please, you are the finance director, so.
It would make my life a whole lot easier to put these expenses on the website if each council member would account for their own expenses on their own cards. If you don't want to use a city card, it's fine. But use your own personal card and seek reimbursement from the city. This way, we can track individually because it's very difficult for us to go back and decipher what Scott spent for council members or on their behalf. But if you do it, just like the rest of the city employees do, you are accountable for your expenses. You incur it either on the city's credit card we issued you, or if you don't want to use city credit card, use your own personal credit card and we'll reimburse you. This way, I can very easily, and my staff can very easily, track. And the other thing we're going to do in the next year, proposed budget that will, I think, answer a lot of your questions and will make it easy for citizens to track, we will create a special cost center for each council office. So you will have line item budgets, your salaries, your travel by council district.
Beautiful.
And we will bring forward that in the proposed budget. That would be my proposal to city manager and council, that we do that in the future. I don't know, council member, if I answered your question?
Yes, you did, and that will make more sense to me. And I also want to thank you because I know I really annoyed you guys asking for all these numbers, but I'm new, and I am here asking the questions that the residents are asking me on my Facebook page or my email, and it's my duty to respond to them. And I would like to that, that they also want to have Scott's expense, city manager's expenses posted on the site. So if that's a possibility, I would like to add that.
And I'd like to add one more suggestion. We need to have a policy for city council. In my chain of command, city council is not in it. I report to city manager, and that's the end of my chain of command. So if a council member does not abide by regular city employee policy, it cannot be expected of me and my staff to say, we cut your credit card off, or we're not going to reimburse you. I think city council should have its own policy, how you want to police your expenditures.
Councilor Tobias.
Yes, thank you. Now, the question is coming up about expenses and travel. I know with my work schedule and family schedule, I don't go much places, and I know I've been to, you know, the retreat, the workshops, and I've been to the training last July. I think that's what the 175 was for, online was for the TML training. But where are you guys going? They want to travel. I guess that's the question. Where do you guys go? Do you tour other cities? Are you flying to other states? Because if that's the case, we would like to probably have an update on that, wouldn't we? If we're traveling to Dallas to go see a conference or something like that, or visiting a town in Houston, I would appreciate some feedback of, hey, we went traveling over here. But when we're on the subject of travel, and, you know, Councilmember Bradshaw, you're saying that Ms. Parsley may be cherry picking specific things. As a taxpayer myself in the City of Kyle, I'd like to know, where are you guys going? And what are we accomplishing as a council to go to these places? Is it to, again, bring back feedback for the city? Because if so, why are we not talking about it on the dais? If we're spending this money on fuel, or overnight stay, or meals, those are things that I would probably like to know. Who are we meeting? Who are we talking to? What kind of feedback are we getting when we're having these luncheons and dinners? And so that would be my question, as far as, and yes, I did travel with the task force last year to Peachtree. I was on that. That was budgeted, I believe, in with the city. Again, with our workshops, I've been there. But it's just these other places. I'm just kind of curious to know where everybody's going. And then we just recently have a trip to Washington about two weeks ago. I'm just very surprised, again, that we're not talking about that as well. So it's just my question, my feedback. Thank you.
Councilor Flores Kale.
Thank you. That's odd that we talk about that, because I'm pretty sure I put that on the agenda last year. And it was supposed to be that we discuss city items when they came, when we came back from the visits. I just was not aware if we needed to stick them on the agenda ourselves or not. So I do have a question, Mr. Perez, if you may. I'm just asking you because you just got the facts. So the 2019 City of Kyle Personnel Policy, Section 13.02 Procedures for Other City Officials, and that has to do with travel reimbursement. It says it shall be the policy of the city that all city officials, including the mayor and members of council, shall adhere to the same policies and procedures as defined for employees under this section for funding and payment of travel expenses related to their position with the city. What kind of policy can we make out of a policy?
Who the city council will be accountable to. That part is not in that policy.
Who approves?
Who approves? Who reviews compliance? Is it the city attorney? Is it the city's director of finance? Is it the city manager? Is it the mayor? Or is it council as a, as a body? That needs to be clarified.
So I guess my question is, when there was an increase in the credit card spending limit, who gave you that directive?
My chain of command, city manager.
So how can he give you a directive? I'm not going to ask you that. My point being, there is somebody who gives directives to you.
That's correct.
Okay. I know Perez, and I know you wouldn't do that on your own. And so when you have a reimbursement that does not have a receipt, who approves that?
For council expenses, the documentation is prepared and compiled by the city secretary and city manager's office. It is then forwarded to finance for processing. If the backup all adds up, the city finance accounts payable team processes it for payment.
So I saw tens, if not hundreds, of charges with no receipts, and still yet, they had a credit card. Our policy that we had to sign, the Purchasing Cardholder User Agreement that each cardholder had to sign, said that we had to provide a receipt, an appropriate documentation for every purchase and/or expenditure made using the city purchase card issued to me. I understand that improper and/or unauthorized use of city purchasing card may result in disciplinary action, as well as personal liability for any improper expenditures. And then at the end, we had to agree and sign and date that. The first page of the purchasing card specifically says, the use of the city's purchasing card does not in any way waive or make exception for the city's purchasing policy. And then it says, the card can and will be canceled if this policy is not followed. So who, you're saying nobody enforces that?
For city staff, it is enforced 100%. If Harper did not return in his receipt, I would yank his credit card in a New York minute.
So, okay, so I'm confused, because somebody can give you authorization to increase a limit and to process reimbursements without receipts, but they can't, they can't offer some type of consequence.
With all due respect, council member, put yourself in my shoes.
I'm not saying it's you.
No, just for a moment, if you would visualize with me. I have a department director of Public Works, Harper Wilder. He turns in his travel expense reports. If there's anything out of compliance, I work with him, or my staff works with him. Hey, we're missing these. Can you provide? If you don't, we reject his claim. That's the end of the story, and he knows it. With a council member, how do I do that?
Just like you just did.
The policy doesn't give me that authority. That's what I'm asking council to give me that authority. If it's not me, give it to city manager, give it to city attorney.
Well, I want to apologize for that, for you ever being put in that situation where you felt like you had to maybe do a procedure that you didn't necessarily want to do. As we sit up here as council members, we are no different, no better than staff. We are elected, and that's where it ends. But we don't get any kind of special treatment. We are the leaders of the city, and we set the standard, and we will all rise to the level that we set. So if we allow our council to misbehave in such a way, what will our staff act like? And how will they feel? So I'm on board with you 1,000% regarding, unfortunately, needing a policy to enforce a policy because there's, there's no one to do it. And my heart goes out to you because I know the predicament that you're in. I understand that. But again, that's why we need a solid city leader to make sure that if these kind of problems come, arise, that it's taken care of. If it were not for the renewal of a city manager contract, none of this information would be known.
The policy clarification is absolutely needed. The first red flag should be your travel policy is embedded or buried within personnel policy. It should be a standalone policy. And then within that policy, there should be a, well, it covers pretty well for city employees, but it certainly does not address elected officials, expenses of elected officials.
So may I ask you why this wasn't brought to council?
Personnel policy is not under the responsibility of the director of finance per the charter.
Fiscal responsibility is that of the council. And if we don't know what we're doing, and there is a noticeable issue, how would you suggest we figure that out?
Well, then again, you know, we have the budget review. We review the budget line by line. It is discussed at that time with council, every single department, including mayor and council. We have other opportunities. We used to present reports to council every quarter based on the city charter. It is the council who directed me. Do not bring these reports anymore. Put it on the website. I did that. So council has to bear some responsibility as well.
100%. And I agree. And fortunately, I'm not as green as I once was, but I am still green, and so I'm learning. I would have never in a million years requested to stick such information on a website, meaning to bypass council. I think it's in addition to a council that that would be beneficial, but saying to only place one, like for council member Parsley's motion, my hope is not that it just goes to the website, but also that council stays apprised of spending among itself.
And as part of your motion tonight, make that commitment. Give direction to staff, city manager. Bring back a policy within 30 days or 60 days, whatever you think is appropriate. And it'll happen.
I appreciate that. Yes, and I would like to make, well, I think we have to finish voting on Ms. Daniel's, but I'd like to make a motion to bring back a policy. How would we wear that? Because we have policies, but they just need to be enforced? Or would you, would you like to see a separate policy for?
It can be within the same policy, but the policy needs to be updated, modernized to fit today's needs of council. And it needs to be flushed out with the help of the city attorney. But it needs to have consequences, or has to have some direction to staff. If a elected official does not comply with policy, what is the direction to staff to follow up on that? Does it go to the ethics commission? Does it, is it brought forward with the city council to act? Because it puts us, staff, including city manager, in a very awkward position. If one of you says, I refuse to give you receipts, and that has happened, what do I do then? Give me that direction in the policy. Do I turn you into ethics commission? Do I turn you into the mayor? Do I bring it forward in front of the entire council for the follow-up action? That is lacking.
So I will tell you, in our ethic ordinance, it states, once a director or an officer is aware of an ethical issue, they have 15 days to turn that in. That is an option, and it's not a fun option, trust me. Sitting up here having these hard talks, it is not fun. We are not trying to cause trouble. I'm not trying to be ugly. What I'm trying to do is bring transparency and honesty, and that's it. Accountability is important as we sit up here as leaders. And so there are options. They may not be the ones that you like, or that you feel comfortable doing. Luckily, your job is also protected by the council. And I have nothing but the utmost respect for you, as do probably everybody sitting up here. So in the instance that this happens again, I would suggest an ethics complaint.
I'd like to motion to amend the motion to include direction to staff to bring back a council expense policy for review and adoption.
Second.
All right, the motion to amend is made by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Flores Kale. Is there discussion on the motion to amend?
I do, okay, not that. I do, I do feel like there needs to be consequences to the prior actions of, we can't just say, okay, we're moving on. There are real, I want to make that motion, and I want to move on, but the truth is, there are still missing receipts. There is still unaccounted for expenditures, and I think there needs to be some consequences to that, as a dais collectively, however we decide to move forward. And if nobody wants, everybody's okay knowing the information that we have seen, and they want to move on, that would be great as a roll call vote, so our voters know exactly what it is that we're thinking as we sit up here and make these purchases.
I thought you said you weren't going to be attacking.
That's not an attack.
I kind of feel that way, you know? We're all about transparency, but when you start calling the individual councils out, that's good. And I don't, you know, I've got nothing to hide. I mean, you've seen my numbers. I mean, they're, I can justify it to you, but what I'm saying is, let's move forward. I mean, we're moving forward, and we've got a motion on the floor. I just want to move forward. Let's bring the transparency.
Well, I just want to, I just want to make sure our residents' money is not wasted.
Oh, no. You're, we've got a great motion on the floor. We've got, you know, accountability that's going to happen here in the future.
It's going to happen?
Yeah.
I would like to see it happen for previous, for past expenditures. And if nobody else wants to, I understand that. I've sat in this chair alone by myself for quite some time.
And I'm okay with you saying that, but when you start calling us out, that's the part that I have a problem with. You're saying if we don't agree with you, then we're against the public, we're against everybody. That's the part that I have an issue with. If you say that, you know what, I want to see people held accountable, that's, that's fine, but don't make us hold people accountable. I mean, you're calling us out in the public. That's what you're doing. I mean, if we don't agree with you, then you're going to call us out.
No, it's not agreeing with me. It's about accountability.
No, no, you're, you're saying that if I don't agree with you, now I'm going to call you out in the public. And that's what I don't care about this conversation. I'm good with transparency. I'm good, good about putting our finances out there, because I'm really good with that.
I'm going to, I'm going to call the question. That's a non-debatable motion, calling the question on the amendment. So we'll have a roll call vote. First vote is for the amendment to add into the original policy. Is there, I'm sorry, first, first is to shut, first vote is to shut down debate and call for a vote on the amendment. So you'll still get a chance, but we're on this one.
Okay.
Can you repeat that?
Sorry, there's a multitude of votes that are about to come on this item. The first vote is roll call vote to call the question, which will end debate, and then we will have a, we will have a vote on the motion to amend. Then, once that is done, we'll be back to the original motion, and I'm not 100% sure whether it would end debate there. My understanding would be you would not, so if you still wanted to speak, you'll get your chance, but we'll at least get through one of these votes. So.
So aye is to end the, end the debate?
Aye ends the debate on the motion to amend.
Is there a motion made in a second?
Well, it's just roll call on, calling the question.
Bradshaw.
Aye.
Aye.
Flores Kale.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Parsley.
Aye.
Rizzo.
Aye.
Tobias.
Aye. All right, the question's called, so I'm going to now call for the vote to amend, which is the vote to add the direction for staff to bring back a policy. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Open it back up for further discussion. Councilor Bradshaw.
Well, my only question was for Councilmember Kale, because I actually have a drink that I got when we were on a trip in Frisco that was $5, and I did not have a receipt for. So are you planning on turning me in and filing an ethics complaint on me?
Oh, no, but if, according to our city user agreement, if you don't return a receipt, you just have to refund that drink.
I'm happy to do that.
That's, that's all I'm saying. Like, if we can't account for our money that we spent, I think it's perfectly okay to have to reimburse the city for that, or not even the city, the residents.
All right, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up, Agenda Item Number 25, Discussion of Possible Direction to Debrief Boards and Commissions Process.
Oh, I'm one of three. Okay. Yes, so we had the. Yes, so we had the... We had the boards and commission nominate and draft day. Man, it's been long. How long ago was that? Like, it was a Monday.
Week ago.
So, a week ago. Sometime. You all can look at the things. I don't know. Man, I'm already drained. And so, it was a challenge at first, certainly. And I'm not on social media, so I wasn't aware of this. But it was brought to my attention that there were a lot of comments about it. I beg to know how many of those folks watched it all the way through, because I think that we stumbled a little bit out of the gate. It was a completely new process, completely new way of doing things. But then, we kind of got our groove, and we started moving, and we had to learn that you got to say no sometimes to some of the nominees. That's part of the process. It's the same thing as if, you know, the previous policy, where there were applications entered, and some people were not called to get an interview. So, that was their first rejection. Some people were called to get an interview and didn't get the job. So, that was their second rejection. So, it's the same thing, except we're doing it publicly and as a body together. And so, I think the idea behind this discussion, and certainly there are two other members on this agenda item, so I don't mean to dictate this in any way, but trying to just debrief and just see if there were any suggestions, thoughts, or comments. I know five of us participated. Certainly, I know the other two did watch, though. So, I guess we're just open to feedback and just trying to see how we can do this the best way we can, because coming up in June, looking at James, June, July, and we changed it a little bit, through August.
It's June one through August thirty-one.
That's my man. And then, we will have any time in September to call that meeting in order to do that draft. So, that will be an annual thing that will happen. So, June first through August thirty-first is the time for people to apply to all of our boards and commissions. We will also have a new application in time for that that is going to be more robust and be able to give us a lot more detail and information about our applicants as we realize that Monday... It is tough, because we have some very talented and experienced individuals in our community. And I think that's a good problem to have. I think it's exciting that how many people came out for all of our boards and commissions. I personally thought the library one was the most difficult one to appoint, but that's my comments. I'll, once again, like I said, two other members on this item.
I'm sorry. I just now realized the other names were there. So, now I know what you're saying. Mayor Brecht.
Yeah. One of the things on this process that I thought might be beneficial is that we, as a council, could submit our names pre-end for the boards and commissions online. Having that process might help speed things up. I'm just thinking about how many boards and commissions we'll fill on that Saturday, and how long it's going to take. It's just a suggestion, just having those names already pre... At the... What do you call it? Staffs... In front of staff already to start tallying who we've nominated would probably help the process. Just a suggestion. I'd like some feedback on that.
I just want to state real quick that it doesn't necessarily have to be a Saturday meeting. We made it where we have wiggle room all throughout September to call that, early in the month, end of the month, weekday, weekend. So, I kind of like nominating publicly. Once again, the idea behind all of this was to do it all publicly, but at the end of the day, it's a council. If y'all want to nominate to staff separately, and then we just make the votes based on who's been nominated, it's our process.
Yeah. And it's just a suggestion. I mean, I was just trying to speed it up. The other thing is that we did bring a lot of people in here, and some of them were nominated. And I just kind of felt bad for them. I'll tell you right now, we had all these great applicants, and, man, it was hard to say no to some of them. And, you know, to save some of them, you know, that... I don't know. It feels like disappointment in my book that, you know, they're not being nominated. It might help out the process just by nominating earlier than they're notified that they were nominated. But it's just a suggestion.
Councilmember Brecht.
Well, I was just going to say the same thing that Councilmember Rizzo said. It was really hard to look into the residents' eyes and have to say no when they were signing up to volunteer. That was rough. I do understand where the entire policy was coming from, but I would like to definitely figure out how we can be more efficient with that and how we can... I don't know. How we can be more efficient and how we don't have to look them in their eyes and say, "No, I'm sorry." Because, really, I think each and every single one of us wanted to say yes to everybody who applied. So, yeah, some sort of... Just figure out and find comb that screening process before nominations.
Councilmember Parsley.
I know I wasn't here for the meeting, but I did watch it the next day. And it was rough just to see how the voting went, so I was wondering if maybe doing a paper voting and then handing that for, you know, to maybe the city secretary for her to tally, and then bring up who the members who got the majority of the vote are, so they can be nominated in public, like the two or three, depending on the number of seats. It does take away a little bit of that embarrassment of looking at, you know, somebody that is applying and say, "Hey, I didn't vote for you, so I don't want to look at you." I don't know. I think that might work out maybe a little faster and better. Instead of just doing the whole thing, just get a little piece of paper, and then you do your nomination in there and hand that over, and then bring whoever the persons are with most votes up for appointment.
Other discussion? Councilwoman Ellison.
I'll just say this, and I forwarded to you all. I'm not sure how many of you all watched it, but as I mentioned, when I proposed this new policy to you all earlier this year, while St. Marcos was the only one I'd seen do it, and I watched them live. By the way, they have probably two or three times more boards or commissions than we have, and they did it in three hours. So, it can be done quickly. You got to... I get it. The part is tough is to say no. Part of this job is saying no and making tough decisions publicly. But if y'all want to do it privately, again, the whole idea, when I pitched this policy and what I saw, that Frisco did this policy, Galveston does this policy, Fredericksburg does this policy, St. Marcos does this policy, that's the idea, is that everything is done publicly, so everybody can see exactly what's happening and who's being nominated, all those different types of things. But I will not fight the council if you all want to do that part privately. The only thing I'll say is, there will still be decisions that will have to be made, and there will still be no's have to be given to some of those that just don't get it. But at the end of the day, I thought it was a good first attempt, and I think we'll be better the next time around. And if y'all have a chance, please go and watch the video so you can kind of see how it's done as far as efficiency and moving it along, because I think they did a pretty solid job of it.
Councilmember Tobias.
Okay. Yes, I was very, very pleased with the turnout. We had so much talent and experience that was applying. So, for those of you who are watching this, thank you for applying. That was the whole goal, is to get community involvement. Again, this... You know, we were trying to do the policy back in December and January. That's what we were trying to do, is we're trying to streamline this process. I think what could also help, again, and I did have the information in front of me, is for us to do our homework ahead of time, like I did with mine, and I had the people that I had already reviewed and spoke to and visited with, and had my nominations ready to go, instead of doing the paper. So, I interviewed a lot of the people there. I called some of the people. I met with somebody on a Saturday. Had a hard time getting in because of the software, but most of these people I reviewed most of the day, and I knew exactly what I was looking for. And I think that could be a process to where we... Again, this is the first time we're doing this, and it wasn't perfect. And I know a lot of us may not have been able to look at all the applications, or we probably all did. But if we narrow down and see the qualifications, we can have a better idea of who it is that when we're coming up there, we can really stress to see if this is the right person for the committee. And once we do that, again, I think it could streamline a lot quicker on that end. So, again, that would be my suggestion, is to go through each one of these yourself. Make sure you review as much of the applications and their resumes and be able to have your draft choice, I guess you want to look at in that sense, as far as who your top picks would be, and go from there.
Councilmember Flores Cale.
Thank you. So, I thought it was a kind of a different experience. I got to give props to James, Mr. James Earp, who somehow kept it together, because it was kind of crazy.
I need to give props to the city secretary for keeping up with nine hundred and seventy-two roll-call votes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that, for sure. It was an experience, to say the least. So, I just got two opinions on two things, and that's I don't like private votes. We should vote the same no matter what. If your vote is influenced by somebody else, that is not my problem, that is your problem. I like to just say it out loud. Number two, I also wanted to say that we need to make sure that we have the applications on time, or we don't vote. Meaning, I know for some reason, they said the art applications were up there. I did not see them. And then, when I viewed the timestamp for everybody who viewed them, everybody had viewed them that day, no earlier than, I think, three or four o'clock. So, I know we had a new website, and there might have been an issue with it, but when it was brought to the attention of everybody that, "Hey, we all have not collectively looked at these art applications," and additionally, it was only open for a week and a half, which I think was not enough time, then maybe as a dias, we could decide to just come back and vote for that later. Because I am guilty of not reading all the applications, because I was at work that day. And then, when I got home, I had just enough time to try to review some more of the applications, and that's when I noticed the art ones. So, those were my only two observations. I thought, overall, it was... It went well. And I'm with Councilmember Ellison. We need to watch that video, because I don't know how they did it effectively, but if it works for several other cities, I don't know why it can't work for us.
Councilwoman Ellison.
Just one comment, just because this really gnaws at me. The qualifications phrase. The qualifications are individual to whoever is subjective, because the only qualifications that are listed in our charter and in our policy are the residency one, not owing the city. What are the others? Councilmember Parsley, you ran them off. There's four or five of them. They're very basic and general. Basically, you just have to be a resident and in good standing with the city. That's the only qualification there is for our boards and commissions. So, I just want to be careful when we toss that word around, because, once again, the idea, I've heard on this council, people say, "Well, I want to see more people on the east side of thirty-five on the interstate." There were sixteen applicants that applied on the west of the interstate and thirteen on the east side of the interstate. I don't think that was taken into account by any of them during that vote during that time. But that's okay, because we all have individual things that we see that we want as far as appointing to that. That's how that is, and that's why then the whole body will... The will of the whole body. So, I just want to be careful, because we toss that term around. We've been saying it for a whole year now. I've made my comments about why I don't like that term, because there is not a standard qualification that people have to meet, whether it's a degree, or experience, or profession, or anything like that. So, I just want to be careful that we're mindful of our words. But outside of that, I appreciate, and I'm sure the rest of the council appreciates the feedback on this and how we can improve.
Okay. I didn't hear any clear consensus, so it sounds like continuing forward with status, you know, round two will always be better than round one. So, I actually want to also condemn... Commend staff and council and the applicants for going through that process. I know that wasn't easy, and so, you got through it, which is to be commended. Any other discussion? All right. We're going to move on. All right. Next up, Agenda Item Number Twenty-Six. Discussion on possible direction regarding creating a new Kyle Uber three-fourteen service to South Austin.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I do apologize for the wording of the item. It's not exactly what I wanted to bring up. A resident reached out to me explaining that she had cancer treatments that she needs to take care of in Austin, and she has... Normally, she would drive herself, but after the treatments, she is not capable of driving back. So, of course, she was, you know, concerned for us not having public transportation, at least so she can get to an end and then go to Austin. So, my request would be to see what is the possibility, since the VA clinic and the airport are around eighteen miles from Kyle Center. What are the possibilities for us to extend the Uber three-fourteen only to medical facilities within that range of miles? I'm saying only medical facility. I don't want, you know, to extend it for somebody to just go to South Park Meadows shopping.
And just specifically, South Austin?
No. It can be...
Ulin, San Marcos.
Exactly. Eighteen miles, it's what we have going on right now, so I would say that's about fair.
Mayor Council, Jerry Hendricks, Assistant City Manager, for the record. We can create a geofence around anywhere you want, and we can apply the same pricing model that we currently have for the airport, which is the rider pays the first thirty-one point four percent, and the city pays the rest. The more locations you add to that destination area, because the more complicated it gets. We do have a model created to get into Austin to access the Capital Metro program that would take them to South Park Meadows. And from there, they can catch the bus, and then they can ride the bus back to South Park Meadows and come back. And that's something we've talked about before, just haven't implemented it yet.
So, what can be done about it? Is that something we can implement, or...
Mayor Brecht.
Yeah. The only thing about that one, Jerry, is that, I guess for me, if somebody's going to the doctor or something, they're probably not in great shape to be riding a bus and walking to a bus stop. I just... I've had really bad experience with bus routes and buses. I don't feel like... I've never experienced a good bus route. I'll just say that. I think Councilmember Parsley brings something, a great concern up, and that is, we do have an elderly community in our city that, you know, has a hard time getting around, but extending that to, you know, maybe a doctor's office would be great for an appointment. But it just depends on what our budget is and how that would affect our budget as well, the money we have budgeted for this program. I guess the only concern I've got right now, can we afford it?
I have a few thoughts on it. So, the "can we afford it?" question is one. The program is growing and is continuing to grow, so that's exciting, but also something that I'm wanting to not let it get away from us. So, that's one thought. And then, the other is actually that Kyle probably leads in medical facilities, which are already covered under Uber. So, if you want to go to, you know, just nearly any kind of specialized medicine, up to, you know, emergency rooms, to hospitals, to, you know, just anything in the city of Kyle, the Uber program currently covers it. So, my thought would be to wait and see. Allow the program to continue to mature, and then if there's a desire to expand it, maybe do that, you know, down the road. But we do have a lot of medical facilities. So, I like that we're now able to offer affordable transportation to those medical facilities. So, those are... That's my comments and feedback. Councilman Parsley.
So, one of the things that I know for a fact is, like, I have to get treatments in Austin that I cannot... They don't have it around the Kyle area about every other month. So, that's... I know for a fact, like, I drive myself, and I don't have issues driving myself back, but I know there are residents that if they are single, you know, or widows, or something along those lines that don't have family members that can drive them back. I think there is a need for that, if we don't have public transportation. So, I don't know how much they can wait, or what explanation can we give to them? What can we offer to people in need of medical treatments outside the Kyle limits for this program?
Councilmember Flores Cale.
Thank you. Do we know if other cities provide transportation outside of their own cities? Because I think that's not something that's common.
Typically, cities are really the ones providing the transit. Typically, cities are really the ones providing the transportation. It's transportation authorities like Capital Metro in Austin that provides transportation to other counties. In San Antonio, it's via, I think they go as far north as New Promphles. But you have to subscribe to that, and that comes with a huge cost. And identifying all the different, we'd have to identify all the different possible medical destinations, which is not only hospitals, but individual doctors' offices and treatment centers that people would go to. And then we'd have to create a geofence around each of those to accomplish what you're trying to do.
That's, yeah, that's what was going to be my next question is, how difficult is that going to be? Unfortunately, there is people who really do need this, but I think there's also a possibility of some kind of abuse of that situation if the hospital is close to other shopping places. And seeing as Uber is paid out of, is that the general fund? Then it's essentially taxpayers who are paying for these rides. So to, to address concerns as far as like ways to get from city to city, I don't know if that's something that other cities provide as well. Because as Mr. Hendricks just said, it's usually a third party that, that would do that. I'm all about trying to get people some help, but I just want to make sure that we do it within our realm of responsibility.
And we've talked about getting into South Park Meadows before. It's not only medical appointments. And most medical appointments are just for your regular visit and not something that would create an issue where you wouldn't be able to drive yourself. But also people work in Austin, and I do get calls about people wanting to catch a bus or take an Uber in Austin for their job. So, so there's some legitimate purposes to look at in terms of using Uber to get into South Austin. But like I said before, the more little geofences you draw, the more complicated it gets. I'll be happy to pursue whatever you direct us to pursue.
Mayor Protem.
I think Councilmember Cal brings up a, a good point, and that's other cities don't offer that. I know that Capital Metro goes into Leander, but they pay for that service as well. So the citizens of Leander pay for that. So yeah, I can't think of any instance where a city will go outside its jurisdiction for transportation. So I think that's a great point, so.
Councilmember Ellison.
You know, it's certainly admirable request, certainly for that resident. But that was, you know, we kind of talked about this, Councilmember Partly. The geofencing, figuring that out, find, identifying all the doctors' offices and hospitals and different things, that, that will be a challenge. Plus, I completely agree with the mayor about this program. While we're excited that it has gotten so much interest, we don't want it to get away from us because we increased the budget. We've had this for two years now. We increased the budget heavily last year because of the, the amount of usages getting, which is great. And I certainly understand, you know, on the, paybacking on the VA clinic, which was an idea of the residents. Thank you, residents, for bringing that forward. But that is just the challenge I see. So, I mean, certainly, you know, I, I don't know. I'd like to see the numbers and where, where this would actually go before. I would like to support an initiative to go all the way into this. Because I think the, the finance of this and the expense of it, plus figuring out the geofencing, I just see that going way up. But we have to balance the, the cost of, based on the return of what we're getting for our residents. And certainly, that was the other point I was going to make before Councilmember Flores Cale spoke, was just the outside of our jurisdiction. It's not just not having public transportation. And what people, I think typically think of public transportation is a bus. We don't have the demand for that. We ask every survey every year. We had carts in the past. We do not have the demand for that. Heck, I even struggle to use Uber because I just like having my car with me and within the city limits of Kyle. So we just don't have the demand there. And so even if we had public transportation and buses, then people wouldn't be able to get into Austin with it unless we were part of a third party that is offering that, like was mentioned earlier. So those are just my initial concerns with it.
All right. Anything else? All right, if there are no objections, we're gonna move on. All right, next up, agenda item number 27, discussion and possible action addressing concerns from council and residents regarding the City Manager Municipal Consulting Limited Liability Company to include any other authorized and/or unauthorized outside business activities. Councilmember Flores, Cal.
Okay, thank you. I do want to preface with the fact that I want to make sure that there is no conflict of interest regarding everybody sitting on this council. So if you feel like there might be a conflict of interest, I would suggest any removal for any future issues. So on April 27th, 2022, right before I boarded my plane and headed to Washington DC to meet other council and our city manager, I received a text from someone who had received and forwarded to me an email regarding the city's previous council member, Rick Coach. The email discussed and promoted a company by the name of Municipal Consulting Limited Liability Company, as well as a program entitled TRIPP, T-R-I-P-P-P, Transit Ride Sharing Exclusive Public Private Partnership. The TRIPP program Municipal Consulting LLC was promoting mirrored Kyle's Uber 3.14 program. As I read to the bottom of the email, I also read and saw a recommendation for the program from Kyle's mayor, Travis Mitchell. After a brief search while waiting on the plane, I realized Municipal Consulting Limited Liability Company was owned and operated by our city manager, Scott Sellers. While in Washington, I attempted to focus my duties to represent District Two and help try to find monetary assistance for our growing city. During our third meeting with Representative Chip Roy's office, Scott Sellers inquired about funding for the city's Uber program. This was the first time the Uber program was brought up, and I couldn't help but wonder if he were asking on behalf of himself or the city. Representative Roy's staff discussed the Uber program, but shot down grant opportunities for the program. The staff stated, although he liked the idea, it will be 20 years before something like that would gain funding in Washington. Again, I wondered if that information somehow benefited Mr. Sellers' business. Once I returned and had the opportunity to research Municipal Consulting Limited Liability Company at the Texas Comptroller and the Texas Secretary of State, I learned that Mr. Sellers had utilized our city hall as his registered office in his certificate of formation, a copy of which I attempted to have added to my backup material, but was never added. Thus, okay, so the, the certificate of information, having the registered agent, created a misuse of city property, a violation of Section 7 Public Property and Resources of our city's ethic ordinance. Additionally, after reviewing the city manager's website, I found reference to Honeywell and Uber. Both are programs the city utilizes, thus creating a violation of Section 2.08 Outside Employment in our city of Kyle's personnel policy, Section 2.7 Hours of Work, and 6.2 Good Cause in the city manager's amended and restated city manager employment agreement, as well as violations to previous motion passed from last January. Additionally, when Mr. Sellers recused himself last week from creating today's agenda item regarding Uber, that action created a knowing and willful breach of his duty as city manager, which is another violation in Section 6.2 Good Cause of his employment agreement. The city manager's recusal also showed interference with the ability to perform his duties, a violation in Section 2.7 Hours of Work in his employment agreement. Finally, according to Part B, Section 1A, Little I, improper economic benefit of the city of Kyle of ethics, every person and/or entity that receives that email or was solicited by either Rick Coach, Scott Sellers, or Municipal Consulting, Limited Liability Company cannot take part in any official action with the city for the next 12 months. I bring this agenda item to counsel with these questions. Do you think our city manager's creation of municipal consulting limited liability violates his agreement, the city charter, or any ordinances? Was, is there misconduct or misuse of property, real, personal, or misused, owned or entrusted to the city? And was there negligent misapplication or misuse directly or indirectly? Meaning, did he know Uber was not ADA compliant? Or did he negotiate in bad faith on behalf of the city for personal gain of public or other funds? If council determines there are violations, do any of us intend to do anything about it? I open the floor to questions.
Does anybody have any questions, comments? The lot in that, but as far as I'm aware, the two most salient facts are, or two or three most salient facts are, number one, at the beginning of last year, city manager approached the council to have conversations and asked permission per his contract to pursue consulting opportunities. That permission was granted. The company was created afterwards, and there was a pursuit of this arrangement. The city manager has said that, and has done it transparently in the sense of being willing to promote it online, believed he was in compliance and still does believe that he is in compliance with the direction of council. But all of those things being said is, in light of this, is sought an ethics advisory opinion, which is the process that we go through to determine what course of action should be taken. So the city manager is requested to allow for that advisory opinion to come forward, which will be a thorough review of the situation. It is, as well as offering potential direction for how to make sure that if there is anything that continues forward, that it's done underneath firewall with appropriate ethical safeguards in place. So there will be an opportunity for that. If there is a belief that an ethics violation occurred, there's a process in, in place for that as well. And if there's a desire for the council to make a different decision with regards to whether or not the city manager can pursue outside consulting, that's also a path available. So those are my comments. So I wish that advisory opinion could have been written in anticipation of this public moving forward, because it doesn't allow for equal share of information and context that might be provided by others. But an ethics advisory opinion oftentimes does allow for that context and that clarity. So those are my thoughts. Councilmember Tobias.
Yes. Mr. Sellers, if I could ask this question. What type of consulting would you be doing with your, with this company that, that you would have? If you can answer that. Just for my knowledge.
So in general, any sort of consulting would be really to change the game. On my website, it says raising the bar, raising the bar for public private sector. So council has known me for quite some time. I am an innovator. When we have great ideas, or when I see great ideas, I would like to promote those to other units of government. So the consulting that would be done would be directly with another unit of government that has requested that through an official process.
Okay, so it'd be kind of like using your education and your experience working in other cities to give consulting opinions and so forth to other, other areas of?
Yeah. It's very common in the industry for city managers, assistant city managers, back to other staff, to have consulting opportunities. I was first offered that opportunity in 2016 from this council, and then reaffirmed it in 2021, which time I did start my consulting company. So again, it was yes to impart information that I've gained over 17 years of doing this.
Okay. And my last comment is, with due respect, you know, I, I look at it as, I'm not here to judge anybody on what they do with having their own business on the side. We all have that opportunity, even including myself. I think the concern is, is that the perception that may be perceived as how everything fit into play, that we had a very strong debate referencing your contract. And again, I'm not too much of a fan of social media. And then a, a posting goes out to where, you know, a new company was formed and had ties to your name. It's just the perception that comes across to the residents. So again, I'm not somebody to tell somebody they can't do another job or so forth, but but if it, if it's done legally, but if it's done illegally, then of course, we all have problems with that. But it also has a perception that when you have a city manager and a former mayor pro tem council member on a same kind of webpage, working together, you just have to look at it realistically, like what's really going on? Okay? And, and I've been following council for many years, and there's a lot of questions that come up, especially it has a history of, you know, having a Friday morning meeting to approve a certain type of agenda item with, with public notice. But if you could just understand where we're coming from on this. And again, according to Mayor Mitchell, there is a ethics.
Advisory.
Advisory that's coming out. And I just look forward to seeing what, what the recommendation is. Thank you.
Councilmember Flores, Cal.
Thank you. First and foremost, we are somebody to tell somebody that because it's our responsibility to make sure our city manager is following our policies and procedures. And so in that, in the city of Kyle Personnel Policy, it specifically states if the work does not constitute a conflict of interest, does not fear with an employee's performance of duties with the city, and does not involve the use of city time or equipment. Additionally, in the contract, it says, as long as council determines that the services will not interfere with the manager's performing of the city's manager's duties hereunder. When you have to recuse yourself from an agenda item, that is interference. And I don't understand how you separate the time from consulting. And, and let me be transparent when I say, I voted yes last year for him to have a consulting job, not to create a business. That was not the extent of my knowledge. And so I would have had an issue knowing that he was going to consult for other cities, especially using programs on his website that were Honeywell and Uber, which are programs our city uses. So although I don't want to come off as harsh or, or bitter or angry, I feel like it is our job to make sure as council members that we're making sure that our one employee is doing his job correctly and that there's no conflict of interest. So with that said, I would like to make a motion to bring this back after the opinion has been completed, and so we can have further discussion.
Second.
All right, the motion is made by Councilmember Flores Cale to postpone item 27 until after the ethics advisory opinion, seconded by Mayor Protem. Is there discussion on that motion? Hold of some papers, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. All right. Next up, agenda item number 28, first reading and ordinance of the city of Kyle, Texas, annexing 119.703 acres of land, more or less located at 1111 and 1113 Roland Lane, approximately 3,000 feet northwest of the intersection of I-35 and Roland Lane. This item does have a public hearing. Mr. Atkinson, you want to open it up?
Will Atkinson, senior planner, for the record. Before you, we are considering the first reading of the ordinance annexing 119.703 acres of land, more or less located, as you stated, for the item. This is a, this is a parcel of land that has a Chapter 43 Non-Annexation Development Agreement on it, which means if they do anything with, or have any plans that would normally require permits from the city, other than agriculture, timber production, and livestock, then they will be annexed by default. And so they are proposing later on, after annexation with zoning, to have development plans. And so we are moving forward with the first step of the annexation.
All right, this item has a public hearing, so if there are no objections, I'm going to open the public hearing now. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. It is now closed. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Atkinson or comments? Councilmember Tobias.
Okay, I know exactly where this tract is at. It's kind of a little sentimental here for different reasons. But I'm looking at the, the deed itself and just seeing how far it goes back. Do you see that?
There's, there's veras.
It says, beginning at the North Corner, and it's also dated May 22nd, 1896. And how it just goes through generations of families all the way down, up to, I guess, it went to the Hale family, and then I guess it's now currently under Mr. Mr. Balok?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah. So there, he's requesting basically to get it changed from the agriculture, finally, to possible residential zoning, is that where we're at?
As a following annexation, there will be a zoning considered with generally residential, with a little bit of commercial, but without going into too much detail, just for state law.
Yes.
At this time.
Has that area, of course, there's a creek there. That's just the only thing. Because I know it floods out there a lot, but I'm pretty sure with the development. Now, is there, through that track of land, is there a proposed road going through that area as well?
Not for the transportation master plan, sir. But they will be building, as a function of their subdivisions later on, they will be building public streets going through there.
Okay.
They have, adjacent to their property, they have the FM 110 bypass that the county is currently designing. So they'll be able to take advantage of that as well.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve. Moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Bradshaw, we approve agenda item number 28. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Is there any objection to this ordinance being finally passed? Seeing none, it is finally passed. Does it have to come back?
Please, on the 17th, per the schedule.
All right. Well, then I object, and we'll bring it back.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, agenda item number 29. First reading and ordinance permitting Chapter 53 zoning of the City of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose of assigning original zoning to approximately one acre of land from agriculture to retail services for property located at 23451 I-35 in Hayes County, Texas. This item also has a public hearing. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you. Will Atkinson, senior planner, for the record. And now I can see some stuff here that's about to pop up on the screen. See my staff report. This petition, Z-22-0095. The landowner, the Wynn Family Limited Partnership, is proposing to rezone approximately one acre of their five that they own at 23451 I-35, from agriculture to retail services. All around it, there's a mix of agriculture and warehouse and construction manufacturing from the zoning map you see there. The comprehensive plan, however, talks about warehouse and construction manufacturing not being considered along I-35. So they went with the next best thing, which is retail services, which allows all the uses in the CBD 1, CBD 2, and retail services zoning district. It's generally your point-of-sale retail. It can be anything from an auto repair shop, it can be a hotel, it can be a restaurant, office, you name it, anything that's point-of-sale. So per the complaint, it's appropriate for the area. If the zoning is approved, they will have to plat, they will have to have a site development permit, go through the conditional use permit for facade improvements, and also get a building permit, as expected per the, and required per the city code. Staff has no issue recommending approval for it. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on it as well, and we believe it's appropriate for the area. And we ask that y'all vote to approve it as well.
Okay. This item has a public hearing. So if there are no objections, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 30. This item also has a public hearing. First reading and ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, annexing 176.023 acres of land, more or less, located at 5260 Hillside Terrace in Hayes County, Texas, including the abutting streets, et cetera. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you. Will Atkinson, for the record, senior planner. I got a few items on it, as y'all can see. So before you, is the first of two items that are going to be a part of a combined project coming down the pipeline. The first one with the annex, 21-0015, is approximately 176 acres, located at 5260 Hillside Terrace. So you can see it on the map right here. The red is existing city boundaries for city limits, and everything outlined in yellow is the showing where it is going to connect from a continuity standpoint with contiguous boundaries, which is required by state law. Utility providers, we have Go4th Sud for water. Wastewater is Wind Hill Utility Company. Electricity is Peternalis. Gas is Centerpoint Energy, and Internet will use Spectrum Grande. The services that the city will provide upon annexation are the police service, building permits, planning, inspections, economic development incentives if any. And then fire service will be ESD 8, which is a Buda Fire Department. They are aware that this is going to be annexed as well. And staff does not have a problem with the petition. There was a question earlier, we'll say, about a survey pin on an adjacent property. We would ask that the applicant come up and provide a little bit of clarification upon that.
Number 29?
Oh, yeah. 29 and 30.
30.
30 and 31.
30 and 31, that's the one we, yeah.
Mayor and council, Daniel McElrath, from Milestone Community Builders. First up, I want to thank Mrs. Woods for her engagement, you know, both when the petition was initially accepted and on this item, and since that petition was accepted, we've had engaged with her multiple times regarding this project in an effort to be, you know, good neighbors, and we're collaborative with her. As it relates to the survey pin, we found out about this issue through our engineer on the project, who'd kind of heard about it through the county. And immediately, I reached out to our neighbors at the mansions at Buda, and their contractor who placed the pin, to try and resolve this issue. After speaking with both of them, there's no question about where the property corner is. That pin was placed as a control point for survey, for them to be able to go out and set grading stakes for the work they're doing within the mansions of Buda's property. I told them that, you know, they have no right to trespass on somebody else's property with, or enter somebody else's property without their approval, and that, you know, that survey pin needed to be moved. It was not an attempt to mark the property corner, it was to set a control location for surveying stuff within the property. They've since removed that control point into the boundaries of the mansions of Buda's property. Unfortunately, I can only act on this after the fact, and try and slap wrists, and, you know, keep our neighbors accountable, and keep them acting as good neighbors as well. Yes. As we've been sitting here, I've gone back through and reconfirmed both with our legal descriptions, and with the mansions of Buda's legal descriptions, that indeed, the property corner in both of those is identified, and that, you know, that precedent is set using Mrs. Woods' property boundary. So the corner is referenced to the County Ridge subdivision plat, recorded in volume three, page 274, in both of our legal descriptions. And the legal description that is represented to you in the annexation petition here today is such, I don't think there's any dispute over the property boundary, being where Mrs. Woods believes it is, and where, you know, we believe it is. And thus, there's no misrepresentation inside of the annexation petition.
Okay. Before we move to questions or comments, there's a public hearing. So if there are no objections, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak?
Yes, my name is Diana Woods. I live at 125 Torrey Drive. I do appreciate the clarification. As you could understand, having a couple of sleepless nights with a large iron stake driven into the land, it was not moved, I removed it, because the, I hired a professional engineer a few, a couple of months ago, who has done floodplain work in this area. My added concern as far as property boundaries, right-of-way, and of course, the encroachment, is, you know, I am not opposed to growth in houses and development. I am concerned about risk. The, I would encourage all of you to, to look at the Central Appraisal District's interactive map for my address, 125 Torrey Drive, and overlay it with the flood hazard FEMA map. And I think you would understand my concern. We're talking about a different developer, a different company. However, this developer ties into the road of Porter Country. And where they've chosen to put it, my professional floodplain engineer was standing, and he, and I'll try to wrap this up. The, he did an independent review of the development plan for Buda Mansions, and as it ties into Porter Country at that particular segment of the roadway. And it crosses a very risky, significant portion of the floodplain that you would be assuming if you annex their property and the Buda Mansions property. The, you know, what it, the Buda Mansions has already encroached beyond where their permit is with the county, and the county came out within the last few days and stopped, stopped their encroachment into the portion of floodplain that they got into. The Porter Country connects at the other side, and where they've put the, chosen to put the roadway is, is creating a barrier and a backflow. And the engineer did offer an opinion that it would be a hazardous barrier that would be created for both my property, the property next to me, and of course, your concern with the trail system that you're putting in, you, that's, that's your, your part of the concern. I urge you to look at the map, and to consider delay, at least until you have a chance to figure out what you're dealing with here. It's a very big, it's a very big track of land, connected to another track of land, connected to yet another track of land that you're doing development on, on the Hillside Terrace area of a, of a very large RV park that feeds into the collection pond, that goes down to the Dry Creek bed, and goes into the area where these two developers are. Fortunately, we're not in 2015. In 2015, the water was about this high, and there was millions of volumes of water going through this particular area, where the Buda Mansions is attempting to cross the floodplain at that particular section, very near to my property. So this gentleman has been more than kind to me, and answered my questions. I still have some really deep concerns that keep me up at night about the level of water that will be created by this road barrier. And I've already had one opinion from a professional engineer that this can create a, a backflow problem to me personally, worse for my neighbor across the street. But it can also create a backflow problem for your trail system that you're putting in. So we're all concerned about this. But that's, that's my, that's my, I, I would, I would like you to look at the map that I'm discussing from FEMA, and my own personal map in the Central Appraisal District, and you'll understand what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Mrs. Woods, before you go.
Yes.
I have a direct question for you, if I might. Did your privately hired consultant, did they offer an alternative or some recommendation?
Well, they, they said that it would be insufficient to put simple culverts across this area, that it would, it would require a substantial bridge to get over that area. And as was opined by a county official I spoke with that is also a professional engineer, that this particular section of the roadway, of the floodplain, would require a bridge and not culverts. And, and an elevated bridge, because it is, over the last 30 years, that particular area there has, through the, through the couple of flooding events we had in 2015, but in other, as runoff increases, it's, it's created deep ravines that are still, you know, flushing out and growing. And, and the portion that the developer began into was beyond their permit into the beginning of the floodplain. And to my knowledge, the county has stopped them from going beyond what was in their original permit. So it's a, it's an area that I feel that I have no trouble with development in homes, and yes, it'll change things significantly. I do, the deal breaker for me is the road and the disturbance that the other developer has seemed to create. Even though the meets and bounds, I'm glad to hear, is still there. The, besides the stake that was put in, in my side, they, they have a temporary wooden stake farther into their property with the lettering on it, property corner, which is not the property corner that is on the documents. So I'm not sure what they're thinking about. My engineer looked at it, and he said, I have no idea what they're doing. So I leave it to you to, but that's, that's my comments, and that's my concerns. And I urge you to look at the FEMA maps in this area.
May I ask you a question?
I just want to be clear. So I
Go ahead.
And I appreciate all the backstory, but just wanted, very concise, the recommendation was to do a bridge where there are culverts being planned. That was the recommendation from there. Okay. And then just to clarify, when you talk about the other development, you're talking about the
Buda Mansions.
Buda Mansions. Okay. Thank you.
The, there's a side of the floodplain that comes through Porter Country on the east side of my property. There's a section of flood, of floodplain that is to the west of my property, on the other side of my neighbors. And they come together just beyond my, my property with going in that direction. And it's, it's collecting from, all the way from Stonebridge subdivision on the other side, in the Buda territory, under Hillside Terrace, through the RV park, through the retention pond, down the creek on that side. And then on the east side, it will be coming along the, at this current time, it's along the fence line on the east side. I understand from the plans that there's some other retention ponds being planned to collect on that side, and that side is not quite as, as bad. But collectively, they all come together in the Buda Mansions property, plus a little bit into this property on Porter Country, but not so much. However, the placing of the roadway through the two developments will create a barrier and a possible black backflow. In the professional engineer's opinion, culverts were not enough to control what he has, he has done floodwork in our area. He did some floodwork on the retention pond up close to Hillside Terrace. And he was really familiar with, with that area. And he was, he just said that, you know, I'm not sure what they're doing, but that, that's not going to work without, without a bridge. So. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. If I may ask you a question, have you seen a copy of the survey?
Which one?
The one that you had in question, that you weren't sure if we annexed in, if it would affect you?
What I, what I was going on was by the staking that they were doing on the ground. And from what the, the, my engineer, when he did the site visit, was, it had appeared that they were staking for the roadway and for the right-of-way into my property. That's what his, you know, his thoughts were. It's like, I don't really know what they're doing, but that, you know, to drive an iron stake below the ground, that, that was, wasn't at, I'm not sure why you have to drive it all the way in to, to get a marker. I mean, to get a, get a grading location. But again, you don't do it on other people's property. But I, but I'm, I'm relieved that the opinion is that there is not a, but, but what, what is on the ground looks different than, than would lead me to believe that there was, was a change in the a change in the, in the lines.
Okay. Is there any way that we can confirm that? The city can confirm the lines to make sure?
We'll get that chance once we're through the public hearing. So this is our chance to hear from the residents.
Okay, well, yeah, I just want to make sure.
We'll definitely get that chance.
Because we've got to vote on this. And then I do have a question, not, not from you. Thank you very much. I appreciate all your information.
All right. The, the public hearing is still open. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak on this item?
I know.
All right. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Councilmember Floris Kill.
Thank you. I just have a question. Because if it's, if my memory does not fail me, you guys are required to do an environmental study? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. We've performed a Phase One environmental site assessment out there. You know, there's some jurisdictional waterways on the property. And we've done the required assessments related to those jurisdictional waterways and impacts of those waterways. Done tree and topo survey. All of our design is being done to Atlas 14 standards because we're being annexed into the city, which is actually more consistent with the 500-year floodplain rather than the 100-year FEMA floodplain. You know, we've had our engineers and land planners engaged in this effort and looking at this crossing and trying to find the place that minimizes impact for eighteen months, at least as we look at the property and look at alignments. You know, the, the extension of Suffield Drive was originally brought to us by the city and the county because it's part of the transportation master plan. And there was a call with, you know, city, county, engineers, Mansions of Buta staff, ourselves, trying to work on the optimal alignment for this. I can say from our side, we're open to, you know, where that ends up ultimately being. I know that Buta, Mansions of Buta has been, is a little more locked into that alignment because they are further along in their development. You know, the floodplain concern additionally is part of what is in there and in our plan that many of y'all have seen is a regional detention pond that serves to control the retention of water and the outflow of water. So that these massive backups and, you know, 500-year flood situations does not occur. You know, additionally, we're working with the county on their expansion of hillside terrace to provide an additional place for a detention pond right off the hillside terrace to the east of their subdivision is another means of controlling, you know, rainwater flow and flooding so that it does not, so it lowers the impact on existing landowners in the area. The post-development flows are lower than, than what they would be currently. You know, we are putting a lot of effort and energy into the design and the engineering of this pro, of this project so that we do not run into these sorts of issues and cause massive washouts and, you know, destruction of other people's property or city's, or county's property.
Yeah, I'm sure you guys don't, Buta has an issue with houses and water. And so I have no doubt you guys don't want to have anything to do with that. But if it brings Mrs. Woods any comfort, I know that Texas Senator Nathan Johnson is actually bringing something to the legislature regarding residential homes and buildings and floodplains since the whole issue with Buta happened, and it was just one specific home builder. So that, and knowing that you're doing an environmental study, that, that combination makes me feel a little bit better going forward.
Other questions, comments? Mayor Protim.
Yeah. So you answered part of my question with the Atlas 14. Scott, did Kathy and her team, Kathy Rocker and her team, do the impact for upstream and downstream as well on this project?
They will typically look at the, the site disruption permit and make sure that everything is being staked just according to plans or the city spec. But that's as far as they go.
And so it really hasn't been looked at, then?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. That concerns me a little bit, especially because flooding doesn't just happen downstream. Also, it happens upstream. When you're building up something, it's going to adhere upstream as well. Another deal is that I'm not really excited, it kind of makes me upset that there was some trespassing. Because I've had to deal with this issue quite a few times where people feel like it's their right to just go anywhere they want. I've had people come in and cut my locks. And it really upsets me when people do that. I'm glad that you took care of that, but I still feel like it was enough done.
I, I agree. It bothers me too. Like I said, unfortunately, they're not our contractor. They were not acting on our behalf. So there's not really anything I could do other than try and get them in line after the fact. And luckily, I have a relationship with the contractor themselves and the owner of that company. So that could have a little bit, I think, sway in that and, and influence over how they handle themselves going forward. As it relates to upstream and downstream flows, so this crossing is in a, is proposed to be in a much later phase of our development. It's, you know, Phase Four, maybe even Five of our development. And so there will be extensive engineering that is done as we approach that phase in our development, which, you know, we are always providing, engineers are required to provide with construction plans, flow calculations that are reviewed by the city. The regional detention pond that will hold a lot of these, you know, a lot of these flows will be designed with Phase Three. And so even that will come well ahead of, you know, the connection of the big bridge crossing down the, down the line. And there will be plenty of opportunity for, you know, engineers and eyeballs much more adept at making that decision than I to, to make sure that the right design is being utilized here.
Okay. Scott, I've got a question for you. What is the process? If we have a disputed property line, what is the process the city can take to make sure we can rectify that?
You know, that's, that's a good question. I'm not sure the city's been part of that. It's typically a civil matter. And so we've, we've typically made sure that was a civil matter and, you know, stayed out of that. The city does not go out and audit survey stakes or pins. We rely on the stamped plans that we receive.
Has the, has the neighbor had adequate time to recto, to check on that, Ms. Woods? Have you had adequate time to dispute the survey?
I have not. I, I have not. I, I have not been contacted by the contractor that placed it in. And the, I have been just investigating where, by what authority, and, you know, just have, you know, finally gotten somewhat of an answer that, that it wasn't by anyone's authority. Because my, my question, I had made a lot of visits to different places to find out who could possibly have authorized it. You know, the appraisal district, the county, the grounds department. And so, so I, I, I would like an answer from the contractor themselves and the, the property owner at Buta Mansions because they are using heavy, not, not backhoes, but the earth-moving equipment. They're, they're plowing ahead with the road. And as I said, the county suspended the activity in that particular area. But they still have it marked out on, at the fence line of, of, of the adjoining developer here today. They have the road marked out in that place. I, I accept that this is perhaps a development in their Phase Four, but their neighbor who's tying in with them is actively creating the road now. So your question about enough time, I don't think I've had enough of time.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion postponing items 30 and 31 till our next council meeting to give all the parties involved adequate time to identify the lines, property lines.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protim Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, that we postpone Agenda Items 30 and 31. We have, there's a public here, several aspects associated. These are also, is there further discussion? There, there is. This is, these are first reading ordinances that have been posted and noticed. So is it, is it, is it appropriate to completely stall the process out?
From a, from a procedural standpoint, you at least need to hold the public hearings. And then you can delay first reading without affecting the schedule.
Well, I'll have to reopen the Item 30's public hearing because we've closed it. If we're going to postpone, we have to leave it open.
You, you don't have to leave it open. You don't have to.
Okay.
Yeah. You can close, hold the public hearing, close it, and then delay first reading until the next city council meeting.
All right. Well, we have a, we have a motion and a second. So we need to deal with the fact that we need to, at a minimum, we need to have the public hearing for Item 31. So I can do that now before we actually call for the vote. While, can I have a public hearing while there's a motion on the floor?
I would ask for a, I'd ask for an amendment to only address the postponement of Item 30 at this time. Then hold the public hearing and then take action on the postponement of 31.
I'll, I'll agree to the amendment.
All right. So the, the motion restated is to postpone Agenda Item Number 30 until the next meeting? Or you just said until, I mean, all right, until the, until the next council meeting? Is there discussion on that motion? Councilmember Floris Kill.
Thank you. I would like clarification on what needs to be brought and, and clarified for the next meeting. Because it's my understanding that it was not you guys, it was the other people that pinned it? So my only concern would be the survey and if the survey is correct. So what is it, I guess, Councilmember Rizzo, what is it that you're looking?
So what the neighbor's saying is that the survey pins are in her property. I'd like for the, all the entities to come together, look at the survey lines together. So if y'all could get with Ms. Woods and clarify that with her, that would be great. Go out there in the property and show her where the pins are and what pins are what. That's kind of where I'm at. Because right now, she's in limbo. She sees all these pins on her property. And I've gone through this process before up in my area of work as well, where I'm fighting, disputing property lines. I'm disputing one right now. And it's, it's, sometimes it's all the parties going out there and, and walking the property and identifying those points is probably what I'm asking.
Yes, sir. So I will say that we, you know, the, the neighboring developer, Mansions of Buta, is open to a conversation. You know, we proposed that. It sounds like Mrs. Woods may be willing to have that conversation with them now. So that's something we can definitely facilitate. We do have, you know, confirmed in our legal description is the, our shared boundary is based off of the southeastern corner of the subdivision that's reported in the plat, which means that the southeastern corner of Mrs. Woods' property that is in question right now, we are in her property and the boundaries of her property are setting the boundaries of our property. And, and so we're, there is no boundary dispute between myself, our, you know, our development and Mrs. Woods' property. The Mansions of Buta's property description set, uses the same southeast-early corner of Lot 12 of her subdivision as recorded in Hayes County plat records. So I do not believe that they have any dispute as to what the property line is or what the property corner is. There is the issue of their contractor not asking for permission before they set a control point. And that has since been moved. There is no, from my understanding and my conversations with the other developer and reviewing of legal doc, legal descriptions, there is no dispute over property boundaries.
Okay.
Is the description the same as a previous? Because I, like, the way deeds work, usually they just take the old one and they just rephrase it to new people and new grant or grantee. My, I just want to, I'm trying to be precise here because I don't think the problem is a pin. Because that's literally a physical thing. That doesn't necessarily mean anything if the survey says something different. So if the survey and if the information in the description on the deed is fine, it doesn't matter where that pin is. It just means somebody went over her line and put that pin there and it was not appropriate. However, if the survey reads correct, which is, is there any way to tell that?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying now is that in the legal description that's attached, is the meets and bounds. It's recorded. And that's what I'm looking at is the, the legal description that both we've used and they've used in recent agreements and, and recorded documents. And it sets, again, it sets the corner, you know, every time they move their corner curve, they have to identify that with a length and a direction. And then they move to the next point. And that point that is common in both of our legal descriptions is the southeastern corner of Mrs. Woods' property. And so when her subdivision was created and a legal description was put in place and the plat was recorded, her, her property, her lot became basically the, the center point or became like the, the accepted norm for property lines. And so it sets the standard for where other property lines are determined from when they used to be, you know, when they're not, there's not as much specificity around where that is. And so by virtue of our legal description, we are essentially conceding to, and they're conceding to, her property corner being the, like, determining point of where the property boundary is. If that helps clear it up, service.
If you, if you don't mind, I want to interrupt. Because I think what it is, is the whole, the whole concept of this, the whole deal is, we don't want 10 years from now, whenever somebody is saying that, hey, your property lines with mine and who's in charge of this, or I acquire a certain amount of curb or a certain amount of square. That's where we lead into problems like we had in Prairie on the Creek, where you had a lot that was just so awkwardly designed. And then there was no way to where you could put septic or anything else, and it was just a square lot. And I guess what we're trying to do is we're trying to make sure that all of the puzzles, pieces connect, in a sense. Is that what we're just getting at? To where everybody's property line is aligned exactly correctly, to where there's nothing, there's no overages. And then on Mayor Protim's, who would you suggest do the survey to where they can get us back to final draft? Which company?
So, yeah, we, we can't do the survey. Because that's what we want to do as a city. But I, I think it was, for me, it was the contractors, the owners getting together and identifying those points is really what I was after, to make sure there was no, what do you call it? That, that everybody was in agreement that these were the corners. But if they're the legal corners, you're saying they're legal, they're already been recorded, you had a surveyor out there, so everything's been identified, the stake's been taken off her property, and we're not doing any work whatsoever across that property line.
Yes, sir.
And that's, I guess that's really where I'm coming from, is that I want to make sure we're not crossing into somebody's property with equipment or anything else. Because I, I just, I'm just not going to stand for it. I mean, I'm kind of upset that somebody transferred, passed into our property and, you know, your home is your castle, so.
I agree. I called the contractor like seven, seven or eight o'clock PM as soon as I found out and jumped on him, so.
All right. If everything's been identified, then I'll retract my original motion.
Okay. You want to make a new one?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item, oh, wait, you have 30 and 31?
Just 30, because we got to do 31 separate.
Thirty.
Second.
All right. A motion by Councilmember Floris Kill, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we approve Agenda Item Number 30. Is there discussion on the motion? All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, Agenda Item 31, First Reading in Ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, annexing 82.951 acres of land, more or less, located at FM 2001, approximately 500 feet north of Windy Hill Road. This item has a public hearing as well. Mr. Agathon, I think you've already presented on it. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Nope. This is just the, the additional portion of it. The next portion east of the petition, Annex 15, that was, that preceded this, so.
All right. If there are no objections, this item has a public hearing. So I'm going to open up that public hearing now. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak?
Just my last, Diana Woods, same address, 125 Torrey Drive. The property is contiguous to the land that you just approved. My continuing question, even though we've resolved the, the property meets and bounds and we're hopefully agreeable there, the, the markers on the ground show the, the, the road creating a right-of-way from the road into my property since since the road is, is so close to the fence. So my obvious thought was that the annexation of these two properties would create Kyle right-of-way into my land because of the road, so. It is, they, it, it is giving the developers sixty feet of right-of-way in, along that contiguous section, so. That's my only other concern. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. It is now closed. Is there anyone who wishes to have any questions or make comments? Councilor Floris Kell.
Thank you. I guess my question would be, what is this sixty feet for the right-of-way for?
So the sixty-foot of right-of-way, and that is not into our property, is for the extension of Suffield Drive, which is part of the city's transportation master plan. It is edge to edge. You know, I do not know exactly what the status of Mansions of Buta's plat is. And so part of this discussion that happened with the city and the county is that Mansions of Buta has had to plat their property to create that roadway that basically splits their property in half. In order for them to get the plat approved, if they were going to be encroaching on some other landowner's property, they would have to have a consent from that landowner to be able to get their plat approved. Because that is not, you know, that has not happened, I would assume that, and I can confirm from our design, that there is no right-of-way proposed into her property. And so, again, I've not gone onto her property or onto Mansions of Buta's property out of respect for them as individual property owners. But I know from being on our property and looking through multiple different designs that the right-of-way that is being carried through there near the property line is within the boundaries of Mansions of Buta's property and within the boundaries of our property.
And, and you're saying that's for the City of Kyle's master transportation plan?
The, the roadway of Suffield Drive extension is, is part of the City of Kyle's transportation master plan. I do not know if that roadway is being dedicated to the city or to the county. I would believe that it would be a county dedication at this point, because it is a county subdivision.
Not for annexing, upon annexing.
Not, not for us, but for Mansions of Buta, which is in, which is in question.
So Suffield Drive, just per the transportation master plan, runs, I believe, from Dacey east to two thousand and one on our plan. Now, Dacey west is actually in Buta, and on their transportation master plan, they continue Suffield Drive to the frontage road. So we were just continuing that all the way to two thousand and one.
So as to who will take control of two thousand and one through Mansions of Buta's property, that dedication, I believe, will be to the county, because it's a county subdivision.
So regardless of who builds there, that's going to be a right-of-way for either the county or the city?
Correct. It is not in, and it is not on, I want to reiterate, it is not proposed to be on her property. It is proposed to be within the property bound, boundary of Mansions of Buta and the Porter Country Development.
But I'd noticed that she lives in a cul-de-sac. So I guess the question would be for city, if, if that road goes through there, will that cut through her cul-de-sac? Will that make it not a cul-de-sac, or will it?
So I have not seen the plans within the subdivision. Suffield Drive is an east-west roadway, but I don't know, and I'll look to Will. Maybe you know that, you know, is there a connection up into the subdivision? Not on RTMP.
No, Suffield Drive, as Mr. Sellers has stated, and also, Daniel, it's an east-west corridor. Where, if you look at a map, where Suffield Drive dead ends, tees into Dacey Lane, it's actually south of the north boundary that makes the north boundary of the Mansions of Buta, which is also the same boundary as one twenty-five Torrey Drive. So the, the, the road runs parallel in east and west, but it, it will not connect to that subdivision that has Torrey Drive in it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protem.
So just real quick, I guess for Mr. Sellers, so we're being told that the roadway does not go onto Mrs. Woods' property. But being on the city's master transportation plan, can we confirm that?
I'll, I'll pull that up. In fact, we have an item a little later, but I'll, I'll pull it up and we can show it here in a second.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. I'm confused as to what we're doing now, so we're waiting on you to pull something up? Okay.
So since this is a city's master transportation plan and it doesn't have anything to do with the annexation, can we, can I make a motion to approve agenda item number thirty-one, please?
Second, a motion made by Councilor Floris Kell, seconded by the mayor to approve agenda item thirty-one. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Aye.
Seven to zero. All right, so is that just something you're going to send us later? Is that what? Or, or I can project it now. All right, all right, we're going to just keep moving. Thirty-two, first rea-
So just real quick, before we move on, the reason I wanted this is to make sure that if we are doing something as a city, we give Ms. Woods a hard heads-up, okay? That's kind of what I'm doing, in case we're moving forward with something on her property.
Okay, it's not being broadcast, but I was just going to show you very quickly, just because I have it, and here it is. So hillside terrace, being the, the north side of the development, this NR one is Suffield Drive. So you can see that roadway east to west, all the way to two thousand and one, going through the development, not having any connections through this neighborhood, right? So that's, I don't know if you can see the, the mouse. So this, this is the transportation master plan.
Okay.
All right, well, now we're, we've got to be careful how, how we, how we proceed here. So we've taken a vote. There'll be opportunity for discussion. All these items are going to come back for a second reading, so we're not, we're not finally passing any of them, so. All right, next up, agenda item thirty-two, first reading, an ordinance meaning chapter fifty-three zoning of the City of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose of assigning original zoning to approximately one point five oh three acres of land for agriculture to CBD one for property located fourteen hundred West Center Street. This item has a public hearing. Mr. Atkinson.
Well, Atkinson, senior planner for the record, this is petition number Z dash twenty-two dash zero nine six. Richard Arida Quayar, they're requesting to rezone their property, which is a little over an acre and a half, from Ag to CBD one, which is Central Business District one, is one of our most restrictive commercial zoning districts that we have. Right here, you can see on the screen the location of it. I'll kind of blow it up there. It's, it has two frontages. It has a little bit on Ranger Drive and a little bit on West Center Street, with the city property sandwiching it. It's right there across from Wallace Middle School and right across the street from the Itonorio subdivision. From a zoning perspective, you can see everything around it. Gray Clark Park is primarily Ag, a little bit community commercial on the hard corner, and Wallace Middle School to the, to the west, being our one. The Ag zoning district is a, is a district that primarily focuses on farming, ranching lane, pastage, and what have you. You can't have one single-family house and associated farm structures on it. You can also have public parks as well. And the request that they're changing it to is, has an allowance of a mix of office, restricted commercial, residential uses, excluding multifamily, with the intent that it generates a relatively low-volume amount of traffic in the CBD one zoning district. But also allows them to have a little bit more flexibility with what they can potentially do with their property if they decide they want to, to develop it as well. If you look in section fifty-three dash twelve thirty, the uses in there are, in the CBD one zoning district are commiserate with uses that are pretty benign, just standard commercial practices, office uses, low, small-scale restaurants and what have you, as appropriate for areas near schools and areas that are not in the primary dense cores of commercial areas. And they, it also does not allow the sale or serving of alcohol in the CBD one zoning district, which is very important, as it's right across from, from Wallace Middle School. The comprehensive plan primarily shows it in the original town district. There's a little sliver to the north. But from a developability standpoint, the original town district is primarily the area that we consider it in. And the CBD one zoning district is recommended as well. Because there's, there's infrastructure there, they have water, they have wastewater. There, there's really not a huge impact that can happen off of it. It's relatively low for the zoning. Staff doesn't have any issue with the request, and we support it wholeheartedly. There will be improvements made to West Center Street eventually, too, with the redesign and the subsequent rebuild of the road. And so there's going to, there's significant infrastructure already around there. And staff asked that y'all vote to approve the request as well.
All right, thank you. This, this item does have a public hearing, so if there are no objections, I'm going to open the public hearing now. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. It is now closed. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Atkinson or comments? Mayor Protem.
Yeah, Will, when P and Z took a look at this, did they take into account the parking?
As a function of development, they will have to provide parking onsite. I want to say the CBD one zoning district requires one space for two hundred square feet of gross floor area. So, for example, if it's a, a one thousand square foot building they build onsite, they're going to have to have five parking spaces at least.
Okay, because I'm, I know that, one of the things that's going on in this area right here is a school and the inadequate parking already that is adjacent to this property. So my concern is adding a business there is going to add, not just to the parking spaces they need, it's going to add parking along the streetways where our residents are already or having a hard time, people visiting the school. The school is only shut down three months out of the year, and the other ones that it's open, I mean, there's parking up and down the street, they're everywhere. I mean, putting a, a commercial property in there is probably not the best use for that area because of the issues with the schools there. So that's my concern right there. And that's really the biggest, the other thing is, my second concern is the CBD one. We're getting ready to look at our comprehensive plan, and right now what CBD one is allowed is specified, but with the comprehensive plan coming forward, that could change, and it could change for, for the worse. So that kind of, that's something a resident brought forward to me, and I took it to heart as well, so. I, I'm just not really comfortable with the CBD one destination right now until we know what the new comprehensive plan is going to hold, because I'm, I'm really worried about what's going to go in there.
Additional comments? Councilor Tobias.
I, I agree, Mayor Protem. It's right by that school, and if anybody's there on the weekends, or if anybody's there during the school year, if there's events that's, that's in the evening, there's just so many cars parked all the way across. And I can tell, whatever business you come in there, it's, you're going to have that parking wars. You're going to have a lot of, you know, unauthorized parking, you're going to have signs everywhere, you're going to, people pulling in there. And again, it is right near a school. What kind of business would be wanting to go in there? And so I kind of reflect what Councilman Reason was saying on there. I mean, that's a very prime spot, right next to our park, and then right next to the school. It's like right in between. So I'd like to have more of a clear picture of what kind of a retail business or commercial business would be in there.
Yes, sir. To, to address the parking generally, the reason that we have onsite parking requirements is to adequately account for parking in the private sector. So it would be up, if, if the property owner, after the site's developed, if they wanted to grant use of the parking spaces to, for school events and what have you, they have the authority to do that, as it's their property. But if they also say it's for businesses only, or for customers only on their site, if it develops as a business, they, they're allowed to put up those signs, and they can enforce that as a private property owner. From a, from a, the streetscape parking and what have you, I understand it's right across from the school. And there's going to be certain times of the day where, you know, you have residents pulling up, dropping off their kids, or waiting to pick them up as well. But that also ties them back into the onsite parking as well that, that we require. From, from a use perspective, we have to be very careful about trying to pinpoint which specific types of businesses go in, because we don't want to violate state law. The owners have not indicated exactly what they want necessarily to go in there. They just wanted to get some, some flexibility from that perspective if they were to market it. And I think they're, they're planning on doing so, and/or developing it if they decide to do that. But the, the question is, are y'all okay with the uses in the CBD one zoning district on the site, just generally, so? And it would have to be, if it were to be rezoned, it would have to develop in a manner required for the, for the CBD one zoning district as well.
Councilor Floris Kell.
So my concern, and not just for the school kids, but for the owners, is there will, five days a week, probably for an hour and a half, be parking from parents, even if they put up no parking signs. Because the way that's laid out, it doesn't give good access in and out. And that parking in that area is super limited. So I don't know how that would affect their business, that the traffic there. I wouldn't think about the business per se, but just the traffic that it would cause and that would affect their business, that might be an issue in the long run. It's such a small area, I, I don't understand how that use would be best used for that area. There's, there's, there's really nothing there.
So as part of the, the zoning process, when an applicant comes forward and they request, and they talk with staff, they're like, hey, we want, we have property, we want a development, and have, and what have you. We, the first thing we do, we look at the comprehensive plan, it's like, okay, so is what you want, is what you're wanting to do, does it agree with the comprehensive plan? And in this case, it does. And then we, we have them take a look at the list of uses. And if they think they can develop something appropriately and try to establish a business there, and, and the city council agrees, then, then they're allowed to. They, they can go for it. There's no guarantee that this is going to be successful.
I just, no, I, for me, it's the traffic that is concerned. It's going to, and that's not, that's not, it's going to be five days a week. I mean, maybe the weekends would be great, but it's five days a week, that traffic is going to be horrendous. And I know, because that's where my kid goes to school. And so as much as I'd like to see something there, so people could go maybe across the street and get a snack, or, you know, there's kids there all the time. So idealistically, I think maybe something would work there. There, the traffic is just so god-awful. And you have school buses, and you have parents, and parents that don't pay attention. I mean, how do we fix that? How do we fix the traffic? And then we can discuss rezoning.
So as a, as a function of site development-
Just be careful, Will. We are so close to spot zoning this property. I mean, this is, this is, this conversation is extremely on the edge of what is, is legal.
Well, I think traffic does fit that, that realm of the reasons to not approve. And so that was my concern, is how do we fix the traffic in that area so it can work? Not so it can't work, but how do we fix the traffic so it can work?
So from a general infrastructure standpoint, when development happens, I always like to go back, because that's in our code, we have the adjacent lane mile fee. So when they do develop, they'll either have to pay the fee or pay, or make improvements in lieu of. It depends on the scale of the project, depends on the use and what have you. But we can't get more specific than that. But when we do do, go, excuse me, when we do have a site development permit, we will look at adjacent, the intersections, see if there needs to be a crosswalk that's added and what have you, and make sure we try to account for stuff as appropriate as possible. And also, a function of a larger regional impact, I think, that, that needs to be considered is when the city rebuilds West Center Street, that, that T intersection right there, Ranger and Center- and Center Street, and not to put anything on the civil engineering design necessarily, but it is important to take a look at that intersection. So what the solution is, I don't know. We have to take a look at that as a group and, and make sure that those improvements are appropriate though. Because it's definitely important. You do have school kids right across the way. And what if it is a business that goes in there that's something that kids can take into account and go purchase a candy bar or whatever, who knows what it is? They, the safety is absolutely important without question. So we, we will have to account for that regardless of what goes in there.
All right, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, well, we keep pointing back to CBD one, what the uses are right now, but I want to point back that we're getting ready to relook at those uses. What guarantees do we have that they will adhere to what CBD is one now than what it's going to be later?
We.
Because if we change it and they hold on to that CBD one, now they can come back and put whatever in there, whatever we have updated as CBD one. With me, it's a reservation now. What am I going to allow with CBD one? Because I'm going to come back and look at this property and when we're doing the comprehensive plan, it's going to make me allow less in the new CBD one.
Yeah, I don't think you're supposed to do that.
It's just the designation of allowable uses is entirely within our control as a council. So we have the ability. CBD one is a small, it's basically just designed in the comprehensive plan to be from Burleson to, to, to Stagecoach anyway. So I don't, it's the most restrictive commercial zoning that we absolutely have. So I guess it's just if we're.
And we're getting ready to revisit it.
I, I agree. And I, we're going to have a chance to, to, you know, but it's, if CBD one doesn't belong there, then it's, it's hard for me to, it's hard for me to comprehend denying the most restrictive, no gas stations, no, no, no alcohol, no, all kinds of things. I mean, it's just, it's to tell them that, well, we're going to kind of take a look at Center Street and the school and then we'll come back. You can come back once we've felt more comfortable with it and then we'll make a zoning vote is, is a dangerous precedent to set, but it, it also sends a message that I, I don't, I don't even know how you can comprehend. I mean, the argument was used that traffic will be bad from the school and they will go into, you're going to protect the property owner because people who are going to pick up their kids at school might go into the private property owner's address and park there. And so you want to protect them from that when the reality is that, that is not, that's not something that.
It's not really that.
Right, yeah.
It's the parking up and down the street. So you're now going to, people park up and down that street waiting to pick up their kids all down Center Street because there's no adequate parking inside the school. They, they do it down Ranger Drive, they do it down Center Street, and you actually have to get to the middle lane to get, I got to get to the middle lane just to get home.
But you're going to deny a zoning request from someone who is not creating the traffic problem, that has a parking plan in place to handle their own.
But would it increase the parking issue?
It is, the function of the code sets out parking standards. And so if you're going to develop and build commercially, you must account for the parking. If you're saying that this little lot is going to somehow materially change the traffic dynamic of Center Street, I mean, it's what, 0.001% of the overall traffic up and down Center Street? I mean, it's just not. And so, I mean, ultimately, it's like what we're saying is, well, we just, it's close to the school, there's traffic there, there's some issues, and so please stop asking us, please go away, the neighbors don't want it. But this is our most restrictive commercial zoning designed specifically for that area. So.
Can I make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 32, please?
Motion by Councilor Floris Kael, seconded by Councilmember Ellison is their discussion on the motion. All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, five to two. All right, next up Agenda Item Number 33, Acceptance of the City's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and the Independent Auditor's Report for the First Year Fiscal Year ended September 30th, 2021.
Mayor and Mayor Protem, council members, once again for the record, I'm Provez Mahid, City's Director of Finance. This agenda item before you tonight is a two-part council action item. The first part is for you to review and accept the City's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for Fiscal Year 21. And the second part of your action is to review and accept the Independent Auditor's Report for the same fiscal year. Article eight of the City Charter requires an audit of all city accounts to be completed by an independent certified public accountant at the end of each fiscal year. And upon acceptance of the audit report by the City Council, the City Charter further requires that a summary of the audit results be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the City of Kyle, which if it's approved tonight, we will post this in Hays Free Press. A copy of the City's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for Fiscal Year 21 and the Independent Auditor's Report are both in your agenda packet. For the record, I'm going to review a few highlights of the City's overall financial performance for Fiscal Year 2021. The combined balance sheet for Fiscal Year 2021 reflects the City's financial position as follows. Assets totaled 473.6 million. Libilities totaled 120.6 million, resulting in a combined net position of 353 million or 74.5% equity position. The City's overall net position, which is basically all assets less liabilities totaling 353 million, is an increase of 67.1 million or 23.5% from the prior fiscal year. Now focusing on the City's primary operating fund, which is the general fund. General fund revenue and transfers in from all sources totaled 45.3 million on a modified accrual basis. Also, on a modified accrual basis, the general fund expenditures and transfers out totaled 45.6 million. The ending fund balance for the City's general fund totaled 21 million on a, on a modified accrual basis. This is a decrease of 0.3 million as compared to the prior fiscal year. And now council for the second part of the agenda, the acceptance of the auditor's report for Fiscal Year 2021. The City's audit for Fiscal Year 21 was successfully completed by the independent CPA firm of RSM US LLP. RSM US LLP is a national auditing firm with offices and clients throughout the U.S. The reason I mentioned they are a national firm is because this is a big benefit to the city. They bring knowledge and experience of best practices of governmental entities from across the United States and not just Texas or just the Austin area. The auditor's report is an independent and unbiased report card that addresses three very specific objectives for our city council, city management, for taxpayers, and our bondholders. First, it's a validation of the City's financial condition based on an independent audit of the City's accounts and funds. Second, it's an independent assessment of the City's accounting and financial reporting systems, internal controls, compliance with city financial policies and procedures. And finally, it provides an independent assurance that the City's accounting and financial reporting systems and practices are in compliance with the rules and standards as prescribed by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. There are four types of audit reports that an independent auditor can possibly issue on a government's financial statements. It really doesn't matter whether it's the federal government, state government, county government, city government, they all get one of these four. In the order of worst to best, types of independent auditor's reports are a disclaimer report, an adverse report, which is a no bueno report, a qualified report, and the best is the unqualified report. As the City's Director of Finance, I'm pleased to inform you that the City of Kyle received the highest level or a clean unqualified report by the Independent Auditors for Fiscal Year 21. I would like to take this opportunity to recognize and thank our entire finance team for their contributions, effort, and achievement. Particularly, I would like to recognize our accounting manager, Andy Alejandro, for coordinating and managing the City's audit this year. Andy's in the back. Andy, stand up and take a bow, please. After city council's acceptance, a complete copy of the City's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and the Independent Auditor's Report will be posted and made available on the City's website. Mayor and council, this concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. We also have Mr. Tino Robledo, who is the Senior Director with the Audit Firm of RSM US LLP, in case you have any questions for the auditors.
Thank you, Provez. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Councilor Floris Kael.
Thank you. As always, good job. It was really exciting to listen to your, your speech. But I just want to make sure that this audit is separate from the audit that was requested in the last council meeting and that we are going to continue to work on that one as well.
The short answer is yes. This is the annual financial report of the entire city. The scope-specific audit that city council requested at their last meeting will be done separately and will only focus on expenditures of city council and city manager.
Thank you very much. And job well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve. Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Floris Kael, is their discussion on the motion. I, having gone, gone through and studied this in, over the last five, six years, I've learned that the, what are we calling it now? The Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Yes, sir.
No acronyms, is a very good snapshot of the financial picture of your city. And so these are the documents that I spend my time going through and studying and scouring because there are tens and hundreds of millions of dollars in here and how our city performs year over year is of, of the utmost importance to the residents of Kyle. So I, I'm glad to see our financial picture moving forward the way that it is. It's honestly doing better than I even thought we could be. We're in a better place than I thought we could be at this point, six years ago, compared to where we were six years ago. So I'm glad to see that. I do, I, the, these documents are, this is my favorite book to get every single year. So just want to say thank you for putting this together and there is gold in this document. There's gold in this document. Anyone else? Councilor Ellison.
Just one clarifying point. I agree really strong important. In the years I've been on council, they continue to be strong. Certainly appreciate everything that you've done in your 12 years, has it been?
Almost.
Almost 12 years. All right. And I certainly appreciate you and your team. Good to see Andy back there. And I know you have a whole team that just works hard on, on all this stuff and so I appreciate that. Just one clarifying point. So I, you know, we do appreciate that it's an independent audit. Could you just briefly explain to us how we get the independent auditor, what that selection process is done?
Certainly. The City Charter sets the backdrop as to how the city would secure an independent audit each year. We go through an RFQ slash RFP process, which is Request for Proposals from independent certified accountants. They have to be licensed, not only in the U.S., but also by the state of Texas. They have to be in good standing. Our requirements are very specific. We, we ask that the auditors be not just mom and pop type operation, independent sole proprietors, but firms that are of national level and they bring national experience with them and that they have similar experiences as our city has experienced, but from growth, from debt, from number of employees, from the types of city operations we have in Kyle. That is done every five years. And I believe RSM has another year to go and then we will be doing another Request for Proposal. Yes, sir.
Any, anyone else? All of us in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, do y'all want to bring the two Monarch items up together? Any objection to that? It's basically one big discussion anyway. So I'm going to bring items 34 and 35 up together. 34 is Consider Approval of an Extension to the Rate Stabilization Agreement between Monarch and the City of Kyle. And then 35 is Consider Approval of an Agreement between Monarch and the City of Kyle Regarding Conditions for the Suspension of Water Services. Ms. Sides, go ahead.
Mayor and council, the, in 2014, the City of Kyle entered into an agreement with Monarch Utilities as the result of the city denying a request to increase rates at that time. In 2014, Monarch came and asked the city to approve a rate increase and the city denied that. There was, Monarch appealed that decision to the TCEQ and the city and Monarch entered into a contested proceeding that was held, heard by SOA, State Office of Administrative Hearings. The result of that was a settlement agreement that provided for certain rates to apply for a period of five years. The agreement provided that the stabilization agreement could be extended by an additional five years upon mutual agreement by the parties. When this last appeared before council, there were a couple of provisions that were requested to be added to the agreement. The first was that some additional, more specific reporting requirements of water usage be provided and reported to the city for the purpose of the city being able to set its wastewater rates. And that's in Section 12 of the agreement that specifies the actual water usage that needs to be reported in the timeframe for doing so. The additional request was that the city and Monarch enter into a, an agreement in which Monarch will disconnect water service in the event of non-payment of wastewater service. This is a common agreement that you would see between an entity that provides wastewater when they do not provide water because there's, it's difficult to enforce payment of wastewater bills without a, the ability to disconnect water. And so there's an agreement with Monarch, which is the second item that is brought before you to approve that agreement. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them the best I can. I may need to tag in other staff to assist. Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Kael.
Thank you. Earlier, actually, when I say earlier, I mean, meetings prior to, I requested the letter of, for an unforeseen circumstance and I received a response today. And I guess I don't really understand completely what it says. So if you could read Audrey Guthrie's email and kind of explain to me what it is as far as the unforeseen circumstance language in the agreement that allows for an increase in the rate?
You want me to read that? I'll read that directly from the contract because that's where that's pulled from. So just to step back, the agreement provides that there, there are certain set agreements in the agreement and that there are annual increases that are authorized to the base rate and gallonage charge. And I got to, I've got to put my glasses on for this, barring an unforeseen circumstance. But that rate increase is equal to the annual percentage of increase in the CPI for all urban customers for the southern region over the period of the calendar year, but not to exceed 3%. So there is a, a, an increase that is authorized but not to exceed 3% unless it's for an unforeseen circumstance. And so an unforeseen circumstance is defined in the agreement as there's an event or a circumstance that is not within the control of Monarch and that it could not have been avoided with the exercise of good faith, due diligence, and reasonable care. So it has to satisfy two things. One, it cannot be within the control of Monarch, the unforeseen circumstance. So that would be similar to some of those force majeure concepts that you. So, that would be similar to some of those force majeure concepts that you would typically see in a contract, like an act of God, strikes, weather events that may cause damage to something that causes them to have to then pay for that, that may increase their cost of service to customers. But not only can it be outside of their control, but it could not have been avoided by their exercise of good faith, due diligence, and reasonable care. So, letting equipment languish and not keeping it up, for example, and then it breaks, that may not fall within the definition of reasonable care. And then there's another level of oversight on top of that, which is the council. So, if there's an occurrence of an unforeseen event under the agreement, then Monarch has to submit that request to the city council detailing the circumstances. So, if they want to go above that 3% increase that's authorized, they have to submit that request to the council and describe what that unforeseen circumstance is and the reason why the rate needs to be adjusted, and the period of time that that rate adjustment is in effect. And they have to make that showing to council, and then council gets to determine whether they've met that burden of demonstrating that there is, in fact, an unforeseen circumstance. Your limitation is you can't unreasonably withhold your approval. So, if you, they bring forward facts that are supported, and you're withholding approvals is unreasonable, then they would have reason to argue with you about it. However, you can articulate why, and it's reasonable why you're denying their request, then that should be able to be withheld. If you fail to act within 45 days, it gets approved. There's a provision for them to dispute your finding through arbitration. So, those are the parameters. Does that answer your question?
Yes. So, is it just, what is the rate increase that they want this year, I guess, is the first question?
So, the rate, I'm not sure if I can answer. What they have here is the rate that they have in place for January 1st, 2021, is the monthly minimum charge is 48.69, and the gallonage charge for the first 1,000 to 2,000 gallons is 7.37. That's the information set forth in this agreement.
But that was for last year?
Yeah, that is for last year.
Do we know what it's going to be for this year?
This is just the approval of the extension.
Number two.
Okay, thank you. So, you're requesting the 3% increase for 2022?
Yes.
Okay, so it would be 3% of 48.69. Do you have that? Can you provide that information to them, please?
I can.
I'm going to ask them to provide that.
Also, I'm looking at the agreement, and the signature block is incorrect for the LP.
Mayor, council, for the record, my name is Brian Barr. I'm the director of rates and regulatory for Monarch. And the question about what the rate increase is this year, the CPI for the all-urban consumer for the south region is 6.6%, and that's based of October of the previous year. And under the rate stabilization agreement, the rates are proposed to go in effect annually at the beginning of the year, so January 1st. This year, they're obviously delayed, but we would propose to increase rates 3% once the contract, once the rate stabilization agreement is approved. And I can read you those rates. I'm sorry, I think that was the original question. The base rate would go up to $50.15. The gallonage rate for the first 2,000 gallons per 1,000 gallons would be $7.59. The next tier, from 2,000 gallons to 10,000 gallons, would be $9.36. From 10,000 gallons to 20,000 gallons, it would be $10.60, and then above 20,000 gallons is $11.30.
So, if I use 300 gallons, do you know how much that bill would be that month?
Yeah, 300 gallons would be $50.15. Now, if you use 300,000 gallons...
Yeah, I was going to say, what is the average?
The average across our system, I don't have it for residents of Kyle specifically, but it's between 4,000 and 5,000 gallons. And an average bill at 5,000 gallons would be about $96.
Do you know why people complain about their rates if their bill's only $96?
I do.
Would you like to share that?
Respectfully, I think most people complain about their rates because they don't understand how the rates are set. And by way of explanation, in Texas, utilities are regulated by cities if they provide service to customers within the city. If they provide service to customers outside of a city, those utilities are regulated by the Public Utility Commission, a state agency that employs economists, engineers, accountants, lawyers, and all manners of people. We recently committed, committed, excuse me, we recently completed a, essentially, an audit, is that me? Excuse me. A general rate case with the Public Utility Commission for all of our customers outside of the city of Kyle. And it spanned three years. We filed it in 2020, and it was recently approved in February of 2022. And the result of that, based on our costs that were incurred in 2019, so stale, were rates that were actually quite similar to the ones that we're proposing for the city of Kyle. So, right now, our rates for the non-Kyle customers, the base rate is $48.37. For the city of Kyle, it'd be $50.15. A bill at 5,000 gallons for the out-of-city customers would be $98. For the city of Kyle, it's 96. And so, I'm sorry, I expounded a little bit more than you probably wanted, but to answer your question, I think most people complain about their rates because they don't understand how they're set, and that they're, even though this is a rate stabilization agreement that is increased annually by the CPI, it tracks very, very closely with the actual costs that the utility incurs.
So, I know people who live out in that subdivision, and they've had $600 bills, and it's just them and a kid. So, how does, and that's just one incident, there's several. You know, we've heard a lot, and anything for me over 150 seems quite excessive. So, how is it that several people have bills over $200, $300?
If a customer used 20,000 gallons, their bill under this rate stabilization agreement in 2022 would be $263. And so, yeah, you're right. It can get over a couple hundred dollars if you're using 20,000 gallons or more, certainly. It can. How do I explain that? I don't think it's different for any other utility or provision of a utility service, where if you use more than what would be considered an average amount, and especially when you have inclining block rates, which is what's used to describe these different tiers, where for each tier of usage, essentially, a customer gets penalized by using more water. And I think that's implemented, especially in Texas, to try to fight drought conditions and try to encourage conservation. And I think that structure penalizes people who are large users of water rather than those who try to conserve.
Can you tell me how much profit Monarch Utilities made last year?
Do you want a dollar or a percentage?
A dollar would be good, please.
So, can I direct you? Somewhere, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I can direct you. We file annual reports that are filed annually, and they're similar to the annual report that was just done. They aren't independently audited. It's not a financial report in that sense, but say, regulatory report, contains most of our financial information. We file that with the Public Utility Commission. There's a docket. I don't know what it is for 2021, but I would direct, if you go to the Public Utility Commission website and then go to dockets, you can find our annual report on there, and I'd be happy to follow up afterwards with a link to our report. Now, I'll tell you, a lot of the information in there is confidential, and to access that information, you'd need to follow the process of the PUC in terms of signing a confidentiality waiver, or whatever that process is. May I address your question more generally?
Sure.
Okay, so, more generally, utilities, even privately owned utilities, or I'd say especially privately owned utilities, they're regulated, and as part of that regulation, their rates are set based on their costs plus a profit margin. That profit margin is, I can tell you, very heavily contested. And the, I'm using the term profit margin, it's not entirely accurate. The rates are actually set based on a return, a profit, based on the capital that the utility has in the ground, the rate base, the investment, essentially, that the utility has in the ground and in its plant and equipment. And that, that margin, that return, is, it's not capped, per se, but if we are to exceed the allowed amount, the public utility commission can call us in and make us show cause and essentially force us to refund those miles. Now, I'm bringing up the Public Utility Commission quite a lot, and I realize that for the residents of the city of Kyle, the Public Utility Commission is an appellate jurisdiction, whereas the city has original jurisdiction. I just bring it up because the rates in the city and outside of the city track fairly closely. And so, I think it's a benefit, essentially, that you can rely on this agency that has audited our costs and our profit and basically every aspect of our business, and you can kind of rely, not kind of, you can rely on their expertise and see that the costs are tracking and that the city of Kyle customers are actually getting lower rates.
Okay, and can you tell us where you get your water from?
I knew that question was going to come up. I live in the city of Round Rock. I think it's Round Rock Utilities. I'll tell you, I'm embarrassed to admit, my wife kind of takes care of the bills. Thank you.
Good evening. Tim Williford, Vice President, Operations for Monarch Utilities. The groundwater, Barton Springs Edwards Aquifer Groundwater Conservation District. And for the Plum Creek Water System, we have four wells that are all on the west side of I-35, and we have an interconnect with the Guadalupe Rizzo River Authority. So, we have some redundancy in case the wells go down, or we need to take one down for maintenance. Those are the two sources.
Okay. You guys did a really great job answering my questions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor President.
So, my question is about the rate increase. Why a 3% and not a 1%?
Okay, 3%. This is a roll forward of the agreement that was litigated and negotiated and settled and approved back in 2014. It's a rollover of that agreement, and so, we didn't see reason to change that percentage increase.
So, it's something in the contract that the city is specifying, correct, Page?
3% is what was approved in the settlement agreement set in 2014.
So, it's something that is, would you say that's beyond our control since the settlement agreement? Because there was legal behind it?
At the time that it was negotiated, there was also a provision that allowed for an extension for five years upon mutual agreement. If you wish to negotiate something different, that's opening up a lot of negotiations, I would say. That would extend the time for discussion of this. But at the time that, I imagine at the time that it was approved, that 3% was evaluated by both sides and settled on as something appropriate at that time, and then consideration was put into place for an extension of the agreement on the terms, on the same terms and conditions as set in 2014.
And that 3% will be yearly for five years?
Yes. Yeah, unless they come and they request something larger for an unforeseen circumstance.
For unforeseen circumstances, correct?
So, what they're telling me is that that's a cap, so that's the maximum? Forgive me a moment, let me pull up the document. So, the CPI is set on the lower of 3% or the actual CPI for all urban customers of the southern region as published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So, that CPI gets published every year, and if it's lower than 3%, then that's the maximum they could increase their rates by.
Thank you, Page.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? We're going to have to, Councilor Olson.
Certainly, I think you did a great job answering the questions as well, and thank you, Page, for the clarity. So, I just want to hammer down a little bit on what Councilor Rizzo was saying, that I know you sounded like you didn't want to go there, but I'm going to make you go there a little bit. So, if we, if the city wanted to see a max rate not to exceed, say, 2%, then we'd have to go back through a litigation process of some sort that we did in 2014, would be a similar process?
Well, my first question would be to the utility, to see if that would be something that they would agree to.
Utility, would you?
Yeah, that would be something to ask if that could be negotiated without the need to litigate.
Are you all open to anything less than 3%?
I also anticipated that question, and I apologize, I'm not authorized to negotiate at this meeting, but happy to answer questions, of course.
Certainly. So, who would be authorized to make such a decision with Monarch?
Ultimately, that would be our president of the Texas Business Unit that would agree and authorize that.
Okay. And have we, as a city, reached out to that particular?
We have not. We have not done that.
The only other thing I had specifically, and if I could ask just to be concise for me, please, Ms. Finity, or Ms. Rush, you made a comment earlier about taking a step back. I assume it's just all about this rate increase, because you did make a mention, Ms. Rush, about items 11, 12, and 13 being something that has been desired to be in the contract in prior years, and so that was accomplished. So, I'm assuming the thing that, a comment was made about taking a step back, it's relative to this 3% rate increase, correct? And so, I guess what is it that you all see that can be improved in this contract, essentially beyond what I'm already asking right now?
Obviously, we want lower water bills. How we get there is another question. Before I get to what you asked specifically, just remember, 3% is 3% compounded. We should all be earning that much on our savings accounts, which we're not. Well, I'm so old, I remember when I used to get 1%.
And loans were probably like 10%.
Yeah, right. Okay, I'm going to speak for myself. I want parity. I want parity with what is happening with city water customers and sewer customers, and parity with what we're paying. and parity with what we're paying. We didn't, you know, I mean, I think that's fair. We want fairness. Parity. Does that answer your question? What I'd like to see? And I think there are ways to get there. And and I'd be happy to talk to you about them later, but, you know, parity.
Paige, where are we at with the 45-day window?
Well, this is just a, yeah, this is not a 45-day window issue. This is a, they've requested that the agreement be extended by five years. They're trying to exercise that five-year extension clause.
With the rate increase?
I would like to make a recommendation to postpone Agenda Items 34 and 35 and give staff direction to engage with Monarch Utilities with the sort of the objectives that have been outlined here on this dais. Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Flor scale. The item will come back at the next meeting, though, I would assume, or or no? What is your thoughts on when it should come back?
As soon as we can get together and start negotiating. It may take longer than.
All right, well, we'll leave that to the discretion of the city manager to 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 bring that back. Is there any other discussion?
Just real quick, why wasn't this negotiation done from the beginning? When we already know that these were rate increases? Why why is it now that we're going back to say, let's negotiate this when this has been going on for so long? You know, now it's like we're bringing it back, but now it's like we now we know that we we have the increase and it's, you know, there's a lot of people in this neighborhood that are on a very fixed income. So I'm just trying to understand, why weren't we negotiating from the beginning?
The short answer I can offer is it's this was the rate in the negotiated settlement. Even though that negotiation period has elapsed, the direction to renegotiate that rate really ought to come from the council and not from staff. About to get it.
One point of clarity. I apologize, y'all may already understand this, but in terms of why wasn't this negotiated from the beginning? So the rate was negotiated in 2014. The increases haven't been 3% every year. They haven't been anywhere close. Over the last five years, it's 1 and 1/2, 2, 2.1, 1.3, and 1.3. The CPI for last fall was 6.6. And so we'd be coming in with a 3% this year. And I apologize if that didn't quite answer your question. I wasn't sure if you're asking why wasn't the whole contract negotiated or why wasn't the 3% cap specifically negotiated? The 3% cap specifically was negotiated after a long and costly litigated process in 2014. This is trying to extend that process.
Thank you.
Or not extend the process, avoid the process. Excuse me.
Well, I just would say for myself, with regards to Monarch, Monarch County Line and other water providers in the, you know, in the area, I think pursuing parity with the city makes a lot of sense, which the residents may like that. But the, you know, being frank, we've increased our water rates many times through the years to pay for infrastructure as well. We have an accountability process that's built in that's a little different than some of these private water providers. So this does give us that ability to advocate on their behalf in this particular settlement or issue, which I know obviously has a whole lot of history to it. So I know we got to get to a solution on this as well. So this will kick it off, though. Is there further discussion?
Just one last question. So you talked about this going back to January 1st. So would, once we approve this contract, will the residents get a bill for what's owed from January?
No. The it would be going forward only. The effective na, the effective date would not be January 1st, 2022. It'd be for the first meter read after April 18th or, you know, so on.
Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it.
All right, so this is on Items 34 and 35, to be clear. Motion to postpone further discussion.
Can we just make sure that the signature block reflects Texas Water Service and not Monarch Utilities?
Yeah, Texas Water Service. You got to, you got to put the, you got to put the general partner in there in the signature block. I'll tell them.
Yeah, you're going to, you're going to get your chance. All right. Anyone else? Thank you, Councilmember Flor scale. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poll opposed? Motion to postpone carries seven to zero. All right, Items 36 and 37 are both change orders related to our parks. I'm going to bring them both up at the same time if there is no objection. Item 36, consider impossible action to approve change order number nine, the amount of $151,394.78 for Stoddard General Contractors for adding the construction of a lift station for the LaVerde Park project. And Item 37, consider impossible action to approve change order number 10, in the amount of $236,630 for Cadence McShane Construction Company for the Heroes Memorial Park project. Mr. Harding.
Mayor and council, thanks again for having us. If it's okay with y'all, I'd actually love to start with item number 37. Is that okay?
Yes.
Can we go with that one first? I know you've heard me say this many times before, but I have good news. And the good news is that the senior project lead for Cadence McShane has very generously, during actually the course of this meeting, offered to cut the overhead and profit on this change order in half, saving the city almost $21,000. So if that's not a testament to the kind of contractor we have in Cadence McShane, I don't know what is. We just, I just want to really sing their praises and say we love dealing with these guys and they're terrific to work with. And the new number, rather than 236,630 you're going to be looking at, is 215,643.50. And thanks to Scott German and Cadence McShane for being willing to do that.
Well, I will, actually, I want to interrupt you before you keep going and say that, you know, I interact with a lot of, you know, contractors and doing doing work for different projects. And the Cadence McShane crew out at Heroes Memorial Park has been the most impressive group that I've dealt with throughout the city. So I've, for myself, I've been very impressed, in particular with the care and the desire to make that that project be what it's intended to be. So I have more confidence in HMP coming to full fruition than maybe any any project we have, so.
They're terrific.
State that. They're state that, so.
I'm sure they appreciate those words, Mayor. So that's the number. The way this happened, guys, is that we had a value engineering target that was put together at the beginning of the project. The goal initially was to value engineer $1 million out of the Heroes Memorial Project. In order to get there, there were a number of value engineering items, line items that were proposed, some accepted, some denied. The, this one in particular is for value engineering through a submittal process. The goal there was to was sort of two-part. We had a typical value engineering through submittal process of maybe getting, you know, equal equal alternates through substitutions or just, you know, alternate vendors for proposed items, materials in construction. Unfortunately, the market has continued on a trajectory up instead of, so it's very, very difficult to realize savings through submittal, through materials and certainly lead times have just just gone wild. So we weren't able, we really weren't able to realize anything by way of that type of submittal savings. However, through our TDS partnership, Texas disposal systems, we were able to realize a number of $87,668, which left us with a bogey of 194,657. And with a reduced overhead and profit on top of that, the new number is 215,643.50. That needs to be put back into the contract for Heroes Memorial Park. And I'm happy to take your questions.
You want to go ahead and go through LaVerde? We've opened them both up at the same time.
Absolutely, we can do that as well. LaVerde Park, so with this one, we had a one initially what we had, let me just put it up right here, was a $194,538 change order from Stoddard Construction. It was for a a design omission, a partial design omission that was incomplete design. It was RFI'd through a standard request for information process. The design team reviewed it and got back to the contractor. Unfortunately, the design review and subsequent redesign took too long and pushed out the contract an additional 43 days, which resulted in extended general conditions in the amount of $76,616. So a significant number in delay costs due to design review times. And we evaluated this initially when this was proposed in early January. We immediately put it on hold through a construction change directive that was an initiative that AGCM put into place so that we could stop the kind of the clock ticking on that delay. Every day that we didn't approve it would have been additional extended general conditions to the city, and we did not want to see all more cost while we were reviewing this. So we stopped the bleeding and we said we will evaluate it. During that evaluation process, the design team looked at everything, I looked at everything, our project team as a whole reviewed it. We were able to go back and renegotiate the work itself down. The days were accepted by the design team as fair and equitable, reasonable for the work required. And the new number negotiated down from 194 was 151,394.78. And that is the, that is the change order that sits before you today. I I do want to clarify, that is actually not a true change order. What we are actually proposing here is really just a contingency draw. We have enough money and contingency to pay this. We are, we are prepared to do it. And the design team has recommended that we move forward with that. We agree.
So your estimation on both of these parts, this would be the sort of the second major time we've increased the budget by however, however much.
That's correct.
But you're based on where these projects are at and the issues coming down as we're concluding them, you think this is the last time that we will have to make these kinds of votes?
You know, it's, it's, it's impossible to say. I can't, I can't, I don't have a crystal ball in there, I really don't, but I will tell you.
But you're not anticipating bringing anything back at this point?
I'm not. At this point, I, there's nothing.
Towards the end of this.
I mean, truly, there's nothing else that I am, I am tracking.
That was nice.
There's nothing else I'm tracking at this point that is giving me any cause to, cause for concern by way of that. We're at about 82%. I know Leon gave an update. I think that there is a more updated number on percentage complete. There's more about 82% on Heroes Park. We're just over 50, maybe 53% on LaVerde, so not as far ahead. We have a recovery schedule in place. Again, barring any unforeseen or active god condition, I don't have anything sitting top of mind that's of major concern that would cause us to have to come back.
And related to the design omission and the costs associated with that design omission, that's something we're still going to be pursuing to make sure that we're looking at that and pursuing any other remedies that are available to us to, you know, to make sure we're not, you know, if it's something that needed, it needed it. But you understand what I'm saying?
I do. So and just to, I'll speak to that very briefly without getting into too much detail. When we, the first thing we did was jump in and do a forensic analysis on this thing. And we we documented everything in a very detailed timeline from when it started to when it ended and how it went and, you know, whose court it was in at any given point. We know exactly where this thing was from the time it started to the time it ended, whose courts it was in. I mean, we have, we have correspondence from all responsible parties admitting, I mean, it's all, we have it all. So we're going to talk with whoever we need to talk with on the city side, and we can have those discussions at a later time.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 36 and 37 and change the amount on Item 2, 37 to $215,643.50. Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Ellis. Is there discussion on the motion?
I have a question.
Councilmember Parsley.
Extended general conditions, what is that?
Extended general conditions are essentially the operating costs of a contractor to run a site. So things like cost of personnel, management personnel on the site, the trailer, you know, the cost to have a fence around the site, portage ons and the like. So salaries would be one of the most costly things. Extended general conditions can range in cost anywhere from, I mean, depending on the project size, from, you know, in the hundreds to the tens and even hundreds of thousands, depending on the size of the project, per day. So when you look at scheduled delays, that's why everyone is so crazy about construction schedule. Because on the one hand, a lot of times built into your contract, and it kind of, it varies contract to contract, you have two mechanisms that are enforceable oftentimes. One is called liquidated damages. The other is extended general conditions. If a project goes late and it's not your fault, you can charge a contractor with something called liquidated damages. It's a per day cost for every day they're late. If you're late and it's the owner's fault, then ultimately they can hit you with what's called extended general conditions for their operating fees to pay their staff, the extended time that they're going to have to be on the site, to carry the cost of the trailer, the fence, and all that. Does that answer, hopefully?
Yes, so I, I'm just looking at the number and I see the install, lift station, 66,000, this pump, 3,000, crane, 3,500. So I just didn't know what that number meant. And is, is this number as high as it is because of the delay?
That's correct. That's correct. That number represents 43 days in extended general conditions. Yes, ma'am.
And that's what we are not going to pay, correct?
Well, that, so that is what the city is authorizing to pay today. We are going to have a subsequent conversation about what the city, what the options are to the city after that.
This was dated January 6th.
The initial change order was dated January 6th. Oh, no, I'm sorry. The updated change order was dated January 6th, I guess. Or no, this one must have been, they must have updated it and just not changed that date because that came at a later date. So the revised came at a later date. I think they just didn't change the date because the initial one, I believe, came. Let's see if I'm right. Yeah, I actually have the original one dated January 13th. This, so what you're looking at, that that one six number, that was when this spreadsheet must have been put together. Ultimately, I think the actual title page on here is dated 2/8. So Joe, so February 8th is when we got the revised number of 151. After, after we went through with the engineering and design team and the contractor to rework this and figure out how we can get the cost of work down to essentially offset the cost of days that we've, we then incurred.
That's just $67,000.
Yeah.
That is not the city's fault.
We, we are fully prepared to work with you to help explain your options. I don't, I just, I don't want to get into too much detail here. I just don't know if it's appropriate, but I promise you, we have a plan for that.
I don't have more.
Councilmember Flor scale.
That's kind of disheartening to hear. There's nothing that you can't say in front of us that you shouldn't be able to say in front of everybody. But, um, so my first question is, this is going to get paid out of the contingency draw, correct?
This is going to come out of construction contingency. That's right.
Okay. So where did that original contingency money come from?
The original contingency came from initial contingency plus influx from council a number of months ago.
Okay, so who do I ask? Perez? I'm sorry.
Short answer, general fund.
General fund. That's what I want to hear. Every single time, I just give it to us. So this contingency draw came from the general fund?
That's correct.
How much is in that contingency draw?
The initial contingency influx that was, you're talking about the influx that you guys granted months ago, is that right?
Whatever amount came from the general fund to go into this contingency?
Yes, ma'am. Got that number here. Just give me one moment, please. Luckily, I have internet all lined up. All right, here we go. The amount granted by council in the amount of $245,750. $750.
Okay, so what is a contingency fund used for?
A contingency fund is used for things just like this, change orders or contingency draws, unforeseen conditions, design errors or omissions, things that have to get put back into the design that just were missed upfront, things of that nature. Or it, it can also be used for betterments. And we have, in some cases, used it for city requested ads or, you know.
Okay, so how much is in there now?
Okay. Currently, what's the remaining in our contingency for LaVerde? We are at 211,836 and 10 cents. That's 211,836.10.
And how are you going to pay the contingency back?
So the contingency doesn't get paid back. It get, it's, it's used for these things. It's not, it's not something you need to repay. You need to just, you need to use it. You need to have a contingency upfront that hopefully is big enough to encapsulate all of the issues that you inevitably may encounter on a construction project. Typical industry standard would range 5% to 10% of a construction budget for contingency for just this reason.
For the reason that somebody forgot to put a lift station on there?
Human error is a real thing. I mean, I.
I live it every day.
I mean, listen, I get it. I'm not perfect and I'll be the first one. And I don't, you know, I know we're talking about the design team, but.
There's a difference between like a mistake, like, you know, hey, we got to pay 20, 30,000. And then we're looking at, at this point, you know, $151,000.
Yeah.
For me, that's a couple of police officers. So it, I am kind of hesitant to, to vote yes for that. So I am kind of hesitant to, to vote yes for that. If I could talk to Perez again, please? How much money was put in this TERS from the general fund when this TERS account opened?
16 million, 700, some change.
And how much do we have? We don't have enough in there now to cover this 200,000 dollars?
No, we will have to add in the proposed budget, the difference.
So we've spent 16 million dollars out of our general fund to feed this TERS, and heaven help us if we have to stick any more money in there.
It's a loan from the general fund to the TERS, and the TERS will repay the general fund back over time.
Which one of our TERS has done that so far?
I'm sorry?
Which one of our TERS has done that so far?
This is the first TERS that was designed to do that.
Okay, that's kind of what makes me nervous, because I don't think that's exactly what they're designed to do. I think they're designed to build up infrastructure in an area. So my fear is we may not ever see that 16 million dollars again. Okay, and I don't want to sound angry about it, but that's a lot, that's a lot for me to go have to explain to my residents that we stuck 16 million dollars into this park when there's roads all around that need real updating. So, and I get it, at the end, it's gonna be nice, it's gonna be pretty, we're gonna appreciate it, it's just really hard for me to think about at this point. So I have no doubt when this park is done that we're gonna get some real gratification, and there's gonna be tax money given back. I do, just being here now, it's tough, so. But I thank you for your transparency and your honesty.
Perez? Just a quick question, real quick. So you're saying this is the first one we've done like this, and this one's structured to pay back, because I know our last TERS was 100% TERS. What's the TERS on this one?
This is a 50% TERS. The city contributes 50%, and Hayes County contributes 50%.
So we'll start making 50% of the tax dollars back into the city general fund, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
After paying the expenses of the TERS.
Correct. Thank you.
And as long as there's no additional upgrades, because if there's upgrades, that money gets spent, correct?
Yes, that would have to be taken into account.
So let me ask you a question, if the TERS needs saving 10 years.
I'm sorry, Councilor Flor scale, you didn't have the floor. I was calling Councilor Parsley from.
Oh, I didn't hear that, sorry.
So I'm gonna let Councilor Parsley go, and now I'll come back.
I just have a quick question. So I have questions about the contingency. So basically, if we establish a certain amount for errors and we don't make any, which we won't make, we don't see that money back.
Of course you do, absolutely. That money gets returned to the city.
Okay.
That's your money.
That's what I was thinking, you know, after we pay this 151, and there's 200 and something left, that remainder, if we don't use it, will that go back to the city?
There would be, well, these are based on slightly older numbers, there would be roughly 60-plus thousand remaining after payment of this in this contingency. If left untouched, unneeded, gets returned to the city at the end of the job, for this particular project.
That opens a lot of room to make errors. I just don't, I don't see how that's a smart thing, you know, just having such a big room, and then, okay, we're gonna plan for errors, and we can make them, and then pay extra 67,000 dollars for 43 days that we shouldn't be. So I hope you understand my frustration.
I do, I sure do.
Because that's somebody's salary, and that's money that can be allocated somewhere else.
I want to, I want to offer this, and I know, and I promise you, this is not to toot my own horn, because if it wasn't me, you could have hired anyone else. The reason you hire a firm like ours is because we come in and we help you to mitigate those losses. Contingencies are a part of construction, you always gonna do that, whether you build a doghouse at your own home, or you build a multimillion dollar park, or 30-plus million dollar public safety center. Contingencies are part of life, and they're necessary to mitigate impacts like these. Our firm comes in and seeks, I mean, if I, if I could show you the amount of change orders, proposed change orders, that were thrown at the wall that we just, that we just turned away, found either contract language or some other outlet to put it back off the city's plate, it would, it would amount to far more money than what we're discussing here. That's what we do every day. That's, that's our pledge to you, that's why we're here, that's what we, I work for that every day. You know, I understand it's frustrating, I really truly do. I don't enjoy bringing this news to y'all, it's not great news. I like good news, I'm a positive guy, but I will tell you that we are doing everything we can to mitigate these impacts as much as is humanly possible, and if there is an option to the city to exercise an illegal arm to recoup some of those losses, hey, we're gonna be at the forefront of that and helping y'all do that, and making sure that we're being the best steward of your dollar as we possibly can be.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five to two. All right, next up, agenda item number 38, consider possible action to amend the 2021 transportation master plan. Mr. Barba.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Leon Barba, City Engineer. Mayor and Council, we have five amendments we would like for you to look at, and let us know if you want to either approve one or all of these amendments, or reject some of these amendments. So what I'm gonna do is show you the first map, which is, I'm not proud to show you this map, we could have done better on this, but we couldn't really get a good copy of a map that we could really mark it up, so it's really hard to read, but it just shows you there's five amendments on the master plan that was approved back in September 7th of last year. This is the First Amendment, we're calling it the Go Fourth Road Amendment. What you see on the left, on that reddish line, is some Xs through there, that's what the original amendment shows. We've looked at this particular section of road and tried to go in that route, and as we go through Casetta Ranch, that's where the issues really show up as being a problem. It's gonna be hard putting three or four lanes through that section of subdivision. So we did some brainstorming, looked at some other options, we called several people, we included Kay Freeze, city manager, staff, we looked at some various options to see what would be a better route that would impact neighborhoods the least, and, and maybe provide some better connectivity. As you can see, that pinkish colored line, that's what we're proposing to amend our contract, or amend our plan with. And there's a couple of roads that we're connecting there, just to kind of make it work better for us. So this is the first one I want to show you. What I'll do is go over the all five, and then we'll come back to the first one, and let me have your recommendations or your thoughts. This is a Kyle Parkway-Seton Parkway interchange. If you look at the upper left, it's kind of a strange alignment there, so we tried to straighten it up a little bit and tried to reduce the impact of some of the neighborhoods in there, and tried to tie a little bit more roads. To your right, that pinkish line, that's what we're kind of trying to change it. So it's not really changing the network very much, but it is giving us a little better chance of trying to reduce the impact to the properties in that area. This is a private road amendment. This is a road that's behind the 711, the New Starbucks, the Goodyear, that goes from Philomena back to 150. And we're proposing to make that, put that on our transportation plan, to eventually make that a public road. This is our amendment from our Diness Loop. This would take that, it's right now, it's barely a two lane, we're proposing to take that to the north, to tie to Marketplace, and provide a connection for the, for people that want to go northbound to get to Marketplace, rather than have to loop around on I-35 or go back down to Burleson. And our last one, that pinkish part, is just a little connection that we wanted to put to the proposed Culver's-Seton Parkway extension that we wanted to do. So I'll go back to the first one, and let me know what you think.
Well, I think maybe the best way would be is if there's, if somebody has an issue with any particular of the amendments, or questions they want to discuss about any particular proposal, maybe we can go through that way, that way we can get any questions we have answered, try to take them up altogether if there's not too much discussion about removing any. Does anybody have any items that, any of these that they want to amend, alter, or don't support, or questions? Councilor Tobias?
Go Fourth and Seton Parkway, those two. Let's start with that one there. Okay, so you have the, I guess you're going from Lehman Road all the way up through, you can make your turn right there that goes to Parkway, right?
Yes, sir.
And then you can, or you can continue to go straight, and then you'll hit Seton Parkway. All right. The people that are in that back area there are trying to get to 35, so I'm looking at it to where the people that are gonna continue to go straight north, and then they make that left to Seton Parkway. If they go straight to Seton Parkway, they're gonna end up in that big circle again. See, they're gonna just basically make a, make a, continue to go straight, and the next thing you know, they're gonna be hitting Kyle Parkway again, and that right there is just stop signs. Okay, so are we looking at proposing adding a, again, streetlights in this area where Kyle Parkway is gonna be at? And what about the one up on top? What idea would be, would be up there? Because I'm, I'm, again, because everybody's trying to get out and hit west, and if you have those two up there, you're gonna have them go straight into Parkway, which is gonna make a loop around, and then you'll have that traffic backed up.
The goal and purpose of amending the transportation plan was to make sure we provided routes going north, south, and east to west. If you look at the inset there on the upper left, you kind of see how we were trying to make that a northern route. And so when we looked at it a little bit closer, we said that's really a little more difficult for us. So we, we're not crazy about this particular alignment. But it's the best way that we can avoid some of the homes that are in the area. And we would, we would be looking at roundabouts, afraid council member, we'd be looking at roundabouts to help move the flow or anticipated flow that we have there. There could be roundabouts at Dacey, there could be roundabouts at that one on the further right, I guess is the best way I can describe it, or even at Dacey, at Kyle Parkway. That would be our first challenge, is to look and see if the roundabout's gonna work, and then if that doesn't, then we look at traffic signals.
Okay, I'm just thinking, my thinking is, is in that area, when the people go straight and they go all the way up to that very top one, and they hit Seton Parkway, they're gonna want to make a right, and they're gonna go to Dacey, and then they'll be stuck there trying to head out to BB, and then you've got Kensington, which is trying to have their traffic heading out. Okay, and then we can go to Go Fourth. If you see right up there on the top where BB Road is, and then right where that X is, you notice how it has more of a, of a V shape in stop sign, like when you're coming up Go Fourth, it curves to the right, and then it stops, and there's a stop sign. Has there been thought of actually straightening that out and continuing further through, or is it gonna be another roundabout in that area? Because that traffic backs up all the way up to Science Hall, at, from, from that four corner, that's just about a good, at least, mile.
I don't know if we've really looked at it that closely.
Okay.
And could you tell me again where, which intersection?
Where you go up to where there's Go Fourth and BB, right there where the X is on the very top.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so from there all the way up to the top, both sides, you could probably have a good mile of a, I've calculated a 35-minute wait just going from that stop sign all the way up to the corner, because it curves around.
Again, we'd have to look, as we do our design or preliminary engineering reports, we just have to look, take a look at it.
I always just tell people, drive out there at 5:00 in the afternoon, you'll get all the data you need. Yeah, but those are the two that I've got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? And I'll move to approve.
Second.
Moved by the mayor, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim that we approve agenda item 38, is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. All right, next up is agenda item number 39, reconsideration of the vote on items 21 through 27 from the 4522 council meeting related to Blanca River Ranch properties. TERS 3 Savannah Ranch Development, Savannah Pid. So this is requested to be brought back by Councilor Tobias, which per the rules of council and the way the vote went, he is allowed. We can't bring the items back up until we take a vote on whether or not to reconsider. So the first item would be to reconsider it, and then we can have a discussion about the items again. So I will make a motion to reconsider the agenda items.
Second.
Moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Tobias, is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor, Councilor Hellson?
I just wanted to hear Councilmember Tobias's, the process or reasoning behind your reconsideration.
Yes, sir. Okay, while looking at this again, I know that this would be an area that would be another TERS, correct? Would be, was being considered for another TERS 3. So the reason why I'm bringing it back is because I want us to really look at seeing how we can go forward with incorporating some kind of earmark money to be used whenever we're designing this one, especially from this, this area, that we can be able to earmark some, a percentage of that, that we can use for not just east side products, projects, but projects within the city, instead of just keeping it all there. And that was my biggest concern that I had, that I wanted to do, is use some of this, use some of this TERS money upfront to where we can be able to establish some kind of earmark money to where we can jumpstart a lot of our projects, in, instead of keeping it within the, within this region. And I had a, I was invited to a residence house yesterday, they were very graciously wanting to talk to me about this. And my whole thought process, everyone, was how can we be able to look at this TERS and look at these pits and see what we can do to help bring some of these products that we need now, and cap, and bring some of the capital, and capitalize on some of this growth that we're having, to be able to help out, and, and again, to earmark some of our, get some of our projects going. And I wanted to be able to open up that discussion again for everybody.
Okay, thank you. One other quick question before I turn to staff. Did you review with staff the practicality and legality of being able to do something like that?
Yes, I did reach out to Scott Sellers to see, first of all, is this legal to do? And is this something that, again, being new at this, on this, this rim, if this is something that we can actually propose? And Mr. Sellers and I had a conversation about that.
Give yourself credit, you've been on council for three years, right? So you're not that new. So then I'll turn to Stan.
Sorry to, sorry to jump in, I really think we should decide whether we want to reconsider it, because this is really more of the.
Well, this is, this is the process to help me understand if I want to vote to reconsider this or not.
Okay.
The question proposed to Councilmember Tobias is, he said that he got with staff, you all said that this is something that could be done.
Whether, okay, yeah, so there's, there's a couple of questions here. One is whether or not to even reconsider. So yes, we did bring that up, we talked to Paige, she considered with bond counsel, so the, all of the subsequent items can be brought up legally, you know, per Paige's review, so maybe that's a question for Paige first.
Well, I'm sorry, not whether we can reconsider it, but whether or not, what Councilmember Tobias is suggesting, whether or not we can use funds or dedicate funds towards out of...
Yeah, so, so Councilmember Tobias really asked more about the 10% contribution that was coming from, you know, the PID policy, which has a 10% contribution of net PID bonds to be placed toward projects, basically go to the city as cash. In the agreement, that those funds have already been identified to retire the obligation for the elevated storage tank, but the remainder of the funds in the agreement right now are for Stagecoach Run, Old Stagecoach Run. I think originally we talked about there'd be about 850,000 dollars available for that once the elevated storage tank obligations are satisfied. obligations are satisfied. The subsequent terms, you know, looking at the 30 years that was, that was proposed, still at a three to one value, bring that number to about 1.2 million, that would be remaining for Old Stagecoach. So the conversation we had is whether or not the council would like to redefine where those funds are ultimately dedicated, whether that's right now in a motion or as part of this, this process, whether it's through the budget process, whether it's through amending the DA and stating that would go to other projects. All that is, is fine to do upon council motion and approval. The TERS and PID themselves were not going to have any sort of ability to fund additional projects outside of the development area. So again, we're really just talking about the 10%.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Councilman Flor scale.
Sorry, I left and I came back and it's like a totally different subject. So let me ask this question. Are we saying if you give us 1.2 million dollars for some roads in the pits or in some other form, that we would do a TERS?
The, the format from the, the TERS and the PID policy, so the TERS is just back in the PID. And the PID policy has 10% of net proceeds that are paid to the city for city projects, right? So it's, it's for projects outside of the boundary. Again, that's, I want to say it's 2.7, 8, you know, somewhere in there. 2.8? 2.8 in total, of which a portion of that is going to pay down the city's obligation or the developer's obligation for the elevated storage tank. So the city has been paying a pro rata share for this development from the Anthem Elevated Storage Tank for several years. So this would pay off that obligation for the development. The remainder is 1.2 million dollars that has been up to now in the DA set aside for Old Stagecoach Road improvements. So what Councilmember Tobias is asking for is that 1.2 million dollars that's remaining, instead of being dedicated toward Old Stagecoach Road, would then be dedicated toward east side road projects. Keep in mind, there's also adjacent lane mile fee that, of, I believe it's $328,000 that could also be applied toward Old Stagecoach Road or any other road projects, because that does not have to be expended within the district.
All right, well, I'm going to discuss the fact that this was brought to my attention while in Washington, that maybe if we asked for money for, I think it was the senior center, that they could have a TERS. And my response was no. I consider that a bribe for one, and for two, you could give me 100 million dollars and it still doesn't qualify for a TERS, in my opinion, so I'm not keen on selling my soul to anybody for any amount of money, and I know that seems kind of out there, but I feel like when collectively as a diocese, we say, no, we don't want a TERS, and then people come to us saying, hey, but maybe we can do this. I don't find that very ethical. And I'm really offended right now that this is even a conversation that we're having.
So a, a couple things. Number one is that it is, Councilmember's right to bring back for reconsideration any item that they wish to bring back. We make decisions based on financial considerations of a development deal all, all the time. I could name probably half a dozen with very similar propositions that we've voted on. So, but again, we're trying to have a reconsideration of the items. So we need to take a vote to decide whether or not we even want to bring these items back forward, as opposed to trying to debate the item before we have a vote to reconsider, so.
I was trying to understand what it was, I'm sorry.
Right. Paige, you try to say.
Just from a technical standpoint, the, the motion for reconsideration, it was requested by a, a member of the prevailing side of the vote last time. Just to be technical about it, I think you made the motion, Mayor, to reconsider.
Rules of council allow for items to be placed, you may not place an item back on the agenda if you are not on the prevailing side, but once an item to, is being brought up, anyone can make a motion on it. It has to do, reconsideration, the rules of council have to do with whether an item can be put on the agenda. So the motion and second should not matter. That, it's, I don't know, it's like the fifth time I've done this, so.
Just wouldn't be hyper technical about it. If we want to, I can, I have the rules of council if we want to read and confirm.
All right.
It just, it says the request, it says the request is made. It says the request is made by somebody from the prevailing side of the vote, which the request was made. So the request was made, it's properly on the agenda, it doesn't speak to the motion.
That's correct.
It doesn't speak to the motion being made.
That's correct.
So this isn't me being hyper technical on the issue.
That is correct. So I, I don't know what to say, but it's up to the rule, council if y'all want to. It's not, it's not up, I'm allowed to make a motion, I'm just not allowed to bring, bring forward an item, so. Is there further discussion on the motion to reconsider? Roll call vote, please.
Tobias?
Aye.
Rizzo?
Aye.
Parsley?
Nay.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Kale?
No.
Ellison?
Aye.
Bradshaw?
Aye.
All right, motion to reconsider passes four to three. So that brings us to the items, I'll bring them all up together. And agenda items 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, and 47. These are all the items that we discussed at the last council meeting related to zoning, R11, interlocal agreement with Hays County, creation of TERS 3, assignment of zoning, annexation, et cetera. So Councilmember Tobias, you brought it back, if you want to make a motion on the dollars, if that's the direction you'd like to go, I'd be happy to hear. We're going to be split on this one way or another, so.
Okay, yes, I, I would like to see how we can at least get maybe possibly 3% earmarked dollars added to the, added to this, this agreement to where we could be able to get some earmarked money to, to fund some of the road projects that we need, so desperately needed on east of Kyle. Suggestions would be BB Road, even though that might be considered on the possible bond. But it's, that's what I'm looking at, close to a, a certain percentage on that end.
3% of what, I'm, I'm sorry?
3% of the valorem taxes on the homes that we have that would be built. And we can,
I don't know that you can dedicate the property tax revenue into perpetuity, I don't think you're allowed to, to, to do that, Paige, can you? But there, there's several different buckets that could be used, but I don't know that you can do ad valorem.
No, no. The, the developer is, and the council needs to give some input as how, how they want to structure this, but the developer is proposing to contribute kind of roughly 10%
Okay.
of the PID bond proceeds, 10% of the PID bond proceeds to mirror what is authorized in the PID policy. The PID policy authorized 10% of the PID bond proceeds to be used for, paid and used for, you know, city projects at the city's discretion. An example of that, you just approved some bonds for Lennar and they agreed to pay $2 million to the city towards the Anthem Water Tank as a condition of the approval of the PID bonds. And so you could do something similar here where you have the, a 10% amount
Yes.
that's established in the, under the agreement and then the council determines how it wants to use those funds. There's a certain amount that's supposed to be paid towards that, the Anthem infrastructure. So I think that's like 1.5 million. And then anything that is above that then is within council's discretion to use. And just so you're, so you're aware, the developer is not, that money doesn't come from the PID funds. The developer pays that from other funding sources.
Okay.
So that's a developer funded contribution.
So we, we use 10% of the PID funding for that?
I'm, I'm sorry, say that one more time.
So we could use 10, about 10% of the PID fee?
I think it would be 10% minus the,
Minus?
The Anthem, yeah, 1.2. And I'm not ultimately the money person, we have many people here that can assist with that. You've got your PID consultant and you also have the developer team who may have some input there. I don't mean to put you on the spot, John, but that would provide some context for what, what fund, funding sources may be available and the amounts available.
John Snyder with P3 Works.
Should I get in, John?
There we go. John Snyder with P3 Works, so the, the total bond amount was going to be north of 30 million. The net proceeds was, was estimated to be around 27 to 28 million. So 10% of that, I think that was where the 2.8 million dollar number was coming from. Sounds like we needed some for the Anthem Water Tower, which was,
Roughly 1.6.
1.6, so you'd have about 1.2 million dollars left over that I think, that I think is what's being discussed.
Okay, yeah, the whole, the whole bottom line is, is that I, I'm trying to find ways to where if we have people that are coming in, they have every right to come in and build whatever it is they have. But how can we, especially with this TERS, what I'm trying to get at everybody is to see how we can guarantee some dollars that can come from this specific area if it gets approved, that we could use it for jumpstarting projects or in bringing in, basically bringing in some kind of direction to, to help a lot of the projects that we're needing east of, east of Kyle or just everywhere, but especially some of these roads. And I'm just trying to find a way to be able to get some of these dollars in, find the capital to where we can get some of these improvements. And if we can be able to get with some of the developers to assist us in that, I look at as that as an investment as well. That's the whole reason why I'm bringing all this forward.
Councilmember, there's, there's 1.2 million dollars available in, I would say, uncommitted funds. In the agreement, we have discussed Old Stagecoach Road, that's what's listed, but, Vibe Trail, but that can be redirected by council to any east side project.
Mayor and council, Mike Boswell, Toll Brothers, 1320 Aeropoint Drive, Suite 400, Cedar Park, 78613. Do you have the slideshow that we sent over? I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through this the way, how did Henry VIII say it to his six wives, "I won't keep you long." That's a bad joke, but hey, it's almost 12:30.
Your date is already wrong on your slide.
I know, right? So we, we've shown this, this picture in the past, okay? And, and I, I had a problem with my truck last week and I had to go to the dealership and get it fixed. And when I was there paying the bill, they had an exploded transmission diagram there. And it gave me a thought, so I wanted to go through this with you. And this is probably a little more detailed than you want to go through at eight, at 12:30 at night, but it'll be fairly easy for you. When we look at our first phase or our area one, basically, we will come into the city, the ad valorem base is then in the city, so you can collect property taxes at that point. From that point forward, we will go through a real quick ramp up in development period where we are going to go from raw land to platted lots to finished lots to completed homes. And then at that point, we'll start moving forward with the bond issuances. The values that we're currently projecting, and these are, these are probably January, February home values for that first PID bond issuance, is about $965,000. And so what will happen is now that you're in the city, and here, I'm not talking about the county, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the city, on the $965,000, the city will collect $3,102 into their general fund. This is just area one, that's per home. And then on the increment, as the homes build up in value, you'll collect not only the $3,103, but you'll collect the full tax rate on any increment over that. And then, once the PID bonds are paid off, the entirety of that ad valorem base goes to the city's general fund. Once we go through, ooh, that messed up. But basically, once we do this three times for three areas or three phases of the development, we basically have built up that entire tranche or those three tranches for the PID bond issuances. It'll be the same process three times over. That's why we have a 40-year TERS term, we want to make sure that the first and last bonds are, are done over that period of time. With that said, you can't see it here, but if you look at that third PID bond issuance, the home value is there, 1.16 million dollars. And if you look at the example on this previous slide, the increment that you get over the 965 would be an additional $1,000 to the city. And by the time we get six, eight years down the road, that's what we think the homes are going to be valued. So the way it works, and this gets directly to your question, is from this point forward, going back to the TERS where it would be in the city versus the no TERS, you will collect, you will still collect 32 cents per hundred dollars of value. That 3,100 that you saw on the previous slide, again, for the base value only, that doesn't include the increment. For 315 homes, again, that doesn't include the future areas or phases that'll have higher prices as we go, will be a minimum of $977,000. Over the 40-year TERS term, the city will still collect $39 million in revenues. The other fines, and this is also, I think, something that we talked about with Scott day before yesterday, was that being in the city, we would have to pay adjusted lane mile fees. That was part of the development agreement that's not out there otherwise. And then also the city dedication and the city park improvement fees. Not being in the city, we would not pay those fees. So we went through and did the calculation, and so these were the other fees that we would pay. I didn't really get into the water billing fees, I know that's a, that's a situation here. I didn't get into building improvement inspection fees, for me, that's a pass through. But what we were trying to do here is, is quantify to the city what over the next 40 and what during the development period would be the, the relevant fees. And they, these are where you, where you can start looking with your council members and working on them with your master plan. Hey, we've got a trails master plan, we've got a parks master plan, we want these fees to go to those things. This is money that, that goes towards that. So again, just strictly talking about the ad valorem base or the, the property tax revenue, that's what this slide was done for, to talk a little bit about the, the fees, fines, and finances. We call it the three Fs in, in city government spending. This was kind of dealing with that. And then I, this obviously is in a sales tax generation, but it will have leakages where, you know, the residents move in, they shop, they come to the community, they, they shop in all your stores, they eat lunch, they go and do outings at Sunday morning, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it's kind of a leakage event, but I don't really have a good way to track that. So to that end, I think it's very important, and this is the importance of master planning, is making sure that these maps are drawn so that these projects that are clearly identified on the master plan and the parks plan, et cetera, that these items are earmarked for that. And so with that being said, the other thing that I would mention is the 10% PID fee. That was typically done, as I understand it, for out of city Pids. We are, we have agreed to pay that 10% in spite of annexing. The only concern we had is we wanted to make sure that the water tank was done. And that really, it's oversized from our perspective, we don't need a water tank for 315 lots, but we think it's, We don't need a water tank for 315 lots, but we think it's important for the entirety in that whole area, for fire protection, for pressure maintenance, and so forth. I'm truly agnostic as to where the rest of it goes. In my view, a rising tide raises all ships. I think it's important that the council have serious discussion about making sure that when that tide does come in, that everyone in town benefits. I'm right there with you on that. So that's a discussion that happens beyond even this meeting, but I understand the importance of it. The rough number at this point is 2.8 million minus the 1.6, so that remainder would be reallocated thoroughly.
Scott, I've got a question. Councilmember Tobias talked about Ad Valorem tax of 3%. Why couldn't council earmark that? I'm just curious.
It's done annually in the budget process, so...
So we could earmark it in the...
You can, I mean, that money will come as general fund revenue.
As soon as we start bringing in revenue, we could earmark that towards whatever we want, right?
Council can budget for those received revenues.
That's every year.
Yeah, I'm just making sure.
Every single year.
Yeah, I know that. But earlier, they said we couldn't do that.
No, they said you couldn't take money from the TERS, the Ad Valorem tax from the TERS, and use it. But you can take just tax that goes into the general fund, and then you could use that for whatever you want, like we do every year.
That's clarification.
Sorry, more clarification is needed, because it's, Ad Valorem taxes can't be, you can't say 3% of property taxes collected are dedicated to any particular use directly from the tax revenue to the use. The process is, we collect the money, it comes unrestricted into the general fund, then we can allocate it as a group for however we want. But there, so you can't do that in a development agreement. You could do it in other things that are city-focused. But what you can do with the developer agreement is take the proceeds that are coming from the project that are earmarked for Stagecoach, for example, and move those. That would have a material impact on where those funds go.
Can I ask Leon how much road $2 million gives us?
I have five bucks at this hour. I've already won a four-person dinner to Sonic, Sonic courtesy of Tim Green, but I'm on a tobacco auction area at about $750 a linear foot. Take $2 million, divide it by that, and that's usually about the length.
Okay. Thank, Leon?
Did you say 1.2 million?
Let's say 2 million. Let's just go, let's go all out. Maybe we'll get $2 million. How much will $2 million get us?
We've been using a rough number of about $10 million a mile for some of our complete roads, so that would be 1/5 of a mile.
1/5 of a mile. So we will give you guys a TERS if you give us 1/5 of a mile. Fair enough.
So I have a follow-up question. How much does 900,000, it's not to Mike, it's to Pervas or anyone other than Mike, because this is internal discussions, but how much does 900,000 to $1 million a year generate in bonding capacity to pay for capital projects? Would Pervas go, do he walk out?
He's right there.
Well, if you're gonna ask it, I mean, because to me, I agree with you if you're thinking that 1.5 million or however much is not a big contribution, a 1/5 of a mile sounds like they're gonna pay for all of Stagecoach in front of their property to be upgraded, is what that sounds like, which seems like a pretty good thing to ask. But the reality is, the cash flows are what I harp on, and what I've tried to communicate here is that the cash flows right now proposed to come from the development are zero, and yet we're going out to bond. The bond, we have a capacity based on cash flows, so if it brings in no cash flows and we put in Stagecoach like we've been contemplating, plus BB and Wendy Hill and all these other projects, the cash flows that go into the general fund are what pay for that. But $1 million in cash flows that would be received from this project annually would translate to roughly how much in bonding capacity?
If you don't hold me to it, I don't know the market conditions five years from now, but it'll be around 10 million.
All right, so this is why I said this is Stagecoach or another road. You're talking about a $10 million bond that if these projects were on the ground today, you could put on just this development to pay for half of potentially what Stagecoach would be. So there's a lot of ways to look at it, but...
Well, can I ask Perez how much it would cost to put in the TERS fund to begin with? How much would come out of our general fund to go into the TERS fund for this development?
Initially, there won't be any transfer to the TERS from the general fund. If what the developer's saying actually bears out, if we can sell $1 million homes in Kyle, Texas, and we have a market for it, obviously there is, they wouldn't be here. So 50% of that tax revenue will go into the general fund. So the general fund would not be making any contributions. However, there is a cost to the general fund. If this development is within the city, you will have to provide street maintenance, you would have to provide police protection, because it's no longer county's responsibility. So those costs will have to be added to the general fund. I don't have a number off the top of my head, but one cop, fully uniformed, gunned, and in a patrol car, is about $100,000 a year.
And then what about the roads? If they wanted to build, like, I'm sure you've seen the plans, what do those roads look like, and how much is that gonna cost?
It would not cost the city, they would be building the roads, but they would turn it over to the city for the maintenance.
That's literally my biggest issue with the original 2015 interim development agreement. The whole tri-party agreement came from that question, because in out-of-city PID, which is what they currently have, they build brand-new roads, 30 years go by, it's not annexed, we collect 0000 for 30 years, and then they dedicate all of that over and we collect our first penny in year 30 when the roads are nearly finished and completed. So not only is it not providing cash flows for 30 years, but when you annex, you're annexing a liability that hasn't, so that's the point of the $39 million is that's over the course of 30 or 40 years or whatever, that's city revenues that would come in, that if we don't collect those under their current agreement and then we annex them, then we're having to project out into the future to bond and borrow money in order to fix the maintenance. And so that's the...
So if we don't participate in this TERS and they're in the county, is the county gonna give them a TERS?
No, if they don't participate in the TERS, the county is participating with us in the TERS. They're lowering their tax rate, so the county's cash flows will go up, not down. So if the idea is let them build and let's just never annex them and let it be county roads, county specs, then that's fine. They're just going to be driving on Stagecoach and all those roads and not paying any taxes for it. So I don't understand financially how you can not see that this is anything other, the way it's currently set up is designed to maximize the cash flows to the city's general fund to be used for projects all throughout the city. That is what the TERS is designed to create. It's not designed to create an additional subsidy. They already have the subsidy in the Savannah, in the entire Blake River Ranch. They have all the entitlements to do everything. They just won't have to pay any taxes if we don't annex them.
I do find it interesting that you say that, when the author who wrote the statute specifically said the goal was to take a declining inner-city area and create a situation where there would be money to rehabilitate it and turn it around. So how is it that you know what a TERS is for, which seems to be a little bit opposite of what the actual author said? I'm just confused.
I can't speak to the author of the statute. I can speak to how the TERSs are being used, the cities that we're going to that are modeling what they do, how to go from where we are to a city that prospers financially. They find creative ways to bring cash flows into their city, and so, so much so that Frisco was accused, like, they had to rewrite the statute back in 2006 because of how smart Frisco was at setting up deals that benefited Frisco. So that's, the TERS is a tool. They're more powerful in other states. TERSs are in every state throughout the country, or not every state, I suppose, but many, many, many states. It's just a tool. And if we're allowed to use it within the confines of the law and it benefits us, I've already said that. So if you don't think a TERS is legal out here, there's not a whole lot of difference between it and TERS number two and TERS number one as far as the mentality for generating economic development and growth. That doesn't necessarily need to be relitigated. So, I mean, we can debate it all day, but I kind of go back to Councilmember Tobias and just say, what do you want to do? Because we're just absolutely gridlocked on this thing.
Obviously, it seems that, you know, we're divided on this again. And my whole purpose again was to bring in it back was to be able to earmark dollars that were coming in. You know, I want to see improvements in our city, especially in areas that are much, much needed. And I'm just trying to find a way, since we have a developer that's coming in, not to stronghold them, that has nothing to do with that, I'm just trying to capitalize on how we can be able to use some of these funds and make sure that it's guaranteed, that we can help improve a lot of our infrastructure that we're having problems with, okay? And that's my whole goal. And so I'm kind of asking for that when we, by bringing this back. And that's kind of where I'm kind of stuck at right now.
So, two things. First is that the, I agree with you, but the thing that I think about is, because we have a ton of roads that need, we've been talking about it now for 18 months, we've been bringing forward through our visioning workshop, and what we're planning to do here in two or three months is propose about probably a $100 million bond. A $100 million bond without this deal, that's $100 million in debt that the in-city taxpayers have to collectively carry. If we pass this deal and it produces $1 million in revenue, I mean, there's some overlap with timing, but the math of it holds. A $1 million in revenue that gets generated, if it was all being able to use for debt, would create about a $10 million bonding capacity. So literally, this deal is 10% of the debt service needed for our $100 million bond. So you can take $100 million and reduce it by $10 million by passing this deal through cash flows and bonding power. Or you could say, no, we're not going to allow this deal, we're still going to take Stagecoach to the voters, we're still going to take BB and Wendy Hill and all these other things to the voters, and we're going to have less bonding power because of $1 million a year in cash flows to the general fund, which pays for that debt service that we are denying ourselves by telling this development we want to keep them in the city. So the two things would be, number one, the PID contribution, we can make an immediate impact on the PID contribution towards eastside projects and solidify that, which guarantees those dollars to go that direction. And number two is that in our budgeting process, we can make sure that we are incorporating the cash flows from this project into the overall, you know, flow. But what we can't do is dedicate tax pennies, you know, from our Ad Valorem without going through the budgeting process.
And mayor, there is adjacent lay-mile fee and the park fees that could also be dedicated or earmarked as part of this process.
Okay. Councilmember Ellis.
So I have a different viewpoint on this than perhaps all of you all. We have discussed this several times in executive session, had this explained. We've talked about it several times publicly. First vote went 6-1 in first reading, and then in second reading, it failed 4-3. Councilmember Tobias, you brought this back. I think you've heard all the different avenues to get to the objective that you want to get. I think it's about time we make a motion and make a decision and have a vote at this point.
Okay. And this is referencing through 41 through 47? Okay. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve 41 through 47 to add some earmark up to 2 million for eastside infrastructure development and projects.
Second, motion by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by the mayor, that we approve the items earmarking up to $2 million. To clarify, that's, in your mind, that's the elevated storage tank stays the way that it is, and then all remaining proceeds would be for eastside infrastructure projects?
Yes.
Is that clear in the motion? And is there discussion on the motion? And Paige, what agreements would be amended, the development agreement, and what else would be amended there?
Just the development agreement would be amended to change the, what that PID fee would be used for.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Roll call vote?
Hi.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
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 All right. Motion carries, 4 to 3. We have two items remaining. One is item 48, the other was the item we skipped from the very beginning, item number nine. So I'm gonna bring that one up, and then we'll do 48. It's the Brightview Landscaping Services item. If there are no objections, we'll bring that back forward. Paige, you have something for us?
Yes.
47, awesome.
So the city's original contract is with WLE. The agreement is binding on successors and assigns, so with Brightview acquiring that business, the contract is automatically binding on successors and assigns. What you ultimately want is you want to make sure you've got the ability to enforce the agreement, the ability to enforce the agreement, so that's what's important. So I'd recommend for the council, if you want to act tonight, what I'd recommend is that you approve that change order with Brightview executing a third addendum to the agreement so that the entity that's going to actually do the work is subject to the existing agreement. So that's the first thing I would do. And then the second thing that we do at the staff level would be to request that Brightview provide a letter just advising who's acquired that agreement and provide us with suitable documentation to support that. So I'm not asking for action on that, I'm just suggesting that the way we document appropriately is we request a letter from Brightview, because they've got two entities. They've got kind of a mowing entity, and then they've got a construction entity. The mowing entity is what's assuming your existing contracts, if I'm understanding correctly. The entity that's going to perform on your change order is the construction entity, and we need them to execute a third addendum and be subject to all the terms and conditions of your existing agreement. Is that...
Jerry, you said two weeks of delay if we don't move it forward right now? Because that's a lot. Are they, I mean, it's, it's an issue with, I don't want to delay it, but I don't think delaying it two weeks, I mean, I don't know. Tell us what to do here.
More importantly, Paige, if you could tell us what the legal thing to do here is, that'd be great.
I would say you could approve it with a third addendum, authorize the...
She literally just gave her legal opinion, so I...
That's the...
That's correct. I had a different question about construction and other things, so I appreciate that.
So if you approve the purchase orders tonight with the condition that they produce that documentation that Paige has mentioned, if they fail to produce it by the next council meeting, then we'll direct them to stop work and we'll reconsider our options.
I don't want to do that personally. I'd rather just wait. What do y'all want to do? Y'all want to move it forward? I don't want to delay the project, but it's just, it's gonna be some issue come up.
Reg, Paige, you can tell me if this isn't acceptable, but since the council has authorized the funding and approved the work, can they continue working without an authorized PO? Because they're the ones that kick the POs back to us.
Imagine that. Imagine that.
They can do the work, it just would be good to have a, make sure we have that contract so that they are subject to those terms and conditions, so it's a performance enforcement issue.[1776.83] Imagine that. Imagine that. They, they can do the, the work. It just would be good to have a con, make sure we have that contract, so that they are subject to those terms and conditions. So it's a performance enforcement issue. So.
Motions?
Motion to postpone.
Moved by Councilmember Flores Cale, seconded by Councilmember Bradshaw. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 6 to 1. We'll see it at the next meeting. So they're just gonna have to wait.
All right.
All right. Next up, agenda item 47, consideration discussion of possible action on a resolution accepting the petition to increase the estimated cost of the COP57 Public Improvement District, setting a public hearing. John Snyder.
Mayor, Council, John Snyder with P3 Works. This, this item, the developers requesting an increase in the authorized maximum amount from $8 million to $9 million. They decided increased construction costs as well as increased bonding capacity as a result of, an appraisal became in higher than expected, as well as increased home values, just general market conditions. The, the original petition listed $8 million as the max. There's still a question at the AG's office if that really is a hard cap or not. There's actually a couple of questions in right now, but we haven't gotten a response back. So this is the, kind of the safe way to go belts and suspenders and, and come back with a petition. So I think either way, if we're coming back May 17th, if you all approve this, we'll come back with a number that is less than $9 million. I think it's in the, right now, we're looking at probably eight and a half million. If, if this isn't accepted, then we would come back probably with the $8 million number on the 17th, and then look forward to bond pricing on June 7th.
What's the, what's the extra money going for?
It's going for additional improvements within the project. But they, in the development agreement, they agreed to some undergrounding of utilities was, was part of the trade-off.
Right, that is correct. I'd like to motion to approve. Moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Bradshaw, sir, that we approve item 47. Is there discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 6 to 1. Next up, agenda item 48, first reading and ordinance amending section 47-28 of the Code of Ordinances regarding towaway zone under said sections, et cetera. Paige?
These are the amendments that were requested two council meetings ago to allow for enhanced enforcement of the fire towaway zones to apply to, to private streets. And so we've made those edits for the council to consider. I'd request that it be approved. If you approve it tonight, if we could have a second reading on it, so I can confirm the chief is, I've got final comments from him.
All right. Motion to approve. Moved by the mayor, seconded by Mayor Protim Rizzo, that we approve agenda item 48. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councilmember Parsley.
I don't see anywhere in here that talks about private streets.
So we've got two sections now. One is, we made a public street section.
And then the fire apparatus.
And then the fire apparatus, access roads, and fire lanes. And so. So five specifies that the towaway authorization is whether it's on public or private property. But the general authorization to designate fire lanes and fire, no parking towaway zones is authorized by the International Fire Code. And so that, that extends to private streets is, is my reading of it. The towaway authorization explicitly in number five states that the towaway authorization applies to both public or private property.
Okay. I see. I apologize for that.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to have one more reading, so I can just confirm I've got all that buttoned up with the chief.
That's good. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Anyone else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion carries 6 to 1. Motion adjourned.